Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to advise that Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the Lord Mayor be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,749th meeting, held on Tuesday the 5th of November 2024, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the minutes of the 4,749th meeting of council, held on Tuesday the 5th of November 2024, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Just seeking some clarification with the Lord Mayor's absence, is the deputy mayor fulfil those responsibilities in terms of the role the Lord Mayor would normally? In terms of answering questions and introducing reports?
Yeah, and timing and etcetera. Yes councillor, correct. I'd now like to call on Mr David Meck, who will address the chamber on public camping within the city. Please proceed when you're ready. Mr Meck, you have five minutes.
G'day madam chair, acting mayor and councillors. What I'm talking about today is likely a divisive issue, so I don't expect everybody to be in agreement. I'm just hoping to find a couple of councillors that might agree and want to sort of move forward on proposals to address the issue. The issue that I see, and I'm sure we all see it, you can't avoid it living here in the city, is the problem of public camping. People setting up tents and sleeping bags all throughout the city. There's really no designated spot for it. I could go to Coles today, buy a tent and just pitch it somewhere and I could pretty much stay there as long as I like. You see it on Queen Street Mall, you see it in the city Botanic Gardens, you see it at Captain Burke Park, you see it at Roma Street Parklands, you see it in the major arteries of the city, Queen Street Mall, George Street, Edward Street etcetera. I spend half the year in Brisbane, the other half of the year I spend in other parts of the world, mostly in South East Asia. I just recently arrived back to Brisbane two weeks ago from Ho Chi Minh City in Vietnam. Keep in mind, this is a country where you cannot drink tap water from the faucet and you cannot flush toilet paper. Yet if you go to Ho Chi Minh City and you go to the Opera House, you go to the Patekco Financial Centre, you go to the coffee shop Saks, you will not see anybody public camping. No tents, no sleeping bags, nobody asking you for money. Kuala Lumpur, KLCC Park, Pavilion Mall, Botanical Gardens, again, no tap water that you can drink, can't flush the toilet paper, yet you can visit the city and you're not basically stepping around people who are camping publicly in the city. Perhaps there's an inverse relationship. The more developed you are, the more tolerant you are. But if you go to Singapore, which has a higher economic output than Brisbane, you go to Orchard Street, the downtown financial district, Marina Bay Sands, their Botanical Gardens, again, no public campers, no tents, no sleeping bags. What's interesting about Brisbane is it's such a beautiful city. Think about the budget that council spends on maintaining the Botanical Gardens. A lot of money spent for aesthetic purposes. Same with Kangaroo Point Bridge, trying to minimise the aesthetic impact on the skyline by paying more for architecture. Public camping is a different but related issue to homelessness. Not all homeless people camp. They can be in homeless shelters or with friends. And not all public campers are homeless. Real estate developer Mel Picos also has a YouTube channel called Talking Tactics. I told him, hey, we should do a video on the public camping in Brisbane. And he told me that he and some of his employees actually once a year go out and public camp themselves. Not homeless, just to see what it's like. There's circular enforcement of local laws. When you call Brisbane council to complain about somebody public camping, they tell you, well, we don't have move-on powers, only the Queensland Police does. When you call Queensland Police, they say all public camping complaints are referred back to Brisbane council. There's a circular reference loop of nothing happening and nothing gets enforced. Captain Burke Park, there was a guy camping for a month, took over a picnic table for himself, had a tent there, was there for five weeks before he left from when the complaint was made. Botanical Gardens, there was a guy camping there, took over a gazebo, had an entertainment centre with a laptop somehow plugged into a power source. I complained about that, took about six weeks for him to be gone. There's no public transparency about the existing laws regarding camping in parks. If you go to brisbane.qld.gov.au/lawsandpermits, front slash local laws, front slash information about local laws, there's a specific link about camping in council parks, but if you click on it, it takes you to an unrelated link. I called the city, put in a service ticket to request that that be fixed, so the public knows what are the laws regarding that. As of yesterday, still not working despite the complaint being put in months ago. Council is not clear when trying to understand who exactly has enforcement responsibility for public camping. You call them and you ask who's responsible for enforcing it, there's no response. So what do I want to do? Why am I here? Around the world, most recently in Florida and the United States, they passed a law with unanimous support from both parties, which is very rare, especially in Florida, to create designated spaces for public camping, where the council chooses, not the campers, where public camping is permitted within the city. And then the police can immediately move on those campers in the undesignated public spaces without the need for a resident complaint. Public land and council assets local law 2014, part two, regulation of parks, section 12, restricted activity, camping is specifically listed as an example of restricted activity. Restricted activity might be conducted only at a place designated for that activity, or a facility provided by council, and if not so conducted, is prohibited. I'm hoping that council can implement time, place and manner restrictions on public camping, effectively criminalising public camping in the city aside from those designated areas, automatically move on public campers to those areas without the need for a resident complaint, similar to public urination. If somebody is urinating in public, the cops don't have to wait for a complaint, they can immediately address it. Establish those designated public camping areas, preferably supervised by either Queensland government or the city, for no alcohol, job training, Salvation Army etcetera. And really to treat it like a zoning issue, almost like a broken cars where everywhere you don't talk about parking affordability. I have more to say, but I'm running out of time. If anybody's interested, I'm happy to provide pictures and chat with you in chambers after. I can submit letters to the editor that I sent before. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr Meck. Councillor Hutton, would you care to respond?
Thank you, Mr Meck, and I really thank you for taking the time to come and speak to the chamber today. I really want to assure you that as a council, we are working together with the state government, with Queensland Police, with Queensland Housing and the community to resolve the issues of homelessness. Like you, I want our public spaces and our parks to be great places for the community, for the tourists, for residents to enjoy. As you mentioned, camping is restricted on council land under the public land and council assets local law, and only the Queensland Police Service has the power to physically relocate people. Our council remains committed to a compassionate approach for those genuinely experiencing homelessness, connecting them with the state government services, and not accepting antisocial behaviour in our public spaces. After all, a tent is not a home. And I appreciate your feedback from across the globe in what other cities are doing, but ultimately, we want a roof over these people's heads. While local government has a role to play in responding to homelessness, the Queensland Government has the primary responsibility for delivering social housing solutions and homelessness service provisions. You may be interested to know that as a council, we will continue to advocate for the immediate activation of the federal government 500-bed facility at Pinkham Bar, which could be used as a temporary accommodation for those who are in a transition to a permanent housing solution. I appreciate your feedback and we'll continue to work on this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you councillor Hutton and thank you, Mr Meck, for coming in today. Councillors, are there any questions of the acting mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Chair, councillor Kristin.
Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Just for the record, madam chair, you just referred to the deputy mayor as acting mayor. Has she formally been appointed to that position, or are you calling her in her capacity as the deputy mayor to represent the Lord Mayor as a member of E&amp;C in answering these questions today? There's a difference. We pass laws that say what an acting mayor is. I'm not aware that she's been appointed acting mayor, so I'm wondering if it's just a language issue or whether she has been appointed acting mayor.
I'm happy to call her deputy mayor, if you're comfortable with that, doesn't matter. Are there any questions of the deputy mayor or any civic cabinet chair of any standing committee? Thank you.
Acting mayor, the Shrinna council offers a range of support to local business to ensure they thrive, providing jobs to local residences and creating interesting high streets for our suburbs. Last week, it was revealed that the Greens councillor for the Gabba Ward has given the cold shoulder to businesses that have raised concerns about crime in West End. Can you please update the chamber on what the Shrinna council does to support local businesses and provide any advice to Greens councillors who seem to be willing to turn a blind eye to rising crime concerns from small business?
Deputy mayor.
Thank you. And I'm happy to clarify that the E&amp;C for the Lord Mayor to be overseas went through cabinet, which made me acting mayor when the Lord Mayor is not on shore. That is my formal position for this week. Thank you councillor Dixon for the question. The Shrinna council is the most small business friendly council in Australia. It's something of which we are extremely proud, because small business is the backbone of Brisbane. And I've spoken about that many, many times in this place. It is the lifeblood of our communities.
Thank you, acting mayor. If you can just wait one moment while councillors are quiet. Acting mayor.
Thank you. Local businesses are the lifeblood of our communities. They bring people together. They are employing our local residents. They are mums and dads businesses that we all know our communities rely on. And over 70% of businesses are family owned and run, which is staggering really, but not surprising when you think about the people close to you and how many of them that you know either run a business or work in a small family-owned business. And we recognise this. We are committed to supporting our Brisbane businesses with a range of support programmes and services that they need to get ahead. And we've helped them to grow and to achieve great things. And we've stood by them through tough times, through Covid, through weather events, and to stepped in to provide essential relief and support when it is most needed. We're in constant contact with our business community right across Brisbane. But lately, when we speak to businesses, there's growing concerns about crime and antisocial behaviour. We're hearing a lot from the businesses, particularly in West End, about violent, aggressive and antisocial behaviour occurring locally there. These areas include West End around Musgrave Park, as we just heard from our guest speaker, and Kirilpa Point, which have basically become no-go zones. We've heard of stabbings, dangerous fires, significant vandalism, and it's a serious situation. But also Boundary Street and the traders through West End are feeling like it's becoming more of the Wild West under the local Greens councillors. And there's no denying that the Greens are part of the problem. They're not just soft on crime, they actually support it. The Lord Mayor has read out a letter to the chamber that he received about a local family feeling ignored by their local Greens councillor in recent weeks, and pleading about somebody to do something about the violence and the safety issues. And it's clear that the local councillor has turned her back on the residents and the local business as well. We now hear when local residents are calling through to the Gabba Ward office to report an incident or seek help, they are simply told to be more tolerant. But what was even more staggering was councillor Massey's statement about what she thinks about small business. Small business are not the community, she recently said.
Point of order. That's a misrepresentation. I never said that. Point of order. That's not what was said. Look at the videos.
Councillor Massey.
Look at the videos.
Acting mayor.
Happy to look at the videos again, and the statement was, small businesses are not the community. Councillor Massey, do not call out. You do not get to debate. Councillor Massey, you do not get to call out across the chamber. If you have something to say, you can get on your feet next and ask a question, or you can talk about it in general business. But you do not get to call out and speak over the top of the acting mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, madam chair. Last week, because you said I was shouting loudly, you recorded me for inappropriate behaviour in the council minutes. Councillor Massey has been shouting very loudly about the misrepresentation by councillor Adams, but she didn't even receive a warning. Can you please advise why you're applying the rules differently to me as to other councillors?
I don't uphold your point of order councillor Johnston, because I am the one in the chair and I get to decide. And I caution you for speaking again over the top of me. Acting mayor.
Thank you, madam chair. And I'll take the interjection from the local council, who did reiterate. I probably left out one part of it. Small businesses are not the heart of our community. I beg to differ, as I've mentioned, about the importance of the young kids that are employed in local businesses, the family that run it and rely on local businesses to put food on their table. And when you're a local councillor, you need to take leadership in your community. You need to listen to your community, business or otherwise. Not bury your head in the sand and deny any existence of problems that are occurring. Be more tolerant is not, not what West End needs right now. On this side of the chamber, we will always stand up for Brisbane on crime, and we will absolutely support our local businesses when they ask for our help. Just recently in my own ward, we had a local business forum. We have had a huge rush of graffiti across Mount Kavat Holland Park, right in to the Gabba Ward. And I'm not going to say the young lady's name, because I'm not going to give her the promotion of it, but it has been horrific for businesses to deal with this. We held a forum, we invited the police, we had the graffiti task force come from council. We went through what Brisbane are doing to support local businesses through the local chamber. But you don't bury your head in the sand. And you make sure that if you spend time with your scouts and girl guides and historic societies, you spend that time with your local businesses and support them as well. We've heard that small business owner on Boundary Street who recently lost everything when his business got ram raid and set alight last week, was absolutely mortified to continually hear from councillor Massey and her, the former councillor, that it's all just a media beat-up and a scare, that they feel unsafe to be working through their suburb where entire areas are cornered off as no-go zones.
Councillor Massey, do not call out. Councillor Massey. General business. Acting mayor.
So what I just heard from councillor Massey, he's only been there for one month, so he doesn't count. The Shrinna council is the most small business friendly council in Australia. We will always support small businesses and stand up for Brisbane on crime.
Thank you. Just one moment, please councillor Cassidy. Councillor Massey, councillor Cassidy was already on his feet. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, chair. My question is to the acting mayor on behalf of the pensioners of Brisbane who are about to cop your pension tax. Beatrice from Acacia Ridge is 93 years old. She doesn't have a computer or mobile and feels like she shouldn't be penalised for it. Darren from Belimba says, not only is this fee an extra financial burden on top of what is already a significant cost to households, I, like many others, use the rates bill to confirm my identity often. Lawrence from Archerfield says he needs a hard copy of his rates bill, a claim, a rebate from the Blind Association, and doesn't own a printer. He thinks this fee is grossly unfair. John from Nathan says he and his 85-year-old wife don't want to get online. They receive exemptions from their electricity provider and bank, and requests Brisbane City Council does the same for their elderly rate payers. And Peter from My Ward says, it seems incongruous that the Brisbane City Council can find funds to have living in Brisbane delivered at a cost to rate payers, but cannot accommodate the cost of bulk postage to send what is essentially a tax invoice to longstanding senior citizens who have paid rates for decades. Acting mayor, you claim the paper rates bill fee is a non-issue for pensioners. Are you calling these people liars?
Acting mayor.
Thank you, madam chair. And councillor Cassidy, I'd just like to clarify the premise of the question. I never, ever said that it was a non-issue for pensioners. Never have I said that this is a non-issue for pensioners.
One moment, please. I shouldn't have to remind councillors every week. You've asked the question, now wait for the answer and don't speak while somebody else is on their feet. Acting mayor.
Thank you, madam chair. I was just clarifying the premise of the question. We are very, very proud on this side of the chamber to have the lowest residential rates in South East Queensland. We are extremely proud on this side of the chamber to have the highest pensioner rebates of any South East Queensland, if not Australian, council. $1,248 off your rates every year for pensioners. Does Enerjex give you that? What does Australia Post give you? Australia Post gives you a 35% increase in mail costs in 12 months. We are focused on keeping the costs down.
One moment, please, acting mayor. Councillor Collier. I'm going to caution you, that is unsuitable meeting conduct. I just finished reminding you not to call out. Acting mayor.
We are focused on keeping costs down for all residents and rate payers. Those opposite want more of council's budget to go back into house costs. We want more of the budget to be spent on core services in the suburbs and to keep rates low. The billions of dollars promised by the Labor opposition during the council elections alone would have required a 32% rates increase.
One moment, acting mayor. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Unrelevance, this pre-prepared speech does not answer the question. These pensioners who have lived experiences are being called liars by the LNP, and the acting mayor needs to account for that.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. I don't uphold your point of order. You had a very long preamble into that question, and the acting mayor is answering it, and she has time to do so. Acting mayor.
Thank you. I'll clarify again. We have never called seniors liars about the paper bills.
Councillor, one moment. Councillor Collier, I again caution you not to call out. Acting mayor.
The paper bill fee is about keeping downward pressure on rates for everyone, and charging a small fee for those who still prefer a printed and posted bill.
One moment, please, acting mayor. Councillor Collier, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, in accordance with section 21.8 of the meeting's local law, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct, and your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, madam chair. Section 21.8 is a power that enables you to avoid the warning processes under the meeting's local law when there is a most serious breach of the meeting's local law. The deputy mayor has called councillors dyslexic, groin rubs. Last week, the Lord Mayor accused councillors of being racist and anti-Semitic. These are appallingly bad inappropriate conducts, and yet they're not even cautioned. So if a simple interjection is the most serious form of breach of the meeting's local law, why aren't these appalling statements made by senior LNP councillors being treated in the same way?
Councillor Johnston, I do not uphold your point of order. I will read to you. If the chair decides that unsuitable meeting conduct has occurred, the chair may decide and may consider the severity of the conduct and whether the council has had any previous warnings for unsuitable meeting conduct issued in the meeting. It's for me to decide that and not you. So I do not uphold your point of order. The conduct, I will decide if it is of a serious nature or any other, you know, warning is warranted. And I make that decision under 21.8 directly. And I have made my decision. Councillors. And I again caution you councillor Johnston for continuing to call out. Acting mayor.
Back to the comments around the paper bill fee. Email rates have been an option available for nearly a decade now, and nearly half of our rate payers are signed up to e-rates. There are programmes and workshops and help in all of our libraries to make sure those who would like or need help to transfer to the electronic bill is there for them. But despite that take-up, printing and posting Brisbane's quarterly rates notice still costs over $2 million a year.
One moment, acting mayor. Councillor Cassidy, you've already asked your question. You don't get to continually ask or yell out across the chamber, and I caution you. Acting mayor.
Thank you, madam chair. Look, I don't know about you, but the people on our side would really like that $2 million a year to be spent on parks and playgrounds, not paid to Australia Post. Who we should be outraged here at is Australia Post, because they are trying to stop mail. That is where the outrage should be directed. But instead of us putting that $2 million onto the general rates bill for everyone, we are giving plenty of advance notice that will be offsetting these costs, just like all other councils and utilities have done. But still, with the highest pensioner rebate in South East Queensland. This is actually...
Councillor Cassidy, stop calling out across the chamber. Acting mayor.
This is actually about recognising cost of living pressures and providing options for helping residents to reduce costs in their cost of living. By introducing a fee which only applies to residents receiving paper bills, we reduce pressure across all our general rates.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
I accept my question was long, but it was specifically related to pensioners and concession card holders. The deputy mayor is talking about anything but an exemption that the LNP are not offering pensioners and concession card holders. Could you please draw it back to the question, chair?
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Acting mayor, if you can come back to the question.
All right, thank you councillor. My understanding of the very long question was that I called seniors liars, which I did not, that we didn't understand what the paper bill fee meant. And am I explaining very clearly what the paper bill fee means and why we have introduced this? Because we have been very upfront with residents about the new fee before it's implemented. We have not called seniors liars. We have provided an extra incentive with residents who make a switch to email billing by the 1st of December to enter a draw. We encourage as many as possible to switch to email e-rate billing, because that money that is saved for us on the costs that we are receiving from Australia Post will go back into our playgrounds, our parks, and the business as usual we do to provide the best city for the residents of Brisbane.
Further questions councillor Adaman. One moment councillor Adaman.
Yes, madam chair. In light of the deputy mayor's concerns about price gouging... In light of the deputy mayor's concerns about price gouging from Australia Post, I seek leave to suspend standing orders in order to move an urgency motion calling on council to defund the personal letters from the Lord Mayor and letters allocation funding for the distribution of dump vouchers to residents and does them through unaddressed mail.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey to suspend standing orders. As a procedural motion, all those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The nos have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Johnston.
The Lord Mayor's faces on it, it's not price gouging.
Ayes to my right and nos to my left. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the nos have it, the voting being eight in favour and 18 against.
The motion is lost. Please return to your seats councillors. Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards Committee. Councillor Hutton, last week, the Greens/Labor coalition of chaos called on council to switch power back on at Musgrave and Carilpa Point Parks as part of their plan to solve the housing solution crisis with tents and USB chargers. While this side of the chamber is concerned about increasing violence and antisocial behaviour in Magaba Ward, the Labor/Greens coalition of chaos continues to turn their nose up at residents' concern. Can you please update the chamber on any developments in relation to these two sites?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you Chair, and I thank councillor Adaman for the question. Chair, I'm incredibly disappointed and frustrated that several barbecues at Carilpa Point Park were destroyed by what appears to be an attempt for individuals to try and hotwire the power. This appalling act of vandalism occurred less than 24 hours after the power was restored to these barbecues. This incident brings a total spend on vandalism at these locations to over $33,000 and further demonstrates how violent and antisocial behaviour is increasing at Musgrave Park and Carilpa Point Park. These areas have become no-go zones for our residents. And importantly, it demonstrates a growing concern about community safety, and that is what we are hearing from local residents and businesses. Last Friday, as I shared, an individual broke into two barbecues at Carilpa Point Park. And for those who haven't seen the photos, here is what they have been doing. We saw extensive damage, which included the wiring being destroyed and the hot plate being ripped off. The latest cost to ratepayers for repairing these damaged barbecues will be in the thousands of dollars. This adds to the more than $30,000 council has already spent in recent time repairing public assets in these parks. Through you Chair, I want to remind that the Greens and Labor Coalition on Chaos that these locations never had publicly accessible power. I'll repeat it again, they never had publicly accessible power. These individuals have broken into locked facilities, hotwired live power connections, which could have potentially been deadly. We have seen examples where they have overloaded the powerboards with items like electric scooters, fridges and microwaves. Given the significant risk to the community, including those vulnerable people sleeping rough in the park, leaving power on was simply not an option. Instead, council made the decision to turn off the power to these barbecues and return to hardwire them at a later date, which I can confirm has now been complete. It's simply astonishing that the Coalition of Chaos is demanding that council reinstate something that never existed. There have been continued media reports of violent fights at Musgrave Park spilling out into traffic in broad daylight. There have also been reports of stabbings and dangerous fires, along with evidence of significant drug use in these parks. Chair, last week, I voiced concerns about the Coalition of Chaos's approach to these issues. Since then, they've only distanced themselves further from residents' legitimate safety concerns. The Greens Coalition of Chaos, the Greens and Labor Coalition of Chaos councillors continue to live in denial that crime is even an issue. Councillor Massey barely mentioned the word crime in her response to the disturbing incident on Boundary Street last week. But we shouldn't be surprised Chair. Local residents have told me they feel unsafe walking past these two parks, and yet the Coalition of Chaos have taken a position to endorse this behaviour. It is clear that the Greens are actually calling the shots behind the scenes, because the Greens are not just soft on crime, they actually support it. In contrast, our council continues to remain committed to compassion and genuinely supporting those who are homeless. They laugh, Madam Chair, they laugh about this. After all, a tent is not a solution. Our administration does not want our parks to become no-go zones for our Brisbane residents. Our administration does not want ratepayers to continue to fork out for money to repair for the vandalism on these barbecues and community assets. Our administration does not want members of the most vulnerable in our community to be exposed to antisocial behaviour. What I mean by that is that not all people sleeping rough in our parks are breaking into council assets, Madam Chair. Every day, our social workers are out connecting people sleeping rough with state government services. For the majority, they engage and are moved into emergency accommodation. I'm talking about specifically those disengaged cohort that have turned down housing offers and choose to live in our parks. The fact that the Greens and Labor Coalition of Chaos choose to ignore this is so concerning. I can assure residents that this is something that our Shrinna Council is taking very seriously. It is our priority to ensure that everyone, including those sleeping rough, are safe and not exposed to electrical hazards. Madam Chair, we will continue to work with the state government, including the Department of Housing, the Queensland Police and those community groups, to support those sleeping rough, to get the support that they need, while also ensuring the safety of our residents.
Further questions councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair. My question is for the acting mayor. The 86 free loop trial has been a resounding success, connecting South Brisbane and West End for residents, workers, seniors, schoolkids, diners, theatregoers, shoppers and more. Most importantly, in what will be transforming in two of the highest density suburbs in Brisbane, it is a much-needed, interconnecting public transport bus. In recent weeks, we've learnt that the trial was a false narrative perpetrated by the LNP council. We've learnt that the LNP council did not apply for funding for this critical and successful bus service from state government. Acting Mayor, today will you do the right thing and commit to making the 86 a permanent service for residents of West End, South Brisbane, Willinggaba, Hill End, Highgate Park and beyond who need this service?
Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank councillor Massey for the question, because what I am very clearly going to stand up and say there is no mistruths perpetrated here except from councillor Massey. This service was never communicated as being anything other than temporary during the construction for our metro site in South Bank. It was trial to see if anybody would even use it. And I know that because I was the Public and Active Transport Chair at the time, because we weren't sure if anybody would actually use it. But what I'm hearing is that people are using it, which is great, not as much as some of our other free loops by any means that we have in the city. But that is a good thing, because West End, South Bank, Carilpa area are the most infrastructure-rich suburbs that we have in this city. And anything that gets those people practised into getting on the bus is a great outcome for an area that is so close to our CBD. Works have been underway since 2022 for our cultural centre station as part of Metro. And of course, when Metro comes online, the shortened travel times will improve the overall experience for the public users in these locations. It's also going to make significant public realm improvements on the surrounding streets. World-class gateways into the cultural forecourt, new landscaping, wider footpaths, intersection improvement, cycling upgrades for Melbourne and Gray Street. They might want you to use the loop.
Point of order councillor Massey.
The question was, will the acting deputy mayor do the right thing and commit to making the 86 loop a permanent service? It wasn't about the metro.
Councillor Massey, the acting mayor is answering your question, so please let her do so.
I can assure you councillor Massey that we've been doing the right thing in this place for many, many, many years. And that is making sure that we are delivering a metro service that for the residents in South Brisbane will be able to jump on for fast, frequent and high-capacity services. Ferry terminals, bridges, more local buses, train stations. Let me just count the ways that you can hop on a bus in the West End area alone. Blue City Glider, $199, $196, all in the top 10. The $198, another local loop. The loop that councillor Massey is talking about was only and always a temporary loop while the metro construction was happening. The council website has said it clearly. The patronage data shows that the South Brisbane Loop has very low numbers compared to other loops in the area. And we have always been clear that this was a temporary service during construction. It's plain to see on our website, the South Brisbane Loop Route 86 has been delivered as part of the Brisbane Metro Project Construction Plan. The service is provided during the period of disruption to the traffic environment. Now, I know councillor Massey has actually also taken credit for this loop, but I assure you, the credit here goes to the Shrinna Council and to the former state representative there, Jackie Trad. Because we know it is quite difficult to get funding through Translink for extra loops. However, as part of the Metro contract at the time, it was put into the contract to have this loop for the extent of the construction for her residents down there. So I don't know if the Coalition of Chaos are going to stand up in outrage on something that the former MP Jackie Trad brought in. But we know that this provided value during construction. But we have always been upfront and honest about our intentions for this service, and we look forward to that Metro Turn Up and Go coming very soon to the southern suburbs of Brisbane.
Further questions councillor Wolf.
Yes, thanks very much, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, last week we heard about the work of the Shrinna Council to unlock more housing supply across Brisbane. We also heard from the Greens about their alternative plan. Can you please advise the chamber how they've got it wrong?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to councillor Wolf for the question. Madam Chair, I'm not sure I'd refer to the Greens' outrage of statements as an alternative plan for the residents of Brisbane. But they've made bold statements in the past about how they can solve the housing crisis by freezing rents, implementing a vacancy tax, starting a state-owned bank and turning the Eagle Farm Racecourse into public housing. It is particularly evident from councillor Chong Wah's recent comments about development, deep planting and the challenges of supporting a growing population that she has only the most rudimentary understanding of city plan and the real challenges facing the building and development industry in providing housing. Recently, the councillor questioned this council's commitment to sustainable greener development. Council has been highly active in this space, producing a range of tools and guides to support the industry in delivering more sustainable buildings. The Buildings That Breathe Guide and the Green Factor tool are just two items that assist proponents to deliver greener, more sustainable developments. In the development assessment process, council officers are very focused on getting the best possible sustainable outcomes, but do so in a performance-based planning environment. Many recent approvals display exemplary sustainability outcomes, including landscaping outcomes. In councillor Chong Wah's ward, there have been a number of development approvals this year where there was significant deep planting. I note there was a residential care facility with 15.4% deep planting, a multiple dwelling containing over 11% and another multiple dwelling with over 13% deep planting. Madam Chair, I feel it only appropriate to correct the record and fact-check the statements the Greens councillors have made in this chamber. Recently, councillor Chong Wah made the claim that council is giving away discounts up to 75% for their development mates. She went one step further and called it a slick deal legalising corruption. Madam Chair, this is provocative and fundamentally false. What we have done is pulled every lever we have available to incentivise much-needed housing across the city. This includes our housing supply incentive, which I note the previous Labor state government replicated. This incentive focuses on converting the latent supply we currently have into much-needed dwellings on the ground and encourage further supply more quickly. Let me be clear, there are strict eligibility criteria for this incentive. Firstly, that it is in a zoning that has existing supporting infrastructure. Secondly, that only studio, one and two-bedroom dwellings are supported. And thirdly, that construction is completed within four years. Councillor Chong Wah has also made another bold statement that both the major parties are relying on private property investors to fix their housing crisis. Madam Chair, there is a figure I have constantly highlighted in this chamber, and that figure is 96% of all housing in Brisbane is provided by the private sector, with the remaining 4% being provided by the state government and community housing providers. Whether councillor Chong Wah likes it or not, we need to work with the private sector to solve the housing crisis, not only to encourage private investors back to Brisbane, but also the private developers who will build the necessary homes. It is evident that the Greens have no practical solutions for housing in this city. They don't understand the issues facing the building and development industry and would make the situation worse, not better, by creating further constraints on the industry. And can you imagine what would happen if the Greens, as proposed, actually established a state-owned property developer? It would be a disaster. A disaster befitting of the Coalition of Chaos. Beating up on the building and construction industry is ill-informed but suits their divisive, hollow narrative. The Greens are part of the problem, not part of the solution. Madam Chair, while the Greens all offer lip service and hot air, this side of the chamber will continue to do everything we can to ensure latent supply is converted to on-the-ground housing.
Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. My question is to the acting Lord Mayor. Acting Lord Mayor, did your LNP regime ignore council staff advice from the Access and Inclusion Team and within the Rates Team when deciding to refuse an exemption for pensioners and concession cardholders on your rates bill tax?
Acting Lord Mayor?
No.
Further questions councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shrinna Council is keeping Brisbane moving with more and better active transport connections. Can you please update the chamber on the latest news in our Bridges to Brisbane program, including how they are helping to keep Brisbane the most sustainable capital city in Australia?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, thanks to councillor Parry for the question. Well, councillor Parry was absolutely right when she said our Bridges for Brisbane program is setting the benchmark for sustainability in Australia. In late October, we proudly added our first awards to the program's growing collection for a very special bridge. It's recognition of, I think, the outstanding work that this council is doing to deliver world-class infrastructure that is both innovative and sustainable. world-class infrastructure that is both innovative and sustainable. But this is more than just about awards, Chair. It is about laying the foundation for a legacy that will see Brisbane lead the way in sustainability and project excellence for years to come. Part of that legacy has already been found in the Kangaroo Point Bridge. It has made history as the first bridge ever to receive an excellent rating under the Infrastructure Sustainability Council's Design Rating Scheme, or ISCA. This is a major achievement, and it highlights our commitment to delivering infrastructure that isn't just functional, but it is sustainable in every sense of the word. The ISCA's rating is a gold standard in sustainability, and to achieve this rating on our very first submission as an organisation is remarkable. It speaks volumes about the kinds of projects that the Shrinna Council is delivering here in Brisbane. Let's remember, this is a bridge powered by seventy-five solar panels, generating enough electricity to offset all of its operational needs. That's the lighting, the lifts, even the restaurant and the café, all powered by renewable energy. We have reduced the bridge's carbon footprint over its lifetime by fifty-nine percent, saving over thirty-four thousand five hundred tonnes of CO2. This has been done through local procurement of steel and the use of renewable energy on the bridge. It's equivalent to taking about seven thousand five hundred cars off the road for an entire year. That's not counting the amount of avoided car trips from the bridge itself. At CT White Park, rain gardens have been installed to slow stormwater runoff, reducing the need for irrigation and helping to protect our waterways. Cooling native plants provide natural shade and comfort for residents walking, riding or scooting. And all of this contributes to council's sustainability record. So with this excellent design rating now secured, we look forward to the next milestone, which is the As Built certification, which we expect to receive early next year. I'm confident, Madam Chair, that this will be the first of many recognitions for the Kangaroo Point Bridge. The Breakfast Creek Ywogara Bridge also took out its first awards recently. It won Project of the Year, actually, at the prestigious Project Management Achievement Awards for 2024. So Project of the Year, how about that, councillors? But that's not all. It also won the National Award in the Construction and Engineering category. So not one, not two, but three awards we are talking about today. And these are no ordinary awards, Chair. The competition for these categories was absolutely fierce. And the fact that our bridge, our little old bridge, beat out massive projects like the three billion dollar Parramatta Light Rail, I think is an incredible testament to the work done by our team. It proves that it's not the size of the project necessarily that matters, but the quality of the project and the engineering and the know-how that goes in behind it, as well as the positive impact on the community that really counts when it comes to these awards. These awards recognise excellence in project management, and the team behind Breakfast Creek Ywogara certainly earned it. They overcame some very significant challenges, Madam Chair, working within a highly-trafficked and constrained creek corridor, and they delivered this project on time and under budget. Madam Chair, these awards are the first of many more to come. Our projects, of course, are more than just the bridges themselves, they are part of this Lord Mayor's vision to keep Brisbane moving. Now, we have seen time and time again in this place, the Greens try to claim credit for these bridges as if these were their projects themselves. But we must remember, Madam Chair, it was this administration that delivered the first green bridge in Brisbane, the Eleanor Chanel Bridge at UQ. It wasn't Michael Berkman or Jonathan Schirrunganathan or anyone else that talks a big green game. It was this Liberal council way back in two thousand and five that delivered that bridge. And this administration that delivered the second bridge, Breakfast Creek Ywogara, and this administration that in just over a month's time will open the Kangaroo Point Bridge to much fanfare, I believe, on December fifteenth. And as I've mentioned many times in this place, all councillors, administration and opposition are welcome to come and party with us.
Acting Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the twenty-eighth of October, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the twenty-eighth of October, twenty twenty-four, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by the acting mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the twenty-eighth of October, twenty twenty-four, be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
I'm just checking, I did take them seriate them for debating and voting last week. Do I need to do that again now? All right, I'd ask that the items are taken seriate them for debate and voting purposes.
Thank you. Acting Mayor, item one, item A.
Item A. Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I get to item A, there is a few things we need to recognise that have been happening in the last couple of weeks that have been very exciting. I know councillor Howard would love to have spoken about this, we didn't quite get to the question today in question time. But the Brisbane Powerhouse, our council-owned venue and absolute icon of the Queensland art scene, has formally wrapped up their Melt Festival. Some events are still showing for a couple of weeks to come, but the Melt Festival formally closed last week, and it was an absolutely fantastic example of an open-access festival and celebration of queer art and culture. We know Brisbane is a growing, inclusive city with vibrant LGBTQIA+ community, and this event featured over a hundred and twenty events, two hundred and twenty individual performances, and it was absolutely bigger and better than ever before. There were actually seventy venues involved in this year's program, and it was fantastic to see so many local Brisbane businesses getting involved and joining in at the party. It would be very remiss of me not to mention the biggest of the events, looking at councillor Howard, I know neither I nor councillor Howard actually joined Spencer Tunic on the Story Bridge, but five thousand five hundred people did celebrate thirty years of Spencer Tunic's art, who is known for his large-scale nude shoots. And he did say this one, excuse me, was the most diverse work he had ever done. And I quote, "Different tonalities, different genders, we had trans participants, non-binary, people from the LGBTQIA+ community and their allies. This event was all about the celebration of people in every shape and form and feeling comfortable in our own skin." I don't know if I was comfortable enough in my own skin to show on my skin, I need to work on that, maybe, maybe not. But what a better place for that to be than in Brisbane, and definitely the photo shoot on the Story Bridge, and then down to the River Walk in front of How Smith Wharf. So absolutely fantastic. Continuing on the wonderful work that the powerhouse does, we've also just seen the conclusion of Night Feast, an annual event that we all love now, to make sure that everybody can try some of the fantastic food staples we have in some of our very best restaurants in Brisbane as well. There is things for the pickiest eater to look at, fortitude eateries like Gerard to the new kid on the block like Bar Central. There was something for everyone at a cost-of-living price that even if you can't afford to go to the restaurant, this was an option where you could go and try the fare without having to pay the big bucks for it as well. So it really was, I think we haven't got the numbers yet, but I'm sure people also voted with their feet to that one, even with some storms and rain, fantastic turnout for Night Feast as well. So a huge thank you to the wonderful team at Brisbane Powerhouse and everyone that was involved in Night Feast and Melt. It really is what makes our city so absolutely vibrant. Of course, we've got the light-ups around the city for this week, and I can't go without mentioning yesterday as Remembrance Day, it was my great honour to represent the Lord Mayor and Brisbane City Council at the Shrine of Remembrance in Anzac Square. It was a beautiful ceremony. It was a sultry ceremony, will we say? It was quite warm, but everybody was there, most proud to be recognising those that have fallen. And our assets were lit up last night in red to commemorate that of all the men, women and animals who have lost their lives in war as well. Today, we have blue for World Pneumonia Awareness Day in City Hall only. Tuesday and Wednesday, green and yellow on the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Tropical Dome and Radcliffe Place for National Recycling Week, councillor Hutton, I'm sure you're all across that one. Thursday, we've got green for Shine a Light on Lung Cancer, which is all about diagnosis, treatment and engaging the communities that support lung cancer patients and their families. Friday night is green for National Agriculture Day, which is held on the third Friday of November each year to highlight the significant achievements of Australia's farming sector. On Saturday, it's a purple for World San Filippo Awareness Day, which is a syndrome that leads to childhood dementia. And on Sunday, purple for World Prematurity Day. Assets live for purple for awareness for families of nearly fifteen million babies born prematurely each year, and I had two of them at once that came very, very early. And I have to say, the staff in our hospitals do a wonderful job. So that is what's on this week. Please feel free to advertise and support the awareness in those programs as well. Item A before us today is the Long Term Infrastructure Plan. And before continuing on the item specifically, I would like to clarify exactly what occurred last Tuesday. It was brought to the administration's attention approximately an hour prior to the commencement of the meeting that there had been an error in uploading all the documents. And whilst key documents such as the consultation report and the response to submissions for both packages were available, several of the documents containing the intrinsic material were not uploaded correctly. So we often hear from those opposite that we're not being open and transparent, so before we went to debate that, we thought it was only fair that we withdraw the packages and allow sufficient time for all councillors to review the materials, which I trust has now occurred. So moving to first of all, the LTIP, the Long Term Infrastructure Plan, this is the forecast for our needs for our new and upgraded infrastructure based on anticipated population and employment growth and trends. Brisbane, as we often say, is one of the fastest-growing capital cities, and we are planning for the infrastructure we will need in the future, and we are delivering it right now as well. The state government requires council to undertake a review of long-term infrastructure plan every five years to ensure the critical infrastructure to support a growing city is factored into long-term planning. This amendment provides updates to the LTIP beyond 2036, which is beyond the LGIP planning horizon. And while LTIP exists beyond that, there are items that are, they are funded commitments. Sorry, let me say that again. They are infrastructure items that are funded commitments. Council uses LTIP to identify land preservation requirements for open space and infrastructure corridors, that could be roads, stormwater, et cetera, and anything we identify through the development assessment process as well. By having long-term infrastructure plans, we provide certainty about the requirements to enable informed decisions when we are working with landowners and developments, and I leave the item to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Pleased to speak on this item, item A before us today, which is the LTIP, Long Term Infrastructure Plan, Amendment one B. And good to finally see some debate on this item, only a week too late and years and years after this process started. And, you know, in thinking about, in thinking about that process and the trauma that the LMP put people through and threatening to resume their homes over the last couple of years through this process, that was a, that in itself was a good example of how badly botched these amendments to city plan are, how poorly mismanaged these processes are by this LMP rabble. But then to not even be able to provide councillors with the documents required to make a decision to move forward with adopting this LTIP is, I think, just the icing on the cake when it comes to how badly mismanaged Brisbane is, a real masterclass in LMP incompetence. We know the history of these plans collectively, we'll debate the LGIP shortly, of which that's a, is a plan with a ten-year horizon, which was only eight in its operation and amended three times. And the LTIP is meant to be the future document, of which items are identified, to become a future LGIP essentially, and identify infrastructure that needs to be delivered in a growing city, in a growing city like Brisbane. What we know throughout a lot of the amendments we've seen from the previous LGIP as this new, as the existing one was implemented, and a lot of the amendments we've seen through the current LGIP is pushing more and more things into the LTIP, into the current LTIP, which is, you know, at the time had an eighteen-year horizon, less now, but then as we see the new one developed, will push some of those items to a twenty-year horizon from when they were supposed to be delivered, because these things get pushed back further and further into the long term of long-term infrastructure plans. We know the consultation on this item was an absolute shambles. Fifteen thousand residents received a letter telling them their homes would be bulldozed for council projects, only to be told a few weeks later, I guess, that that was not the case. They, this LMP regime put people through all that angst as to what might happen to their homes, to green spaces, community infrastructure. So put people through that trauma, then eventually invited feedback on, on what was a corrected letter for consultation, I guess. And then, as we've seen in the package before us today, totally and utterly ignored that feedback. So they put people through the wringer, then eventually asked them for feedback and have ignored that feedback entirely. Submission after submission, just totally ignored. You read it, there's pages of consultation report in there which demonstrate that people engaged in the process in good faith, despite the fact they probably could have been forgiven for not engaging in good faith. But they did, they made submissions only to be told by the LMP that the LGIP and the LTIP is a statutory planning instrument. That's a code word for blaming somebody else. That's the LMP code, and they say, oh, it's a responsibility of another level of government or it's a statutory instrument we are required to have. That is code for blaming somebody else, and they were copy and pasted responses, one after the other, after the other, after the other, after the other. They just ignored the submissions that people made. So to all those people that made submissions, the answer is basically, thank you for your time, your submission has been received and now will be ignored. Full stop, goodbye. This document paints a very clear picture in black and white before us. There's no ambiguity about it, that this LMP regime has mismanaged everything and completely forgotten about the basics and the very basic things that we are required to have as a growing city to make sure we are a livable city with the most basic of infrastructure. And in many cases, not only are they mismanaging these projects, they are dangerously and deliberately delaying them as well. And the sad thing about these projects in these infrastructure plans and the LTIP here is that they are not the full picture either of the LMP's neglect. I suppose we're lucky in a way that this is a statutory document, in that the state government requires council to have these documents because there is no transparency when it comes to projects and when it comes to upgrades that are not eligible for inclusion in the LTIP or the LGIP for that matter. There are plenty of older suburbs that don't have the high levels of development that some suburbs do, some newer and growing suburbs have, but are still crying out for investment. Now, while you can track projects that are being delayed and cut here in these documents, you can see where they are shifted, their timeframe is shifted later and then it is entirely removed or put into the LTIP or removed from the LTIP. You can track that, you can track those delays and those cuts by the LMP. But what you can't do is track those projects through the secretive LMP budget process now because of their changes to the way in which the budget is published, is developed and is communicated to people. So I find it quite incredible that we have before us today these amendments to the LTIP and the LGIP, which says that council is going to deliver more drainage projects over the years ahead, when we know that they, the LMP have cut the basic concrete contract by twenty percent over the next four years. So how do you gut one-fifth of all of the drainage projects over the next four years while we are a growing city, while there are countless number of drainage projects being shifted to later stages of the LGIP and then out of the LGIP into the LTIP altogether? How can you say you are going to deliver more when you are putting less and less funding into the basics out in the suburbs of Brisbane? It's becoming more and more impossible for council to deliver the basics when the LMP administration is blowing the budget on their pet projects. What we know now is where we're at today, the LMP regime have run cash reserves dry, increased rates, snuck in extra fees and charges where they can, and increasing existing fees and charges by ten percent to shake every cent they can out of the ratepayers of Brisbane to foot the bill for their poor financial mismanagement. This regime certainly has lost sight of the basics, and their cover-up is unraveling. They're trying to cover it up in documents like this, and then they can't even produce They're trying to cover it up in documents like this and then they can't even produce documents like this for debate. Now, the last time the amendments were made to these documents back in 2021, the plan was sitting at more, the deficit on funding for all of the items in these plans was sitting at more than $2 billion of works that needed to be done. There was a greater than $2 billion deficit in funding for works to be carried out that are essential infrastructure for our growing city. Now, comparing that amendment to this one, just three years later, that deficit has come down in the LGIP because a whole lot of items has been pushed out into the LTIP and then will no doubt be removed from that altogether. So an admission, an admission from, an admission from the LNP that they cannot deliver what they promised just a couple of years ago. Lo and behold, when you spend, when you overrun projects by billions of dollars in the inner city, you don't have enough to spend on basic infrastructure in the suburbs of Brisbane. And we see a whole lot of projects in the LTIP gone completely as a result of that. So a whole lot of projects being pushed out of the LGIP into the LTIP. So out of the real time delivery phase, push that out into the maybe in 10 year phase and then cut a whole lot of projects entirely from future planning. I mean, what kind of, what kind of city are we leaving the next generation here? When I say city, I don't mean inner city. Kind of city of suburbs are we leaving for the next generation when we have this LNP regime? Their version of future proofing and future planning is to pretend it doesn't exist anymore. Is to say it's all too hard, there's not enough money anymore. Because of their real time today decisions, the people of Brisbane will be paying for that in more ways than one. We know that a large number of these projects could and should be funded through infrastructure charges that are levied on developers. But as we've seen over the last decade, the LNP regime in here is hell bent on giving developers left, right and centre discounts. And I want to be really clear.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I move for an extension.
Second.
We move for an extension by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. Will those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. And I want to be really clear. We support targeted infrastructure charge discounts that would increase the stock of affordable and community housing. In fact, we supported the LNP's move in that space after we suggested it years before they did it. But what we don't support on this side is the rush to provide discounts to providers of five star hotels and luxurious retirement complexes that really didn't need that extra profit. The LNP wrings its hands and moans about the fact that these charges are capped by the state government and then rush to hand over discounts. And you just can't have it both ways. You can't have a $2 billion deficit in the, the budget for delivering key infrastructure as a result of development and a growing city on one hand, and then say you're in favour of offering more and more developer discounts on the other hand. And a great example of that, I think, was a presentation today in the City Planning Committee. There's a development by Meriton, a huge, well, it will be a hugely profitable development that would go ahead either way, whether they got developer discounts or not, down in the City Botanic Gardens. And what councillor Allen confirmed is that the, the discount for infrastructure charges on that project will be in the millions of dollars, in the millions and millions of dollars. So we had the deputy mayor, the acting mayor say today, Chair, that the $2 million that it costs to send out paper rates bills is impossible to fund. But we also find out on the very same day that she said that, that the LNP will be offering Meriton, or whoever that developer is, developing that Meriton project, millions and millions and millions of dollars in developer discounts. And I can tell you, this project will proceed either way, whether they get that or not. So you can't have it both ways when it comes to this. And we'll hear the LNP get up and try and argue that through this debate, about trying to have it both ways. We see as well a whole lot of cost escalations for projects, which we'll come back to when we debate the LGIP as well. Now, as I mentioned before, there was a $2 billion deficit previously in, in, in the previous LGIP amendment on projects that are required to be delivered because we are a growing city and we have growing pains. We need to make sure there's adequate drainage, that there is the adequate road capacity and community facilities and parks for a growing city. When you look at the projections here in the LTIP to 2036, 2026 to 2036 in the Long Term Infrastructure Plan, you now see that deficit is ballooning to $4 billion. So the ratepayers and residents of Brisbane in the Long Term Infrastructure Plan are now, on the LNP's watch, $4 billion short on what is required to deliver that basic infrastructure to, to cater for a growing city. Those roads, those drainage projects, those community facilities, those parks, those libraries. A $4 billion deficit for the basic works a council need to do. Now, that's cash we simply won't have to invest in those transport projects, in stormwater parks and community facilities. They're not the nice to haves, they're the basics. So you understand when you've been in here and been through the debate on a couple of LGIPS and LTIPs that this is the playbook the LNP will use. They're having this debate today, they'll move a whole lot of stuff out of the LGIP into the LTIP of the existing timeframe. And then when there's a new LGIP delivered and developed in a couple of years' time, all of those items that are currently sitting in that LTIP, which should go into an LGIP and be delivered over the next 10 years, they will be pushed back by 10 years. We're going to have stormwater projects, Chair, and places like Bald Hills and Brackenridge in your ward and in Brighton and in Zylmy and Boondle in my ward, that are listed for delivery over the next 10 years, that are going to be pushed back another 10 years. So those projects will have waited 20 years and we just cross our fingers and hope that they get delivered in that timeframe under the LNP. So there's this massive, this massive deficit in the LTIP, which will result in untold a number of projects being delayed by 10 or 20 years beyond when they need to be delivered. And on the other, on the other hand, we have the LNP blowing the council, the council capital budget on their pet projects like the Brisbane Metro, which is, you know, $600 million over budget, five star hotels in Paris, the Greenbridge parties, of which councillor Murphy says are going to escalate as well. The cost of those parties is continuing to escalate. It's a real kick in the guts for ratepayers when they see that dichotomy. When they see that, on the one hand, the LNP are living large, travelling the world, throwing parties, giving themselves a pay rise far in excess of the pay rise they're offering council workers when they're seeking to gut the redundancy packages of council workers right before they start sacking them next year. When you see that on one hand, and on the other hand, you see the basics the council should be delivering for people out in the suburbs of Brisbane delayed by 10 or 20 years to fund all that other crap, then I think people form, will form a very strong view that this LNP regime's priorities are all wrong. Communities in suburbs, just like council workers now, are at the bottom of the pecking order. And the basics here in Brisbane are being absolutely pushed aside by the LNP. These plans, and particularly the Long Term Infrastructure Plan, should ensure that Brisbane is a desirable and livable city into the future. 10 years into the future, 20 years into the future, looking after, after the Brisbane we hand over to the next generation. We want a city that we can walk around. We want a city that is well connected by public transport, a city that has decent drainage and supporting infrastructure to address flooding as we are living with the effects of climate change. We want a city with great access to community facilities, green space and sporting clubs. You know, my outcomes managers had to come to me and ask for $300,000 out of SEF to help fund a female change facility down at the Brighton Roosters because the capital amount this LNP administration provided fell way short. Now, this is a project the Lord Mayor stuck on the front page of his budget newsletter, without talking to that club, of course, announced to the world that they were delivering that project and underfunded it by about half a million dollars. You know, the, the, these, these are all examples of the triumph of politics on that side, of the announcement of the glossy brochure of the media conference over, over the delivery of projects and over public policy. This plan fails residents, just like the, the Lord Mayor's budget this year is failing residents. And what this is now going to lock in and bake in over the next decade is the first period, the first period where Brisbane seriously becomes a worse city for people who live here, a less livable city. It really is Brisbane's time to shine over the next decade. We hear a lot of rhetoric about that, particularly with the Olympics coming. It is Brisbane's time to shine, but under the LNP, unfortunately, gloomy days are ahead.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on Item A, which was Item D last week, the LTIP. I will start by saying that the way in which the acting mayor downplayed what happened last week is, one, very significant in my view, and two, completely spins a very serious mistake by the LNP. Major amendments to City Plan are detailed and complicated. And the failure of this council to supply us with the actual materials, the actual bylaw that is being brought in with the amendments to City Plan, that's what happened last week. They did not provide the actual information. And the deputy mayor describes it as 'intrinsic materials'. Well, that's a lot of lists of projects and, and a lot of detail. That's the detail. Now, that is bad enough that she downplays it today in her speech. But over a week and a half ago, I asked the CEO for a briefing and he simply deferred to councillor Adam Allen. I asked councillor, well, that request was referred to councillor Adam Allen. And in response to my request to him, he stated, and I quote, "The documents provided to all councillors include the consultation report and proposed changes post the consultation report, both of which provide relevant information." Given this briefing is not, are being undertaken on this item. Now, that was wrong. That was untrue. Councillor Allen probably didn't know that we'd not been provided with all the materials. But if we'd have had a briefing, perhaps these issues about the missing documents would have come up. Because like councillor Cassidy, I've been through one or two of these before and I knew something was wrong last week. I wasn't sure what it was, but I knew something was off. What's worse is one third of the councillors in this chamber are new since this process started over two years ago. There are eight new councillors who haven't been through a major amendment to City Plan. They've had to try and figure this out, or perhaps the LNP councillors, the five new ones on that side, didn't even read it. They just hoped maybe that their stuff will be in there or councillor Allen will brief them at a later point or I don't know how it works over there. They just sit there with their heads down and hope for the best. But the failure of Brisbane City Council's senior planning officers, the CEO and the planning chair to stand up and brief councillors about these major amendments to City Plan is appalling. And it has led to a very serious mistake, a really serious mistake. And it is just not good enough that this administration thinks that they can use their massive majority to force through change without proper scrutiny, without providing all the relevant documents for a, an amendment to a city bylaw that affects every single resident in this city. They didn't do any of these things. They used their numbers, they used their majority and they deny requests for consultation and scrutiny. Now, I, I feel really sorry for the new councillors who've had to deal with this. It, it is very complex to start with. Added to that, you're not comparing apples and oranges either because the consultation report and the amendments referred to not the draft that was put out for consultation, but to the original plan. So it is quite complex. So I just think the LNP and councillor Allen, who has stuffed this project up from the beginning, let's remember where we started, he was off having a snooze while his officers wrote out saying they were going to buy up people's houses in suburban Graceville and every other suburb around Brisbane. That's how badly this process has been handled, four years now. And at the end of a long line of stuff ups, here is the biggest stuff up, which is, oh, oops, sorry, we forgot to give you the bylaw papers so you knew what you were voting for. That's how this administration runs. Now, regarding the LTIP itself, it's a, it's just not a real document. This is, it's, it's like a card game to the LNP. Essentially, the, the LNP will take things out of the LGIP, put it in the LTIP, then they'll take them out of the LTIP, put it in the LGIP. The LTIP is not real. They move the dates at will. The people who are letting down the residents of the city of Brisbane are the LNP, who are failing to plan for the necessary infrastructure needed in my ward and beyond now and in the long term.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. Look, I rise to speak briefly on this because it's really important that, you know, as opposition councillors have mentioned, the LTIP is the plan post 2036, right? So this is the plan for the future of this Brisbane, what will be implemented hopefully in the future. And that's incredibly important because of course the LTIP focuses on stormwater, transport parks and land for community facilities. We know, as we'll look, as we, if you looked at the document in the LGIP, once we did get it, once we got the document, the kind of population density that Brisbane will be experiencing. And to be able to keep up with that population density, we have to be delivering the infrastructure that the city needs to be livable, right? And the process in relation to the LTIP, it, it just needs to be put on the record. We are talking about a document where things go to the LGIP, get extended for various years. And I'll speak on that further. I have items in the LGIP that was supposed to be delivered 2016 to 21 that are now going to be delivered 2031 to 36. Or it goes back into the LTIP to disappear. The LTIP actually should be a real and important document that residents of the city can look to, understand and be able to go, well, that's in the future of where I, of where I live, right? Instead, what we have is a document that's constantly moving dates. It's a document that's moving infrastructure, supposedly important infrastructure for the future, back and forth or disappearing. And more importantly, it's what's happened with both the LTIP and the LGIP. And noting that I wasn't here at the start of the process, but I was certainly here.
Point of order, acting mayor.
I'm not quite sure why it's debate and vote in Seri Adam, but if it's a conflict of interest, you really can't speak about LGIP at all when it's debate and vote, Seri Adam.
Stop speaking about LGIP then. We've all spoken about LGIP, they're together.
Thank you.
They're separate for debate, but.
Come back to Item A.
Yeah, but the important thing to also talk about this process, and I was definitely here for the consultation. I was definitely here for the 15,000 letters distributed across the city that put people in a panic. I was certainly here when residents couldn't understand why they had received that letter. And I was certainly here when intrinsic documents, as downplayed through you, Chair, by the acting mayor, weren't delivered to councillors to be able to review. And this was a huge error. And what I want to highlight also about this process, that I don't think any opposition councillors have mentioned, was even when I said there won't be compulsory resumptions, the belief in this council, the LNP council, the belief in their ability to actually give transparent information, this is the community. For the community to say, yes, we believe that you're not going to compulsory resume, for, for example, is at such a low that even when I spoke to groups and groups of the residents after speaking to various people in the planning department, to try to alleviate their concerns, no one believed this council. And every time we are in here. And every time we are in here, when a document like this is purported to be an important document that's placed in here, something that we are supposed to believe in, because I'm a resident of the city too, and it gets changed and it gets moved, the belief in this LMP council reduces even more. And that's what we see as an outcome of this botched-up effort, and an LTIP that, you know, is at the whim of the mega majority of the LMP. And I just wanted to place those on the records, I'm looking forward to talking more about the LGIP shortly, but it's important to note that this LTIP, important document, does it actually happen? Not really.
Further speakers. councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just at that clock, sorry. Look, I'd just arise to join the debate on the amendment to city plan, the long-term infrastructure plan. The LTIP obviously operates alongside the LGIP, and this was adopted in June 2018. The LTIP Amendment 1B is a tailored amendment to city plan which provides for updates to long-term infrastructure planning beyond the 2036 LGIP planning horizon. Now, specifically, the LTIP covers, one, it provides certainty about long-term infrastructure requirements that council has previously identified as necessary to support future development, to enable efficient decision-making by council, landowners and developers. Two, it helps preserve council's ability to deliver long-term infrastructure, such as roads, pathways, parks, land for community facilities and drainage, important to the continued livability and financial sustainability of Brisbane. Three, it maintains infrastructure commitments made with local communities through neighbourhood plans. And four, clarifies the implementation of the Planning Act 2016 for development to provide payment for additional infrastructure costs. The primary purpose of the LGIP is to preserve land through the development assessment process for future open space and infrastructure corridors such as roads and stormwater, which will be required beyond the planning horizon of the LGIP. Council undertook consultation last year on this concurrently with LGIP and received 54 submissions regarding the LTIP items, and as a result of the feedback received, changes were made to 16 items. And I did just want to touch upon the point that councillor Cassidy seemed to be making, which is that when we receive feedback from the community through consultation, we review their feedback, and then we have to make a balanced decision around whether that particular element remains within the LTIP, or whether we change it, or whether we remove it altogether. Now, the reality is if someone makes a submission and they object to a particular item, it doesn't mean we would automatically remove it. The reality is we have to make a balanced decision and give consideration to the concerns of the wider community. So if it's a significant road upgrade project, the fact that one person says, I don't like it, wouldn't mean we would ignore the benefits that might accrue to tens of thousands of residents. So it is about balance, it's about reviewing the different submissions that come in, and that's what we've done in this case. I'd also like to point out that obviously through the error in the upload last week, councillors have had an additional week to review the papers before them today, and this is a statutory process, it's part of council's planning for strategic investment in infrastructure in the long term, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Further speakers. councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on item A, but it's in regards to the process that we received the document, or tried to receive the document. Now, I've got a pretty efficient ward advisor, and she's really good at downloading, she's been with me now for eight years, going on nine, and she was totally frustrated on the size of the package that was coming through. Now, we didn't know that there was things that weren't in there at that stage, and this is a very important document, you know, it's our long-term goals that we set for the city. And it took hours to download some of these, well, most of the documents, these were thousands and thousands of pages that include maps, which are pretty critical when you look at the text and then you try to compare it to the map. And in some cases, the text actually referred to a map, and the location on the map didn't make any sense at all. In other words, there was supposed to be a community centre in the middle of a roundabout, right? And this, and there was two of those. But again, it took many hours to be able to do that. As a matter of fact, she let the system run overnight, right, so that she could, that we could then have a look at them in the morning. Now, if everything had gone right, and I'll take councillor Allen's, in regards to we have an extra week, but what if everything had gone smoothly last week, and we were then expected to try to digest the huge documents that were coming through, the huge lot of documents coming through, we would have, we would not have been able to do a complete scan and look at actually what actually came through without that extra week. And I'm somewhat thankful that maybe that extra week that we got was very helpful, and maybe a bit thankful that maybe some mistakes were made on the distribution of that document for the, for last week. But it's pretty critical that, and I've been doing, again, this stuff for about eight years as well, going on nine, and so I have some idea of what I'm looking at, but I tell you what, and I tell you what, it must be very challenging to the new councillors that came in in '24, right, trying to make sense of it all, with thousands and thousands of pages of documentation coming through. And I just want to make, pay tribute to my ward advisor, and I'm sure all your other ward advisors, if you've actually taken the time and trouble to go through them all, and I'm just going to assume that you have, right, to make sense of it all, that they should be congratulated for this sort of work. Now, what happened last time in 2021, as I was reminded by my ward advisor, is they large documents that came through then, I believe, were actually on a memory stick that you could actually then just download, right? And so that you didn't actually have to do it online, right? And that was very helpful to be able to open that, open that in that way, it came out in the mailbag, actually, and so I was reminded. Yeah, yeah, because if we had to print them all, all those documents, of course, on paper anyways, that came through, without looking at them just online, you know, they would probably be that thick, because, you know, one of the, I think one of the ones was about 1,400 pages, and so that's like three reams of paper, right? And that was just for one of the, one of the big downloads that came through. So, yeah, I just wanted to put that on the record, maybe next time that we do one of these updates for the LGIP and the LTIP, that maybe we have actually look at a different process of sending that information out to the ward, so that we can access it much easier and scan it and search it for those areas that pertain to our own wards, right? And that's the, and that's something that would be very helpful for, I'm sure, all councillors in the chamber here. Thank you.
Further speakers. No further speakers, I call on the acting mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, a little confusing, most of the opposition took their five minutes to talk about the process rather than what was actually in the report, but I'm very glad that we could give you an extra week to read through that, even though councillor Cassidy said it was a week too late, councillor Strunk said, thank God, we have the first week. I've given up, I've given up of trying to keep track of that, and I apologize to those councillors who joined us in 2024 and had absolutely no difficulty reading those documents. I think there was an indication from councillor Strunk that they wouldn't be up to it, and I also apologize to the officers that were definitely besmirched, they are busy officers, it was a big document, and we are gladly and transparently gave you an extra week, especially for you councillor Strunk, obviously, to get through the document.
We'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item B. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item B is the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, Amendment 1B, and as mentioned before with the LTIP, it is required to be updated every five years. It was first brought to the chamber in '21, in that time we've had a state election, a council election, new regional plan, and an unprecedented level of community engagement as well. So councillor has contacted all residents in the area of the proposed changes, with hundreds of submissions being received during last year's community consultation, which did lead to a number of changes being made, in particular in proposed parks in West End, Everton Park, Graceville and Kedron being revised. While this work has been underway, we have continued with our delivery of trunk infrastructure, and since 2018, more than 200 identified trunk infrastructure items have been delivered across our suburbs, such as the Indupili River Walk, the upgraded flood resilient ferry terminal, say that after a bit of speaking, at Guyat Park and New Farm, new and upgraded suburban parks such as Vera Canali Park at Lutwich, major road upgrades such as Kingsford-Smith Drive at Hamilton, Winham Leighton Road at East Brisbane, Telegraph Road through Brackenridge and Fitzgibbon, Lemke Road at Fitzgibbon and Boundary Road at Weycol. The latest review identified more than 1,100 future projects, including 253 park and community facility projects, more than 360 road projects, more than 90 active and public transport projects, and 432 stormwater projects. In those long-term projects include intersection upgrades at Underwood and Gaskell Street in Eight Mile Plains, Waterworks and Green Lane Roads in Ash Grove. There will be more parkland in our growing areas such as Ellen Grove, South Brisbane, Malkravat and Roachdale, new and upgraded sports parks in Stretton, Roachdale, Upper Kedron, Acacia Ridge, Fitzgibbon and Bridgeman Downs. We have made it very, very clear, and we'll say it again, because I heard some of the innuendo and suggestions from those in the previous debate, that these projects will be delivered through strictly voluntary acquisitions, there will be no resumptions for parks, we are not legislatively allowed to resume for parks. And during the housing crisis, we have indicated that we will pause our acquisition of residential property for parkland delivery, and council will now send the proposed amendments to the state government for consideration. Once approved or amended by the state, council will make its final decision on adopting the citywide amendments into the local planning scheme. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you, Chair. I'm speaking to Local Government Infrastructure Plan, LGIP, Amendment 1B. Unfortunately, the amendment to both the 20-year Long-Term Infrastructure Plan, LTIP, and the 10-year Local Government Infrastructure Plan, LGIP, being voted on by this council today, does not provide anywhere near the required amount of green space required for our city's growth. As part of this amendment to the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, LGIP, we are seeing quite a few green space projects being brought forward from the Long-Term Infrastructure Plan, LTIP, to the LGIP. I applaud that. However, we are seeing most of the investment in parks through spending money on new embellishments, investing in upgraded existing parks. In many parts of the city, we are seeing investment in new parks that acquiring of new land. Just one example, in my local ward is a $2 million project within the LGIP to upgrade of the Milton Urban Commons, which is still a relatively new park. What we really need is, in this high-density area, what local residents are pleading for is a new, larger park. At a recent residents forum where we went through various options to make the high-density part of Milton more livable, residents identify an extension to the existing park as the most effective and achievable way. In fact, I have already written to councillor Adam Allen, asking if we could move the $2 million to instead buy an adjacent property that is currently advertised for a similar amount. This land purchase would extend the urban commons and be a far better investment for this community than the new embellishments for a park that has already too small. Seven weeks later, there is still no response from councillor Allen, and of course, the answer will be no, because it's not in the LGIP. The reality is that this council cannot even meet their own existing standards for the amount of green space required for the population. So today, hidden within this amendment to the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, LGIP, is a reduction of our desired standards of service for green space. Our existing standards of service for both parks and sports fields combined is 4.2 hectares per 1,000 people. In this amendment to the LGIP, being voted on by this council, this standard is being reduced to 4 hectares per 1,000 people, a reduction of 0.2 hectares per 1,000 people. Well, that may not sound like much, however, this reduction by 0.2 hectares equates to a reduction in our citywide target for green space by 290 hectares for the Brisbane's projected population in 12 years. 290 hectares by the year 2036. 290 hectares is a massive loss of potential green space for the future of our city. Through this one seemingly minor change, green space is integral to a city that is sustainable, a city that is healthy, and a city that promotes community. We are talking about enough sports fields so everyone can play the sports they choose, parks that are close enough for families to walk to, green space with trees and vegetation for our wellbeing and health, and we are talking about a city that can cope with the emerging challenges of climate change crisis. This council has not been sufficiently investing in green space the last 20 years, despite a population growth of over 100,000 people, which is why they are now reducing our green space targets. The changes to desired standards of service within this LGIP amendment suggest that this council will not be investing enough new green space as long as we have an LMP council. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. councillor Johnston.
I'm happy to go, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, I rise to speak on the grossly entertaining LGIP that council is bringing through for debate here today, and I'll start by just saying that a number of things that I asked for in my submission have been added to the LGIP. They're not on a realistic timeframe, most of them, because they're needed now, but it is what is in there that I am going to speak about. Firstly, just to give people some idea on what's in the LGIP for Tennyson Ward, there are five minor stormwater pipe projects in Oxley, the 21 minor pipe projects in Yorongah West, which have gone off the LGIP, onto the LTIP, back to the LGIP, then been cancelled altogether, they've now come back off the LTIP and they're in the LGIP, but they're not being delivered for another 10 years. So we're just going backwards, this is just, I said it was a house of cards before, that's what it's like. There are four new intersection projects in there, in Annerley, one in Chelma, one in Fairfield, one in Graceville, two in Oxley, and the Cardross Street Bridge at Yorongah's been added. There are zero ferry projects, and I don't think there are any parks projects, but I'll come back to that. Not really any bike projects, the bike projects are all in Jamboree Ward. However, what I am going to talk about, and I'm going to praise the LMP administration for, no doubt, their very thoughtful planning and the effort in which they're going to, you know, meet their commitments they are publicly making today and in future with the LGIP. Now, there are projects that I ask for funding every year in the council budget, and we all know those, some people are probably sick of me raising the same projects year in, year out. Interestingly enough, some of them have now made it on to the LGIP list. I know, it's a good thing councillor Griffiths. Even more surprising is, some of them are listed to be done by next year. Yeah, yeah, I've got, I've got four, four, four I'm going to speak to today. So of the projects coming on to the LGIP, they're listed to be done between 2021 and 2026. Now, next year is the 25-26 council budget in June, and we all know that the LMP take at least two or three years to actually start the design of something before it actually gets delivered. So to meet their commitments, I'm just saying now, this is what the LMP are publicly promising the residents in my ward, that the intersection of Venna Road, Cornwall Street and Waterton Street will be upgraded by 2026 under the LGIP proposal today, that the intersection of Annerley Road, Cornwall Street and Noble Street, very dangerous. That the intersection of Annerley Road, Cornwall Street and Noble Street, very dangerous intersection on my border with councillor Massey, will be upgraded by 2026. That the Graceville Five Ways, which is one of my two top projects, will be undertaken by 2026. Now, that's already been pushed back from the first version of the PIP, as it was known back in the day, it used to be called a PIP before the LGIP. So that's already been pushed back, and I'm sure that they're going to do that one straight away. And then next up, even better, Oxley Road and Clivedon Avenue on the corner of Oxley Road, which separates Oxley and Clivedon, sorry, Corinda and Oxley, apologies, also to be done by 2026. Now, the problem we've got with all of that is, I will take the LNP at their word. I've only got to wait, what, seven months before the budget comes out? And if they're not in the budget, then everybody in Brisbane will know how dishonest the LNP are. I suspect this LGIP may not actually be resolved before the budget comes out next year, because they'll have to go off to the new state government, and the new state government will want to look at it, and councillor Adam Allen doesn't want to rock the boat, he won't, he won't bother anybody up there. So who knows if we even get it back in time. But I will be telling my residents that the LNP has committed to do these things by 2026. Now, the only other problems with this, of course, are, there's pretty much zero public transport improvement or active transport improvement for people in my ward, there's zero investment in parks, there's zero investment in Annerley, Corinda, Fairfield, Graceville, Oxley, Tennyson, Yorong, Pillar, Yoronga.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers.
It's not good enough.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on item B, which is the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, as we're debating, well, as some of us are debating. It doesn't look like, I think on the LTIP it was just, just one LNP councillor decided to, to, yeah, maybe perhaps they just had the briefing and the briefing was, the briefing was shut up, I suspect. Yeah, that's right. The LNP approach to their councillors is, you get what you get and you don't get upset. But that's sort of the approach we will take representing our communities on this side of the chamber, and Labour councillors will continue to contribute to this item as well through this debate. We know the history of this plan. Before us today, we know that it was a 2016 to 2026 plan, a 10-year plan, of which was the shortest possible timeframe under the statutory arrangements that council could have. So there were options to go longer, but here in Brisbane, the LNP wanted to go the shortest possible timeframe for the delivery of projects, because instead of, instead of having the approach that they wanted to do a lot quickly, they knew if they had a short timeframe, they could just remove a lot of stuff and push it out, rather than actually delivering it. So you'd think by choosing a short timeframe, they were doing the right thing, but you realise it's a little more nefarious than that, Chair, when it comes to the LNP. So it was supposed to have been a 10-year plan, but in fact, its, its delivery was two years late, so it actually became an eight-year plan, because it wasn't actually in, in effect until 2018. So only covered about an eight-year timeframe of projects, which, as we know, in the grand scheme of delivering infrastructure in a city like Brisbane, eight years really isn't long-term, particularly when we see projects take, you know, when, when was the metro proposed? Like, January 2016? We now have one bus rolling up and down the south-east busway at the moment. So the LGIP was two years late, only covering eight years of projects. And we know in that time, what we've seen, and we heard from councillor Johnston, is that projects that were originally listed in 20, the 2018 version, over the last, over the last six years have been shifted in and out of the LGIP, so out of the LGIP, into the LTIP, then back again, then out again, or removed altogether from both long-term documents, meaning that they wouldn't be delivered in the first 10 years, they wouldn't be delivered in the next 10 years, and God knows where they would go to die. The last time these amendments, so the amendments, as I mentioned earlier, the last amendment was 2021, a major amendment to these documents in the LGIP, there was that $2 billion deficit. It's in the extrinsic materials there. It shows the level of investment that is required to maintain Brisbane as a livable city in some sense, and Brisbane was $2 billion short on that under the LNP, as I said before. So there's a massive deficit when, from the starting blocks. And we've heard, we heard the hand wringing from the LNP over the years about infrastructure charges not covering that, and that those shortfalls having to be covered from, from council's capital budget, from the ratepayers of Brisbane and from borrowings. But what we've also seen over that time, over those last eight years, since this LGIP was first proposed, is projects like the metro, which went from $944 million to 1.52 billion so far. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, that went from $190 million to $300 million, the Mogal Road project, that is now in excess of $250 million, and counting the multimillion-dollar blowouts, on smaller projects like the cycleway down in the Doughboy Ward in Murray Re, which we were debating the other day. So all of those projects have sucked council's capital budget dry. There was already a $2 billion deficit in the LGIP when we were halfway through it. The LNP changed the, the contracting plan for the delivery of concrete for drainage projects and cut 20% of the funding for basic works for drainage projects and footpaths and curbing and channeling. Lo and behold, of course, we were never going to see the items listed in the LGIP back, whether it was back in 2016, 2018, 2021 or 2024, delivered in this timeframe, and, and certainly not going to be delivered in the next 10-year timeframe either. What we see as well in this LGIP amendment before us today, cost escalations for some of those projects. You see one in Rochedale for, for establishment costs there balloon from over $16 million to $24.5 million, and there are pages and pages and pages like that. You know, we, we understand that they're cost escalations from time to time, wouldn't, wouldn't carry on through a tantrum like the deputy premier does about those cost escalations. Because if we, if we use, if we use his logic, if we use Jared Blais' logic, the other Jared, the bad Jared.
Jared with an O.
Yeah, the O, Jared with an O, yeah. If we use his logic, then all of these projects would have to be cut back. Oh, wait, that's what the LNP are doing.
Yes.
They're cutting these projects. So they cut these projects, Chair, basics, they cut, they cut drainage projects, they cut park projects out of the LGIP, they cut community facilities or delay them from the LGIP, because that's the LNP way, cutting, of course. But what they don't cut, as we know, is the overseas travel. We know that the deputy mayor insisted on staying in those five-star hotels and travelling first class and going to Paris. We know first-class travel all the way, all, that's one of the learnings, that the, that the first-class travel under the channel is very nice.
Only the finest shall do.
Only, only the finest for the LNP. We know that they don't cut back on their parties and their largesse. We know that they're willing to spend 45 bucks a head to invite people out to the Metro Depot, which already blew out by $600 million. We know they won't cut back on their Living in Brisbane advertising material, in fact. They lock in with Australia Post, with Big Bad Australia Post, escalating contracts for higher-cost mail services for the Living in Brisbane, while they slug pensioners with a pensioner tax, Chair. So this is, this is what we have with the LNP here in Brisbane. That's their priorities before us today. And it is no wonder, when you take all that into account, why that funding hole continues to widen, because this LNP regime, well, is asleep at the wheel. All of the, all of the, all of the regime that are, that are here are asleep at the wheel, I guess, and the ones that are driving aren't even here. They're not here at all, they're driving somewhere else. We've seen, we've seen over the last few years, and we all, we've all experienced this with council offices, we've worked with closely, particularly long-term councillors as well, that people with decades of experience in this organisation, in planning and delivering projects, like ones we're talking about here, like drainage projects, whether they are footpaths, whether they are community facilities upgrades and things like that, they're leaving council in droves. We see from the answers in the quans today, that there's 50 less, just in the last few months, 50 less permanent employees in councils, just like that gone. And with them, not just decades of experience, but probably hundreds of years of experience in delivering and planning future projects out in the suburbs of Brisbane. And the way in which they are replaced with external contractors and labour hire companies cannot replace that experience in council. So we have a hollowing out of council's expertise in the organisation, and then we've got a group of people politically who are in charge, who do not care, who do not care about delivering in the suburbs of Brisbane. They absolutely only care about themselves. And looking forward as well, concerningly, is if, as I said before, it wasn't scary enough back in 2021 to see that $2 billion deficit on basic infrastructure, hollowing out council's ability to deliver for the people of Brisbane. We are now looking at a $4 billion deficit when it comes to delivering basic infrastructure out in the suburbs of Brisbane. And from the LNP, no plan, no plan. They've got a plan to have a deficit, they've got a plan to delay projects, they've got a plan to cut projects, but not, cut staff and cut services, but not one single LNP councillor was able to get up today and articulate their plan to get us out of this hole. They are in charge, they've been in charge now for a long time.
Decades.
For decades, for a quarter of a century. And we've got to this point now, after all that time, that there is now no viable way to fund basic infrastructure in the suburbs of Brisbane, and the LNP have no ideas, none whatsoever. I mean, none of the backbenchers have got any guts to stand up in their party room or in council here today and say they actually want to see some of these projects delivered in the suburbs of Brisbane that they represent, because they've obviously been told to shut up, by, shut up by the leadership of the regime. But, you know, it's just quite incredible that none of these LNP councillors will have the guts to get up and actually represent their communities when it comes to the basic infrastructure needs of their communities.
Further speakers.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney, that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Any further debate? Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to contribute to the debate on the LGIP. And of course, this item before us represents quite a major amendment to the LGIP, and this will see us increase our capital expenditure in the forward period from 2021 to 2036 by $1.2 billion. So quite a significant investment that we are making through this document in forward infrastructure for our city. Over $2 billion of investment in the current LGIP amendment will be spent on transport. And $124 million of that is identified for, say, for example, future ferry terminals. Another $719 million identified for active transport infrastructure. And this includes, you know, work recently completed on, say, for example, the South Bank and Dockside terminals, as well as the under-construction Mowbray Park Terminal. It includes recent work completed in the active transport space at Junction Road and Morningside, as well as the future To Wong to West End Bridge, which we'll be talking about later today, as, as well as the St Lucia to West End Bridge. It also identifies a future new ferry terminal at Victoria Street in West End for delivery by 2031. So there's plenty in this LGIP amendment, and plenty that was also supported by independent councillors, by Greens councillors and by Labour councillors. But what stands in stark contrast to the documents in front of us today, Mr Deputy Chair, is the approach taken by those opposite when we actually attempt to deliver infrastructure within the LGIP. Because those opposite have a strong record of requesting things be done and, and asking for infrastructure, and then a strong track record of opposing that infrastructure when we actually go out to do the work. What happened when we proposed new parks in the LGIP and the LTIP? They opposed those new parks because people were going to lose their homes. They, when it came to new bridges, Mr Deputy Chair, the To Wong to West End Green Bridge, what did they say when we proposed that? We were opposed by Greens because of the green space that would be lost in those parks due to the landing points of those bridges. What about bikeways? Dornoch Terrace, supported by the local councillor, councillor Massey, in the LGIP. And what happened when we tried to go and deliver Dornoch Terrace, opposed by then-councillor Sriranganathan in the community? And new ferry terminals, so this new ferry terminal in West End, asked for, requested, demanded by the local councillor, both councillor Sriranganathan and now councillor Massey. But I can almost guarantee you, Mr Deputy Chair, when we go to deliver that terminal, there will be 10 things I hate about this terminal that will come up, that will mean the Greens will be issuing a flyer to the community opposing it, or calling on the services to be free, and so frequent that a ferry arrives every four minutes or something like that. It will be, there is always an excuse when it comes to the Greens. So yes, they will demand more infrastructure be put into this LGIP as they have done today. But when it comes to actually rolling it out, they'll oppose those efforts to roll it out, and they'll wind up their communities and get them into a real campaign of fear and spin, and they've done it many, many times, they're very good at it, Mr Deputy Chair. So I think you not only have to watch what they say about this LGIP, but you also have to watch what they do in the community when items of the LGIP are attempted to be rolled out. Now, councillor Cassidy also made some points in this debate, and he made points about items not within the LGIP appearing, and, and this council was strategically focused on other items, things like the metro, things like the Green Bridge, things like major intersection upgrades. Well, it's important to note that items within the LGIP generally don't attract any federal funding or state funding. It's council that has to bear the brunt of that on its own back. Many of the major infrastructure items that we are pursuing, the transformative transport projects for this city, we have attracted hundreds of millions of dollars of federal money to address projects and priorities for this city.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
And we're not ashamed of doing that, Chair.
Any further debate? Councillor Collier.
Yep, thanks very much, Chair. And just adding to the debate on item B, in their opening remarks, the acting mayor talked a lot about promises, and how this document was a big old promise, a big old LNP promise to the community, yes. And we know how the, the LNP's promises to the community often turn out. In fact, I think that often if the acting mayor says something, you can almost believe the opposite to be true. So you will understand why councillors on this side of the chamber, you know, treat this document and the process in which it was completed with a bit of trepidation. The acting mayor talked a bit, as well in her opening remarks, about how councillors, local councillors have been critical of the process in which this document has been created. And, you know, through you, Chair, to the, to the acting mayor, I say this, we are critical of the process.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
We are critical of the process because residents have come to us and told us how unhappy they were. In fact, residents contacted our offices in droves and droves and droves. And this resulting LGIP document, and the LTIP as well, you know, for, for the matter, is yet another example of how this is really fake community consultation done by the LNP. And it, this whole process has been completely botched under the leadership of this LNP council. We, I have an example in my community where a member of the public, during the consultation process, after they received a letter saying that their property was going to be a process, after they received a letter saying that their property was going to be resumed for a future project in who knows when, wanted some more information and wanted to have a discussion with literally anyone in council about what it could possibly mean, how much of their home could be resumed, what were the impacts, was this even a project that was even going to get out off the ground? And did that conversation happen? No, it didn't. There was, it was an absolute refusal, actually, on behalf of council, to even have the decency to pick up the phone, to call this person who just wanted to ask a few questions before making their submission and make an informed decision. And I think that is absolutely fair enough that they requested that. And, and I was really disappointed on their behalf that no one from council could, could be bothered to pick up the phone. But not only that said, we will not contact you, you have to make a submission and that's how we'll engage with you. The residents of Brisbane have been put through this terribly managed process where they have been disrespected and ignored. And then through the process, some residents where they could and where they had information made submissions, thoughtful ones, only to be ignored again by the Lord Mayor and this LNP council. How is this even allowed to happen? I'm aghast for the people of Brisbane who have been let down by the lack of inclusion of any real consultation and genuine investment by this LNP council. And locally in Belimba, council's happy to approve over 1,000 new residences, new dwellings. And, but what we talk about in our community is the real lack of investment to address the number one concern of local residents. And that is how the peninsula will cope with traffic congestion. It's not just 4171 that misses out through this process. There are suburbs in every, there are suburbs in every single part of Brisbane who miss out. These documents and plans are illuminating though. I'm pleased that we are required to do these by the Queensland Government, because it's good to know what council isn't able to do because of their wrong priorities. And a common theme of this administration and the LNP themselves is, of course, to cut basic services. Only in the past year, we've seen a reduction in essential projects like councillor Cassidy mentioned, concreting footpaths and delivering suburban drainage. This is the expectation of the people of Brisbane, that we are able to get the basics right. These decisions lie ultimately with the Lord Mayor, and the Lord Mayor has taken these decisions to cut. And now he has to wear the consequences of prioritising things like millions of dollars of advertising at the expense of suburban projects. We'd like to see a refocus of this council's priorities to get, to put residents first and to put basic council services and projects at the forefront of our priorities.
Any further debate?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Councillor Collier, as I talked about them complaining in the LGIP, that was the debate before in the LTIP, and they did not complain about the process of the amendment. They complained about the process of loading the documents onto the computer, of which we gave them an extra week to study.
Any further debate? Councillor Messi.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the LGIP amendment. I wanted to ensure that there are continued comments on the public record about some of the key infrastructure deliveries for the Gabba Ward connected to this amended LGIP. Beginning with the welcome addition of the second West End Ferry Terminal. This ferry terminal has been sitting in the city plan since 2011, when it was, when Montague Road was first upzoned, and has been something that residents in West End have been calling on for years. While the inclusion of it into the LGIP is welcome, the delivery date, which is anywhere between 15 to 20 years since the project was first added to the city plan, is a bit of a joke. It would come as no surprise that I'll be advocating for West End residents that this terminal gets delivered as soon as possible, particularly with the increasing density in the area. The Montague Road project and relevant intersections is another one where what we've seen is a shift. So initially having delivery days from 2016 to 2021, these deadlines have now been obviously missed, including the Montague Road project's current funding from state government that exists currently, these deadlines have been missed. With the majority of the project is now looking tagged for delivery 2026 to 31, again, 10 to 15 years later. Obviously, I will be advocating for the delivery of this important transportation corridor and much needed work, and for it to be delivered much sooner than it is tagged by Brisbane City Council. Another one, of course, is the library extension and community facility. We've know, many people here know that I've talked about the Karupa Library, no accessibility, no toilets. This item is in the LGIP. Right now, there is an opportunity with Karupa Hall, which is right next door to Karupa Library. This is the perfect opportunity for a local community centre and a library extension right next to the library. We have this chance now, we don't need to re-buy land, it's already owned by council. I look forward to working with community facilities and hopefully this council to actually deliver that, because the opportunity exists right now. It's good to see that the long-promised riverwalk connecting Dockside and Mulberry Park is finally in the LGIP. Obviously, there's major delays to that timeframe. My concerns is, again, this project will not be delivered, and by the time we get around towards the estimated costs, will continue to rise and spiral, and the LNP-led administration will find a way not to deliver it. But we are hopeful that this is one step forward. There are multiple park upgrades, which are important for the ward that is, is undeniably having massive population increases. It's good to see those. Will they be delivered or we will have to fight for it? We'll see. I'm disappointed that two specified parts at the northern tip of South Brisbane are moving from a 2021 to 26 delivery, and now to a 31 to 36 delivery, noting that the TLPI that this Liberal council and the previous ALP council collabora, state government collaborated on, will undeniably increase that density in that area, even though we haven't seen an approval yet. But nonetheless, the delivery of these parklands is crucial to be done now, before we have that density increase. Green space is important, it's already in short supply. I recognise that there are two other parks that became specified. These appeared out of nowhere and caused major concerns for residents. Not taking residents on the journey or delivering sufficient information means a break of trust. The LNP council has broken the trust of many West End residents. And so while I note that one of the parks has become unspecified, it is still there for a delivery, a new park delivered by 2026, and I am hopeful that we will actually see this new park importing for West End to be delivered. I want to quickly acknowledge changes to the urban common within the service desirables. Over the years, former councillor Jonathan Sriganathan and myself have been pushing for the delivery of parks across the ward, noting the lack of green space and investment for the Karupa Peninsula. We need a more dynamic model, I hope this will be able to bring it. Lastly, and most importantly, the problem with the LGIP is that there's no actual budget allocated. These projects, as I've demonstrated, can be extended or taken back.
Councillor Messi, your time has expired.
We need to actually deliver.
Any further debate? Councillor Strong.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item B, and like councillor Johnson, I'll be looking forward to a lot of these, a lot of these projects that are actually supposed to be up and running by the Budget 2025-26. Now, just in starting with, with the, with one of them, there is, there was some great community consultation in regards to one of the items, and that was a bike lane that was supposed to be built along a creekway in the Ellengrove area. And those residents that were backing on to the creek were, had concerns that there was going to be a footpath and a bikeway through there, which could cause some flooding issues, right? That was their concerns. Now, council took that on board, and, and now they have decided, which is terrific news for these residents, that those bike lanes will be on Bagnall, Levitt and Constendine Street, which, which was, which probably makes good sense, right? Makes good sense. We've got to keep our waterways as clear from infrastructure as possible, especially when they're the drainage for a lot of our stormwater. Now, there is also in the LGIP a block of land that we are proposing to, propose acquisition of, in Waterford Road, along Constendine Street as well, it's on the corner there, and for a, for a neighbourhood, for a neighbourhood park. It's about two and a half acres and, but I think probably in the end, because we're developing a very large district park, about 500 metres up the road, that, that probably will not probably come to fruition. I think also that block would be far better off with some residential, because it's, it's positioned quite, it's positioned very well to take advantage of a future train station along that line that goes out to Springfield. Now, if we, if we have a look at the district park, as I was just calling up Waterford Road, which is called the Ellengrove District Park, we just did consultation on the weekend there, and that's quite a large investment that council's wanting to do in, in that park area, up to about 26 millions, 26 million over stage one and two. And there's been a great deal of interest, as you can imagine, from my, from my residents in regards to that district park. A lot of people wanted the pool, other people wanted sports fields, there's been a lot of interest on a lot of sports. And I won't preempt what that, the outcome will be, of course, because we don't know precisely, because we're just doing the second rounds of consultation now. But I'll just say one thing, that the men shed, Forsyth Men's Shed, which actually has to move from their premises in High Street within probably 12, 14 months, are really keen to access some land in that precinct. And they were out in force on Saturday for the consultation, and you'll be hearing a lot more from them, because they really need to find a new home. Now, if we move down the road to Woolaroo and Johnson Road, there's been a, it's, it's been allocated or, it's in the LGIP to be upgraded, that intersection. Now, I believe that intersection upgrade will probably be roundabout, not a set of lights, because of the underground infrastructure. But there was money allocated, about 1.4 million for that. Now, it's, it's on the border of Logan and, and Brisbane City Council, but the, the mayor said all that he was going to do over the next 12 months or so, or whatever, for this last budget anyways, was, and it was a promise at the election as well, is to consult with Logan, City Council about that. But there was money already allocated to do the upgrade anyways, and that was allocated some years ago, so, or, or at least it was indicated that they were going to upgrade that area. But only, only they were only going to start a conversation with, with Logan, so I don't know how that works. I don't why, why we're just starting the conversation, you would have thought that it was in the LGIP, that that would have happened years ago. Now, if we move off to, we fly over to Doondella, they're, they're proposed that there's more than 4,000 people are going to move into this, into this growing suburb of Doondella over the next 10 years or, or, or less. And there has been some, been some land that council purchased, or was, was given over by developers for parkland.
Councillor Strong, your time has expired. Any further debate? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to briefly touch on some of the submissions from residents in attachment for clause B. I did note on there that there was someone who submitted Ritchie Road, Deveries Road, Eskie Road, Craft Road, all of those areas surrounding, and to paraphrase, referred to this area as country, bushland, not to hate on the regions, but I think this is one thing that it's funny, because they asked for actually for this area to be upgraded, to look a bit more modern. I think the area still does actually look the same, and this is despite the fact that we've already gone from hundreds of residents to thousands. And I think this is one of the things that I keep reiterating since I've day one, since that I've been elected in this chamber. And just to touch on comments very briefly from what councillor Charles Strunk said before about the complicated documents, as a new councillor, it's true, I hate to admit it, but it was a little bit complicated for me to go through, and I think that it's a bit disingenuous that you have to cross-check multiple documents to learn what projects will and won't resume, to learn the same truth every time, which is that it won't be funded because of the state government. And I wonder if this will be the same response that we still get over the next six months. So I'm very curious to see what this new updated document will look like, and I'll wonder, and I would love to compare and contrast, and hopefully we get a different outcome. But the same goes for the six months, various meetings that I've gone through since I've been a new councillor as well. Just to find out basic information, I found that it's been quite difficult just to get a, a simple summary that really could have been provided on one sheet of paper from day one about a variety of projects. Just to show that we've also tried to do the hard yards, at least as a councillor in my own area, with the cards that we're, we're dealing with. I heard that councillor Nicole Johnson earlier said that it takes maybe two or three years for a design to actually be delivered. So recently I did sign off on a SEF project for a CPO design to create a traffic island on Ritchie Road to connect to a footpath that's pre-existing, because otherwise it'll cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to build the infrastructure that probably should have already been there. We're picking up the bill of developers really in this situation, but I think it's a sunk cost that we have to do, given residents have been waiting for years and years and paying rates and get sick of it to the point where they're actually asking if they can contribute their own funds as well. That was one side, sorry, Steve. That was one side that I just quickly wanted to mention. And just to add to this as well, given the timeline for the LGIP to stop by 2026 with a variety of goals, one other goal that I did want to mention to this chamber so councillors are aware, is that there'll be a split campus model in Polara State School by 2026, where the, the primary school will actually be in two different locations down Ritchie Road. The problem that I see with this, and the reason why it's important that we keep to our goals, is that with this split campus model, there's actually currently no pre-existing footpath connection that grows from one campus to the other. So my big concern that I have is whether or not this will be finished on time, given I've stretched what I can with our SEF budget, I'm quite concerned. It really does rely on the Lord Mayor next year to fund this big project. It's a capital-listed one, I'll be submitting it next year, and I really hope to see a good outcome from that one. Really, the council standard response, it's been disappointing over the past few months to learn that it's subject to funding. I keep getting that response back, so I hope to see something a little bit more different and also consistent as well. When I first was reading this document, I did have to ask our local councillors, you know, why does, why does LGIP keep going to LTIP? What does that mean? Why does that keep getting transferred between each other? Really, I thought the requests were quite simple, and I do hope to get a bigger briefing as well on that sports park, that sports facility in Stretton. Can I also ask while I'm saying this, if we can also make that an Olympic destination? I'm sure Stretton local families would love to see badminton courts there so that we can produce a future Olympian in our area. Thank you, Chair.
Any further debate? Councillor Griffith.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just allow someone from the other side to stand up and talk on this, but there's silence, mute, no one's talking, no one's saying anything. Well, I just want to put on the record, and I know we've only got five minutes now, this LGIP is a sham. It is a sham. And we go through this every few years, where officers spend a significant amount of time preparing lists that no one ever reads, no one ever uses, and this administration never does. And then they bring the lists back, and they push all the jobs forward, and they never get completed. And this is what's happening here again. I'm seeing more jobs put forward because they haven't been done over the last 10 years. One of the perfect examples is Acacia Ridge Sports Park. That was meant to be done last 10 years. We did a master plan for it. We were meant to have done it. It's not delivered, not done, the parking isn't done, the sport fields aren't done, there's all that land sitting there, waiting to be used by our communities that are burgeoning, that are growing, and this administration has done nothing. I have example after example after example that I want to talk about, but one of the things I want to say first up is that one of the most deceptive things with this plan is it's like what we're gonna do, we never do, we're gonna do, we never do it, but then we spend all the money on the inner city. So we do Metro, we do Kingswood Smith Drive, we do another bridge for Kangaroo Point, God knows, you can't do enough bridges for those people in Kangaroo Point. Money is sucked out of the suburbs, sucked out of all the buildings that we have going on in Acacia Ridge and Archfield and Coopers Plains for Industry, all that money is sucked out and spent in the inner city. All that money is sucked out and spent in the inner city, time and again. And if you want examples of that, look at the intersection of Carey and Beatty Roads. Just recently, I've had Archfield Airport Corporation contact me because they can't get any plan out of council about when they're going to upgrade those roads. They want to expand, they want their industries to do better, they want to attract more traffic. Do we have a plan? No, going nowhere. It's written somewhere, not gonna happen, councillor. Our 600 community facilities, the majority, the majority, and it's embarrassing to sit in, sit in, I just find it embarrassing to sit in our presentations on what we've learnt from Paris. The majority of our 600 community facilities are not accessible. They're not up to current accessibility standards. 600. Is that contained in this plan? No, not at, not at all. And even if it was, it wouldn't happen. Ipswich Road, no plan, Ballam Road, no plan, Beatty Road, no plan. What else do we have? Oh, waterways. Waterways, no plan, drainage, no plan. In fact, 20 years with the L M P in power and flooding has got worse in my suburbs. 20 years with the L M P in power, flooding has got worse. More residents are receiving more letters saying they're going to flood. Is there a plan for flood mitigation? Not one we're gonna do. Oh, we, we might do some flood mitigation over in the western suburbs because they're, they're, they're nice people, we like those people. We certainly don't like the people of Rockleigh or Archfield or Acacia Ridge in terms of looking after them. Libraries, is there a library for Polara in there? No library for Polara. We jam all those people out there, we don't give them roads, we don't give them a library, we don't give them services. That's the L M P way, no wonder that person got elected out. No wonder. Footpaths, no plan, sports grounds, no plan. This is a sham, it's a sham plan, it's going nowhere. It's a document that we have to do, and this L M P administration have done it two, what, three years late, two, three years late? You've got a sham plan here that just doesn't meet the needs of Brisbane's residents.
Commissioner Griffith, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the local government infrastructure plan. And I did want to quickly provide some context and background. So as the deputy mayor indicated, the L G I P and L T I P are long-term strategic plans that forecast needs for new and upgraded infrastructure based on anticipated population and employment growth and trends. Not only do these strategic documents ensure infrastructure planning is integrated with land use planning, it also ensures that timings and costings are considered. They also provide transparency regarding a local government's intention for the provision of trunk infrastructure, as well as providing a basis for imposing conditions about infrastructure and infrastructure charges on development approvals. So that's actually a critical point. This allows us to run and support our infrastructure, infrastructure charging regime. In 2018, the L G I P replaced the previous priority infrastructure plan and identified approximately 1,000 future trunk infrastructure projects. Since that time, approximately 200 items have been delivered. And the, the deputy mayor touched on the Indrapelli River Walk, upgrades to flood resilient ferry terminals and a range of parks across the city. This isn't the first amendment to the L G I P. There was an L G I P 1A amendment that came into effect in December 2021. This amendment in particular is in response to the statutory requirement to update the L G I P and L T I P every five years to ensure the plans remain compliant current and relevant. Mr. Chair, both the L G I P and the L T I P are complex, detailed and intricate documents that require a significant time for considering the planning, population and economic modelling and assumptions. As part of these considerations, the proposed amendment needs to demonstrate financial sustainability, including council's ability to fund the trunk infrastructure identified. This takes into consideration council's asset management plan, long-term financial forecast, and ensures that the proposed L G I P amendments have common assumptions regarding growth. And this is taken into consideration when determining revenue expenses and the timing of trunk development through the budget process. Mr. Chair, last year, we undertook community consultation on the amendment with council writing to affected property owners. As a result of this consultation, council received 705 submissions about all trunk infrastructure categories and from suburbs right across the city. Unfortunately, council's review of the submissions and proposed changes did take longer than expected due to the number of submissions, the detail received and the impact of the local government elections. Now, despite what councillor Johnston stated last time, the council is forcing change onto communities that don't support it, we have listened to the community's feedback and made a variety of changes. This includes listening to the West End community regarding the proposed park within Rogers Street. And this item has now been modified to an indicative location rather than specific properties. And isn't it great, you know, we, we have the Greens come into the chamber here and, you know, demand a park infrastructure and additional green space. And as soon as we provide an opportunity to do that, they're, they're against it. So they really are sending quite mixed messages around how green, a green open space gets provided and how it's funded. There's also a, an item there where the graceful community did not support a proposal for a local park in Honour Avenue and Long Street West. And as a result of this community feedback, this item has been removed from the amendment package. And while some items have been changed, we are not in a position to change all items as some relate to critical infrastructure for the wider community. And this is a point I really want to make. You know, we heard much of, much comment from the other side of the chamber about, oh, look, you know, you didn't listen to residents, they put in a submission and you didn't change it. Well, the reality is there are some submissions and some infrastructure projects that we can't reasonably change because one or two people don't want them. And the reason is that some of these infrastructure projects, in particular, some of the road network projects, they benefit tens and tens of thousands of residents. So it's about considering the submissions, looking at the, the citywide impact and making a balanced judgement to make sure we, we put in place the right plans for the future. So this will now go down to the state government for review, and we hope to bring it back in the not-too-distant future. Obviously, it takes a while to review a big document like this, but it'll come back next year. And we will then look to embed it in city plan. Thank you.
Any further debate? No further debate, acting mayor, we do have to reply. Now, I'll put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Yep, please, please read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour, five against and two abstentions.
The motion's carried. Acting Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of 4th November 2024, please.
Mr. Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 4th of November 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
It was moved by the acting mayor, seconded by councillor Edelman. That the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting, dated Monday, 4th November 2024, be adopted. Acting Mayor.
Thank you.
Of order.
Yes, could I ask that item B is taken seriously for debate and vote purposes, please?
Item B, yeah. Yeah, acting mayor.
We're doing A and C first, I presume? Deputy Chair, thank you. One thing I didn't note, I didn't mention in the wrap-up around the city in the last report was the Lord Mayor's Multicultural Business Awards on Friday night, which were absolutely spectacular. It was a great night, I think we've heard from some of the people, it was the best they've had. The dancing started very early, the team organised it well, so they were well and truly in party mode early. Thank you to all the councillors who came, including councillor Kim. We also had a few former councillors as well, with councillor Owen and former councillor, councillor Cumming as well. So it was great to see everybody out dancing. The best awards of that obviously were the best dressed traditional costume, which was always, always a great one to actually judge. And I have to say, I am very, very sorry that unfortunately the Lord Mayor was too sick to be there because I think he would have really enjoyed himself. It was a great night. So thank you to the international relations team, they put together such a great show every single year. The items before us in this debate, item A and item C. Item A is to establish a new lease for council's current Fleet Solutions Depot in Weycall. Council's current lease commenced on the 1st of July 2021 and expires on the 30th of June 2026. The recommendation in the item seeks to terminate this lease and establish a new lease expiring on the 30th of June 2030. The Weycall Fleet Solutions Depot is used to support the management and maintenance of council's fleet assets. It includes a large range of assets, including cars, trucks, trailers, mobile lunchrooms, boats, excavators, road sweepers, forklifts, buggies, pumps, generators, chainsaws, blowers, whipper snippers and mowers, just to mention a few. The agreement includes financial benefits for council, meaning we can deliver better services in the suburbs and keep costs down. And it is in council's best interest to remain at this site until at least the end of the new term in 2030. Item C is the rejection of a claim for compensation for Tuong to West End Bridge. The item seeks council's approval to reject a compensation claim resulting from the resumption and to authorise an advance payment against the compensation. Council issued the notice of intention to resume to acquire the land for the project on the 16th of November 2020, with the Queensland Government officially cassetting the land on the 28th of June 2024. Before resumption, owners had obtained a development approval to construct three 15-storey residential unit towers containing 291 units. Council wants to ensure that the necessary land is preserved for the future construction of Tuong to West End Bridge, a bridge that will span nearly 300 metres over the river and link the West End Peninsula and South Bank to the retail and activity hub of Tuong and its surrounding suburbs as well. So we recognise the positive level of support for the Tuong to West End Bridge, and we are confirming our commitment to deliver this bridge once further funding is actually secured. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further debate? Commissioner Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair, I rise to speak on these two items, A and C. Starting with the lease of premises for Fleet Solutions. When you look at this lease before us today, it seems appropriate that the lease of council's Fleet Solutions Depot is extended. It's a necessity to the work that council does in running a large fleet of vehicles. Although the figures in the clause before us are commercial in confidence, I do note that there is a 4% annual rent increase in this arrangement, in this agreement for us today. It makes sense where you can extend a lease in an existing location when it's an option. That's usually what happens there. But it is baffling to me when I consider that council, under the L M P, is willing to pay an extra 4% to develop or a property owner, but don't have that same value in mind when they are looking at their own workforce. Now, in this Fleet Solutions Depot before us today, this, this is to, is to house council's fleet of vehicles, all of the staff to look after the maintenance of them, the replacement of them and managing that fleet and all those contracts that go with that. So all of those staff that are working there know that the L M P are willing to pay the owner of that depot a 4% increase year on year, but they're only willing to pay those workers that are working there a 3% pay rise. And not even, well, it's year on year, but they're only offering that for two years to the workers out there, but they're offering a 4% increase for years and years and years on the depot. And what makes matters worse, I guess, particularly when you look at how this L M P regime is treating its workers, is that they have handed themselves and all of us a 4% pay increase as councillors, and that pay was backdated. But the offer that this L M P regime have put on the table for workers in Brisbane City Council is a lower pay increase with no backdating of that offer and gutting, gutting redundancy clauses within the enterprise agreement. So it's pretty clear, it's pretty clear, even when you look at a simple, a simple lease, what the L M P's priorities really are when it comes to council. It's certainly not those that work for them. On clause C, the rejection of the claim for compensation for the Tuong to West End Bridge, these negotiations are obviously done through the necessary processes as they play out. And we've seen that over the last couple of weeks in here. And we have supported those items when they have come. But what, what we know in this specific case here is that this project is one that council will require an estimated $350 million to go ahead. It's what they'll need to get this project out of the ground now. History, well, so we're led to believe anyway. History tells us that green bridges under this L M P regime blow the budget. We saw that with Kangaroo Point, which was going to be $190 million and blew out to $300 million. We haven't seen the design of this one, Chair, whether it will include the two-storey restaurant. Maybe it'll have some high-rise on this bridge. We know that when the L M P seek to commercialise and privatised those public assets, we see the cost of that go up. Cost of that go up for the public aspect of it. The ratepayers have to pay for that, but the private enterprise make a tidy profit on the way through. And at risk, I guess, of saying this, councillor Murphy may increase the cost of the opening party. If I say it again, according to him, every time we mention it, it goes up by maybe a few thousand, maybe tens of, tens of thousands of dollars. But we know that not just the bridges, but the parties that the L M P party boys throw are expensive, are expensive. Now, each of these bridges is coming in at an astronomical cost to the ratepayers of Brisbane. And the proposed parcel of land, of which this one is going to land at on the Tuong side, has increased in value over the years. Obviously, it has because since, since this bridge was first announced, a development application has been lodged and approved on-site. So there's a huge amount of increased value to that site because it has an approved development application on it now. Now, if the Lord Mayor and his team had all their ducks in a row back in 2019, when they first announced this project and started the process of acquiring that land then, they obviously knew where it was going to go way back then, it would have been much, much more affordable. And it would have reduced the cost of this bridge if they do in fact intend on building it. But they've left it too long because lo and behold, the money was never really there. It was never really there. The Lord Mayor was too busy pitching this sort of grandiose idea of five green bridges for $550 million, and that's what his election, his initial election was centred around. He was going to build five, he promised the people of Brisbane, five green bridges for the princely sum of $550 million. We now know one of those costs $300 million a pop, and, and the L M P have run out of money. So they have, they really have, they, they have a, a sort of a hope and a dream that this one will be built sometime, but they actually have no plan to do it now. And yet we are going down the path of resuming a very expensive block of land that currently has an approved development application for high-rise housing on it. has an approved development application for high-rise housing on it. So you really hope at this point, which is now we're five years down the road on this green bridge journey, that the napkin of which the Tuong to West End Bridge was designed on has been kept, kept clean and neat and tidy and doesn't have any watermarks on it for posterity, so they can frame that up and stick that in the Lord Mayor's office. Because that should be a reminder, not just to the people of Brisbane, but to him every day of the week, that he bothers to show up to work, and I know he's only part-time these days, but on the odd day that he does go into his office in City Hall, the Lord Mayor will see that and it will remind him of his failure in office to deliver his marquee policy of this green bridge there. We know that this regime promise a lot and don't deliver. They commit to a lot, and as we've seen in this debate today, they don't deliver, and when they do, it's never on time and never on budget. So the LMP regime didn't have the foresight or the processes in place to get ahead of this enormous cost increase for this land, which they're now seeking to resume. They were more worried about flashy headlines than the detail. And again, on everything, we see the people who have to pay for that is not the LMP, it's the people of Brisbane. They can dilly-dally and they can change their mind on things and they can make up new stories and new narratives, and the Lord Mayor can make up a whole new story claiming that he didn't ever intend to deliver five bridges, or the $550 million was only ever intended to be a contribution, or whatever new story he comes up with to cover his failure. But at every stage of delay and cost blowout, it costs the people of Brisbane more and more. And it is, it's pretty poignant, I think, that this item has come on the same day that we've been debating the LGIP and the LTIP, because it's making that point for us. That the more that these projects, like these inner-city, the Green Bridges projects, which have been poorly planned and poorly managed along the way, the more they blow out along the way and the more they are delayed, the more they eat into the basics. The less is spent then on basic drainage, on park maintenance and upgrades, on new community facilities, on new libraries out in Polara, in fact even on a new library out in Drapilly, which is now not happening, sorry, because that land's about to be flogged off, which we'll debate shortly. Because of the blowouts on these projects, these green bridge projects, we're seeing less and less delivered in the suburbs of Brisbane and we're seeing people pay more and more. We're seeing rates go up by more than the LMP are offering their workers in terms of a wage increase. We are seeing fees and charges up by 10% this year, and we're seeing this new pension attacks come in as well into effect on the 1st of January. So people are paying more and getting less under this LMP administration. And if you want another reason why, you just have to look at projects like these Green Bridges projects that demonstrate that very clearly.
Any further debate? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you Chair, I rise to speak in support of item A, the leasing arrangement for 16 Industrial Avenue at Weycol. So Fleet Solutions have been at this location for over a decade and accommodate the majority of our Fleet Solutions staff. Our fleet team undertake a range of planned and unplanned activities on-site, maintaining a diverse range of plant and equipment, including passenger and commercial fleet trucks, and not to mention major and minor plant. The site at Weycol is fully equipped with facilities to support a range of activities, including bodybuilding, auto electrical servicing, spray painting booths and a range of other mechanical works. The facility also has a fitted gantry to support major maintenance works, as well as a depot that is always well-stocked, providing parts and consumables to allow our mechanics to do what they do best. Each year, our team undertakes over 2,000 planned activities, which could be anything from machining brake discs on green space vehicles to repairing and maintaining chainsaws. These guys truly do an amazing job of keeping our city moving and we are truly, truly grateful. The item before us today seeks to terminate the current lease arrangement on the site, which was due to expire in June 2026, and enter into a new contract commencing on the 1st of January 2025. I commend this item to the chamber.
Any further debate? Councillor Chonghua.
Thank you Chair, I speak on the proposal disposal of a land of Lot 1 Mogal Road in Drapilly. This lot comprises land acquired for the Mogal Road Corridor.
Sorry, Councillor Chonghua, we are debating A and C a moment. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you Mr Deputy Chairman, I rise to speak on items A and C. Firstly, I definitely support Fleet Solutions being able to stay in their current location out at Weycol. It's where my car is serviced and they always do a great job whenever I go out there to see them. However, I am confused about why the lease is being done 20 months in advance of when it would normally be done and only partway into the current term. That question has not been answered by the deputy mayor nor the chair-in-charge councillor Hutton. I am confused about why. Were we approached by the owner of the block? Was this something council initiated? What was the reason? So it seems very odd to me. Obviously leases are negotiated in advance, but there does seem to be something behind this, and I'm curious as to what it was, or what it is, I'm sorry. Certainly it's in the best interests of our council officers to remain where they are, but given there's a very large amount of money that is paid out every year for this, we should be transparent and accountable about why. It's almost $800,000 a year that is paid out just for the lease, and then there are obviously outgoing, and it's a 4% increase every year. So 30-something thousand dollars every year. Now, I note that council has negotiated some discounts, which are commercial in confidence. I suspect if you add them up, they probably equate to something in here related to the increase in the lease cost. But I just think some further clarity about why this has come up, why it's been done in the way that it has, that would be very worthwhile. I am very confused about why council has not negotiated more favourable terms when it comes to lease terms, particularly with the annual renewal. Either CPI or 4% as a ceiling would have been appropriate. You know, obviously when, you know, inflation's up and CPI is high, we've got a big problem, but that may not be the case for the next few years, and it's not good if we're paying above board for the rental increases. So I think there should have been a mechanism included in there by council to negotiate something that was favourable to council. So I hope the deputy mayor will tell us why this has been done at this point, who initiated it, and why it has happened now, which is in the middle of the term. You just don't do things like that. So anyway, hopefully someone will explain. With respect to item C, well, here's another great stuff up that's on the books for council. Clearly we're going to end up in court, most likely over this issue. There's a big disagreement between the owners' consolidated properties and council over the value of this resumption. Council, when allowed to again, because it's a big secret, disclose what the dollar figures are, but there's a big gap. The parties, i.e. council and consolidated, cannot come to terms. I just hope no one in this room has a conflict of interest when it comes to this matter. I know consolidated shouldn't be making any donations to anybody at this point, but I certainly know that I get invited to their events and I always say no, but I note the Lord Mayor regularly attends and no doubt other very senior LMP councillors, probably the acting mayor as well. So I just hope that any conflicts or perceptions have been.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston's imputing motive is she has a belief there's a conflict of interest, she needs to claim it, not just throw muck over the other side and hope it sticks.
Well, it's my understanding, Mr Deputy Chair, that it's my obligation to make sure no one has a conflict of interest, and I'm just simply reminding people, I checked, I said I'm just checking, that no one has a conflict of interest. And as I said, it's publicly on the record, the Lord Mayor attends the opening of major consolidated pre-sales events, property openings and so forth, and I was just checking that no one else has a conflict of interest here, because we want to avoid those problems. So I don't know who's right and who's wrong in this, I don't have any inside information with respect to this, other than I know that this council has botched its green bridge project extraordinarily. It waited a long time until this project had been DA-approved and started, and then they did the resumption. It's been botched. We don't even know when the green bridge project might actually start.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Any further debate? No further debate? Oh, Councillor Murphy.
Thank you Deputy Chair, I rise to speak on this item, and I note what I said before in the LGIP debate has come true, in particular the commentary that we've heard about the Green Bridges Programme or the new Bridges for Brisbane Programme. The reality is that the Lord Mayor committed to building new green bridges for Brisbane in 2019 when he came to office as the unelected Lord Mayor of Brisbane. He has now won two convincing elections to the Brisbane City Council as Lord Mayor and retained a strong majority in the council chamber for the vision that was and that is the new Bridges for Brisbane Programme. One of the bridges, the Breakfast Creek Bridge, is already open. The second bridge, and quite a grand bridge, I must admit, the Kangaroo Point Bridge, will open in just over a month's time. And planning is already underway on the third bridge, the Tuong to West End Bridge. And this land resumption allows us to progress with that bridge. It means we now own sites, landing sites on both sides of the Brisbane River to allow us to progress it. And as I've mentioned in committee and here in the chamber, the economics for these bridges stack up. In fact, the only thing that has been wrong when it comes to these bridges is the projected patronage. In the case of the Breakfast Creek Bridge, patronage has exceeded.
Point of order.
Yes, Mr Deputy Chairman, this is about a claim for compensation about the Tuong to West End Green Bridge, it's not about Breakfast Creek or anything else, so the Chair should be relevant.
Yeah, yeah. I've been allowing the debate to be broader, but Councillor Murphy, please come back to the.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Deputy Mayor is displaying unsuitable meeting conduct by shouting across the chamber, I was asked if you could provide some remedial action, Deputy Chair?
Yep. Acting Mayor, please refrain from doing that. Councillor Murphy.
Well, thanks Deputy Chair for your protection. We know councillors opposite went all around the world when it came to their own debate on this item, but they can't, they can dish it out, but they can't take it. Again, the reality is that we know that the growth areas that will be linked by this bridge are areas within the city that are expected to have population growth around 120% over the next 20 years. So yes, these are big, significant investments, but they are long-term investments in our city's future, and if we're up to those opposite, they simply wouldn't be built. We would still, after 120 years, be talking about the Kangaroo Point Bridge. But under Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner, it will be built, it will be done, it will be opened in just over a month's time. So, and how many elections do they need to lose to prove to them that this kind of game-changing, significant city-shaping infrastructure is actually what the residents of Brisbane want?
Point of order.
And need.
Yeah, point of order.
A claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Well, he's claimed to be misrepresented, Chair, but they have needled and snifed and attacked these projects at every step of the way, and the Lord Mayor has endured the withering assaults from councillor Cassidy on these bridges with two resounding election wins. So, you know, maybe they're going to have a crack at this bridge and the St Lucia Bridge, and they'll keep having cracks at these bridges, but we just get on with the job here at Brisbane City Council, here at administration. And so, you know, we're happy to, and I know councillor Cassidy carried on before about bad Jared. Well, I know which one's the bad Jared, Deputy Chair, and the bad Jared isn't at George Street, he's here in this chamber right now. Because the Jared, the Jared of George Street is uncovering a horror show of projects which the people of Queensland were misled on, which were misled on.
Point of order.
Mr Deputy Chair, I presume you will take action. Bad Jared is not an appropriate way to refer to councillor Murphy's fellow councillor. It's not appropriate. Yeah, slightly better, but still not appropriate under the meetings local law.
I don't approve your point of order, it is a political chamber for debate, vibrant debate. Councillor Murphy.
Well, and that's it Deputy Chair, I didn't use the term bad Jared, in fact it was.
Point of order. Did you, did you just say that's allowed?
I'm just saying it is a chamber for vibrant debate.
But, so, sorry, Mr Deputy Chair, there is a rule saying you must refer to councillors by their correct titles, as far as I'm aware, and I would ask you to enforce the meetings local law.
Look, I don't, I don't approve your point of order, because do you think, who's the bad Jared? So look, Councillor Murphy.
My good friend over there councillor Cassidy, not bad councillor Cassidy, has breathlessly attacked the deputy premier, who has, all he has tried to do is reveal the enormous cost blowouts that the previous Labor government has left the new government, and yet he does the same things in this chamber, he attacks us all the time for cost increases on projects. So I don't know, what is it, what is it Deputy Chair? Is bad Jared right? Is good Jared right? Is the former deputy premier and treasurer Cameron Dick right when he says, oh, every government is dealing with these cost increases? So then councillor Cassidy's wrong when he comes in here and attacks us on these cost increases? They are a mess over there Deputy Chair. You could not understand what is the clear vision coming from the opposition, the coalition of chaos, when it comes to major projects in the city. You wouldn't know which way they would go. Would they scrap the bridges? Would they keep the bridges? Would they extend the metro? Would they cancel the metro? They have had every single position on these projects in the last four, five years.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
You cannot trust them.
Any further debate? Oh, sorry, Mr representation, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, poor old councillor Murphy just tied himself up in knots there, he's not quite sure where he is on these issues. But I very clearly and consistently, and our team has supported the Kangaroo Point Bridge, we took it to an election, so I'm not sure why councillor Murphy was so confused about that. My comments were contained to the West End to Tuong Green Bridge.
Any further debate? No further debate? Now I put the, oh, sorry, yeah, I put item A and C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those who can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Yeah, thank you. Please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and four abstentions.
The item has passed. Please, councillors, please return to your seat. Acting Mayor, item B please.
Thank you Mr Deputy Chair. Item B is the surplus property disposal Lot 1 at Mogal Road in Drapilly. As a result of the Mogal Road Corridor upgrade project, the land was specifically purchased for the upgrade, and the proposed new lot has an area of 4,638 square metres. It is obviously in a prime location and is identified in the Interpilly Centre Neighbourhood Plan for Mixed Use Development. As we discussed in recent weeks. Centre Neighbourhood Plan for mixed-use development. As we discussed in recent weeks, councillors investigating building a new library as part of the mixed-use development on this site. However, we since approved a new lease at the shopping centre for the existing Indrapili Library on financially advantageous terms, which was a great outcome to keep costs down. We now have the opportunity to release this land back to the market to stimulate development with new housing a potential option for this very well-located site. The proceeds from the sale of surplus land like this site in turn go back into funding our future projects, including things like securing land for the Tuwong West End Bridge, which is also what we have just discussed. We're focused on keeping Brisbane moving and the acquisition and sale of land at the beginning and end stages of major transport projects is all part of this plan. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Cassidy?
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. I rise to speak on this item. Before us today, the disposal of surplus land at Mogul Road. And last week, we saw, the last month, we've seen a few, last couple of months actually, last session, last week and this week, the transfer of council-owned properties, in some instances through auction or sale, some instances directly to a community housing provider like Brisbane Housing Company, as we did last week. And they obviously are desperately in need, as are other community housing providers, for land to build housing, residential housing on. And what we see this week, so we saw last week, a property transferred to Brisbane Housing Company that was worth an awful lot less than this one. With the yield on that would be significantly less than this one here today. So it's a bit strange in the timing of that, in that it's sort of, I suppose, to distract from selling this piece of very valuable and profitable land off this week, gave away, you know, a few crumbs last week to a community housing provider to try and sort of make it look like the LMP care and the LMP have some balanced approach to this. But I think if you compare the pair, you'll note some big differences here. And I do understand why the LMP want to sell this on the open market. I understand because of the massive budget blowout on Mogul Road. On the LMP's watch, we've now seen this project be delayed massively. I think the running total at the moment is about $250 million for this project, which is $120 million over budget, I think, so far. So I understand, I don't support the LMP's approach to the disposal of this land, but I understand why they're so cash-strapped, because they couldn't have organised a chook raffle in a public bar, let alone manage a project like this. But you wonder, so we asked the question last session when councillors disposing of nine properties, whether they consulted with community housing providers. And councillor Cunningham got up and said they had consulted with the Brisbane Housing Company on those and they were not keen on any of those projects, of those properties. So fair enough. We then subsequently found out that that was the only community housing provider council had engaged with. They hadn't engaged with the peak body, they hadn't engaged with other community housing providers. So we don't know on this one whether this LMP council has engaged with Brisbane Housing Company or any other community housing providers for that matter. And you certainly hope it's not a case of the LMP only offering projects, properties of a low book value compared to properties of a high value. In the most recent budget, for the most recent council budget, we saw a $50 million increase to the Mogul Road project. As I said, I think it's $257 million now. And it just seems like every few months ago by, let alone every year, we find out more of these hidden cost blowouts under the LMP. You know, it takes a bit of digging. There's no one, you know, I take councillor Murphy's point, the new LMP deputy premier is out there talking about every single cost blowout on state projects. But we don't have anyone willing to stand up and put their head up in the LMP, in council, to talk about cost overruns and cost blowouts here with the same sort of vigour that we've seen up at one William Street over the last week or so. And when it comes to those, to those issues around transparency on cost overruns, maybe we should take, maybe we should at risk of being quoted about this in the future, maybe we should today take a leaf out of the new deputy premier's book. Here's a quote, he said, "Queenslanders have been kept in the dark on figures. We're going to be transparent and open with Queenslanders. And we're going to keep releasing these updated figures so Queenslanders can know what they would have got." It's a pity we don't have one single LNP councillor in this place who has the same view as the deputy premier about these things. Maybe the Lord Mayor or councillor Wines or councillor Murphy talks a big game, but maybe he should actually be open and transparent. We know that this project's been mismanaged from the start. Some of those traders that are operating and have been trying to operate through there since 2022, speaking in the media last week, I noticed, about how they've been losing money hand over fist and this project keeps going on, keeps getting delayed. We discovered last week, which is related to this, that the Indrapili Library was going to be staying put in the shopping centre because the LMP don't have any money to build a new Indrapili Library. So councillor Wolf misses out there unfortunately. And so we understand again why they don't need this land anymore, because that has been rejected. But it is interesting to note, again, that this is just being, just one week after that property was transferred to Brisbane Housing Company, gifted, this is now being sold off to the highest bidder. What we've seen with this LNP regime is they pick and choose where they want to spend their money, mostly in the inner city, on projects of which they can leverage a whole lot of advertising off and media conferences. They also, that extends as well, as they pick and choose how they want to engage directly in the housing market, and the only way in which council can do. We heard councillor Allen earlier today talk about ninety-four percent, ninety-four, ninety-seven percent, ninety-six percent of properties being developed by the private sector and only four percent being delivered by the state government or community housing providers. Wouldn't it have been a great thing for councillor Allen to have added to that and to get up and to say, "Council wants to do something about that figure in the only way it can, and when it disposes of properties for housing purposes, engages properly and engages deeply with community housing providers." Instead of the peak body like K Shelter finding out about it in the media, or finding out about it when, you know, a councillor picks up the phone and says, "Did you know about this?" And they say, "No. No, they didn't know about it." Why isn't Brisbane City Council engaging with a broad range of community housing providers? And I understand the position is Brisbane Housing Company first, because council has a vested interest and a good one in seeing that organisation thrive and deliver those amazing outcomes they do. But when we have a situation where they say they are not able to take that property or not interested in that property, the next option is then to sell it on the open market and deny other community housing providers the kind of support that they really need to make a difference and to shift the dial on providing genuine affordable housing for people right around Brisbane. Not just in places where land values are low, but in places where people need to find housing. And in Indrapili, that is one of them. So this is a disappointing outcome all around. I'm sure it's disappointing for councillor Wolf and for people at Indrapili to find out last week that they are never getting a new library under the LMP. That is now ruled out. It's disappointing for community housing providers to find another very valuable piece of land is going to be sold off for housing, instead of partnered with the community housing sector to provide affordable housing to the people of Brisbane. And the people of Brisbane will be disappointed when they continue to see the cost blowouts on this project, now topping at $257 million, driving up their rates, driving up fees and charges, and now driving a pension attacks targeting those people who can least afford to pay it to the LMP. So we will not be supporting this item today.
Any further debate? Councillor Wolf?
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the surplus property disposal of proposed lot one Mogul Road, Indrapili. In September of this year, it became very clear to me after hosting a successful Mogul Road local business activation at the Indrapili Central Business Hub, that all the existing businesses that surround the Mogul Road upgrade are quite a fierce group of businesses. They certainly know how to rally together. They're a great bunch of operators. And amidst the largest infrastructure upgrade being completed on their doorstep, they continue to power on and thrive and continue to be a strong heartbeat in my community in the Walter Taylor Ward. Under the Indrapili Centre Neighbourhood Plan, Indrapili Centre has truly developed as a centre that's been built on the strength of its existing retail, commercial and community sectors to become the principal location for these activities in the western Brisbane area. Development creates a diverse, integrated, mixed-use centre hosting retail and commercial uses, higher-density dwellings and a range of community and recreational facilities that are concentrated around existing and public transport nodes. Now, this has encouraged greater use of public transport services and attracted further investment in public transport facilities in and in serving the Indrapili Centre. This parcel of surplus land, which is lot one Mogul Road, Indrapili, is actually within multi-purpose centre NPP 001 precinct under the Indrapili Centre Neighbourhood Plan. And it can support upwards of 15 storeys if the site is greater than 4,000 square metres. So this high-density mixed-use development is concentrated in the heart of Indrapili between the railway line, Mogul Road, Musgrave Road and Station Road. The Indrapili Railway Station and Indrobust interchange promote high levels of public transport patronage and helps reinforce the precinct as a major centre to be developed using the principles of transit-oriented development and also sustainability. So Deputy Chair, the southern side of Mogul Road also emerges as a key employment area, meeting the needs of a range of commercial activities that benefit from the proximity and exposure to an arterial road. Mixed-use development results in the formation of commercial activities located on the ground story with offices located on the upper floors. To protect future residents from the impacts of traffic noise and to maintain supply of valuable and scarce employment land in the neighbourhood plan area, new residential development along the southern side of Mogul Road is non-consistent with the outcomes sought for this precinct. However, worthwhile to note that whilst the neighbourhood plan outlines that new residential development is not consistent with the outcomes of this precinct, it would be considered if access was provided not from Mogul Road and amenity concerns are addressed, such as noise and pollution from the major trafficked corridor. I would also like to point out that in managing costs associated with getting projects done in council, disposing of the proposed lot one Mogul Road, Indrapili, allows council to invest in other upcoming projects like the Tuwong to West End Bridge. To prevent avoidable costs being passed on to Brisbane's 1.2 million residents and in response to the ongoing impacts of the global inflation crisis on council's projects and services, surplus property disposals like this will benefit future projects like the Tuwong to West End Bridge. Council recognises the positive level of support that the Tuwong to West End Bridge and that will make it easier to walk and ride between the growing West End community and the Tuwong Centre, plus enhance access to rail and ferry services. Now, unlike what councillor Cassidy has imposed on us here today, the opposite is what I'm hearing on the ground, on the ground, listening to my local residents. I am hearing and have heard for some time, "Please don't move the library. Please keep it in its existing location. Please keep it at Indrapili Shopping Centre. It's so convenient. It's close to buses and trains where it currently is." Brisbane locals have reinstated that they want...
Councillor Wolf, your time has expired. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on this item. And councillor Wolf can thank me later, but your side were dead-set, all keen for a lovely library at this location and a ward office. They came in here and announced it. And you were going to have a giant sign facing onto the Mogul Road roundabout. But you can think that was the first crazy idea. And then the second crazy idea was, no, 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 we can't afford that. So we won't do that. But I just want to give people a little bit of history about this, because I suspect I'm the only one that's read some of the details of the business case for the Mogul Road roundabout, which I know has gone from $120 million to $250 million. So if councillor Wolf thinks the $8 million from the sale of this land is going to make up for the $130 million overspend, then she can't count, would be my feeling about this, Mr Deputy Chairman, because that's a massive deficit that council has overspent, overspent by $130 million on the Mogul Road project, which means we can't get anything done anywhere else. Not only that, as she will find out the hard way, this is the wrong design, it has been badly done and it's going to cause massive problems for her own residents as well as mine. We've been seeing that through the botched, delayed delivery of the project. But I do want to speak a little bit about the history to this and also just mention that I too, last week, I even said it in this place, "This is a good idea. I'm so pleased we're seeing council giving land to the BHC." Of course, I should have known, how silly of me, that this week, of course, there would be, that was the sweetener for this, which is the block of land that is much more highly valued, being sold off, an asset sale by this LNP administration to patch a botched budget and a botched project. I honestly cannot believe that councillor Wolf thinks the $8 million that we get from this is going to do anything other than plug a massive gap in the massive overspend on this project. If only it could go to something new, because this Lord Mayor and the LNP administration cannot manage this project. However, here it is. And people are critical of me all the time about this. And you stand up and you say I'm dishonest. I've raised this issue in the media and publicly, and in this chamber. In the business case, council identified this site for high-rise residential development. And I found that by doing a file review about five years ago and went out publicly. Does anybody want to guess what council said in response to me saying, "Look, here's a plan"? They had images. They had done images of what the high-rise buildings around the design would look like. This is the Courier Mail from the 30th of November 2020. "Council rules out high-rise at west-side traffic hotspot." "Brisbane's top infrastructure SAAR has ruled out selling leftover land from the Indrapili Roundabout upgrade for residential high-rise." Goes on. "A business case for the roundabout upgrade recently flagged that unused land could be sold to the private sector to offset the $126 million cost of building the flyover and tea intersection." I know, I know, $250 million and it was 126, so 130 more. But here, it goes on. "Councillor Johnston said she feared the land could be sold for high-rise development." Yep, that was what I thought. However, this is the good bit. "However, council infrastructure chair David McLoughlin ruled that out. There's been no decision made about any use of the remnant land at this project, but the claim that this land will be used for high-rise apartments is wrong." He also denied council's Johnson traffic claims about the study ignored the needs of residents south of the river. Well, guess what? I wasn't wrong. I was on the money. That this administration will publicly be dishonest to cover up what their real intentions were. It was clear from the beginning, in the business case, that council intended to sell the surplus land. Councillor McLoughlin goes on in this article to say, "No, no, there'll be public realm improvements." Yeah, there's a few trees along the side of the road, but we're not seeing anything else. We're not seeing parkland created. We're not seeing the bike lanes around there. There's no bike lanes. It's just terrible. And, you know, I didn't support the library moving. It's a terrible location.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Wines?
Of course I was all right. They've been caught out not being honest.
Councillor Wines?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just rising to speak to the item before us, Item B in the Second E and C report, and just add my comments to a range of things that have been discussed today. So this is an item that speaks to the disposal of land surplus to needs as part of the Mogul Road roundabout project, roundabout removal, replacement and upgrade project. Can I just follow on from some of the comments from councillor Wolf? Now, many residents in the western suburbs community were, of course, very interested and engaged about potential new libraries, but much of the feedback was consistent with the library staying in its location within the shopping centre, consistent with other shopping centres, whether they be Mount Gravat or Carandale or Chirmside, no, Chirmside's next door, but the other two are definitely within shopping precincts. Now, those sites within those shopping centres are very good, in particular, I must compliment the Mount Gravat, Mount Gravat Garden City Library, it is an excellent example.
(Laughter)
The, sorry, excuse me, but the secret garden-themed library inside the Garden City Library is an excellent example of what can be done within a shopping centre, and I can understand why the people of the western suburbs want something comparable to that. And with the new negotiated outcome that we've had with the shopping centre in that community, we should be able to produce a very, very good example of a high-quality community space there that will be much, much superior to what they have there. And can I compliment the library's team for their constant and incremental improvement of the libraries over time. Now, also, I had to reflect upon some of the comments made by councillor Johnston. Once again, a gratuitous attack on a road project where the principal beneficiaries will be her community. Once again, councillor Johnston attacking the improvement of the welfare of her own community. It's a standard and weekly experience for all of us and sadly for all of her own people, whether it be attacking safety upgrades in Kidumbur Street in Yoronga, whether it be attacking maintenance improvements on the Walter Taylor Bridge, whether it be attacking improvements to this roundabout removal. Now, there are tens of thousands of people who use that intersection every day, and before the removal of this roundabout, there was a hospitalisation at that roundabout once every two to three months. Now, it would appear, now, I'm not paying any attention to the interjections, other than to imagine that they had to challenge me because councillor Johnston finds that rate of hospitalisation acceptable and tolerable. That would be the only point of-
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Councillor Wines?
I can only take the interjections to mean that, that that was a tolerable amount of hospitalisations to councillor Johnston, and that any and all proposals put forward by the majority of councils in this place, in her opinion, are flawed, and that is not the case. The removal of that roundabout will improve the operation of that, what was once an intersection, vastly, particularly for those who travel west to the Pullen Vale community, but a market improvement both in the operations and the safety for users of that road now. Now, there's also feedback from the Tennyson community, which I suspect councillor Johnston won't believe, that they are already indicating that they actually prefer what they have now compared to what they had before, and that is even with there still being significant work through the Coonan Street corridor. So I would just ask councillor Johnston to get in touch with her own community, listen to her own residents and set aside her personal vendettas against us and do the right thing by her own community for once. That's all I would ever ask. She laughed at the idea that she would ever do it, and I suppose it's sad, it's a sad indication of the state of things, that is the standard that she sets for herself in this place. Now, also, I must make comment about the tenuously grasped temporary member for Maywams, Mr Michael Burkeman, who is barely holding on and is looking for any and all opportunities to point the finger at anybody else. It must be so easy to be a Green MP.
Yeah.
To tell everybody that they've got to build more units, and then whenever there's land available for units, attack, attack, attack. What a comfortable and easy life he must lead, and even in his position where he can, please, whoever's in front of him, tell them whatever they want to hear, he still suffered a humiliating swing against him and almost lost his seat. And that's really telling, that the public can see through the fact that they know that he says there needs to be more units and then opposes all the land available for them. They are starting to see through the lies about Mount Cootha that he and his associates tell, and this land here will provide a wonderful opportunity for-
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further speakers? One moment, please councillor. Councillor Johnston, point of misrepresentation?
Yes, thank you. Councillor Wines stated that I said that I found levels of hospital admissions to be tolerable and acceptable. In fact, I made no such statements and said no such thing. My comments were about the LNP's dishonesty about-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Wines.
At what time would you say a speech, a note about misrepresentation-
Thank you, councillor Wines.
Move from misrepresentation to a whole new speech in their own-
Thank you, councillor Wines. Councillor Johnston, if you can sum up, please.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Wines stated that I said that I found the level of hospital admissions at this location to be tolerable and acceptable. I made no such comments about that. My comments were around the LNP's dishonesty about when they said there would be no high-rise on this site adjoining the roundabout.
Councillor Chungwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on disposal, proposed disposal of land Lot 1 Mogul Road, Indrapilly. This lot comprises land acquired for the Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade Project. It's clear this LNP administration has mismanaged the budget, and are continuing the fire sale of council land to try and make up for poor budget management. As Brisbane's population is growing at an extremely fast rate, it is critical that we have sufficient public land for green space, council infrastructure and services. This council administration selling off every piece of land as it can is a short-sighted fire sale. It is a sign for desperation to find some more income rather than a genuine attempt to support the development of more housing. This council administration is selling off any public land it can with little regard to investing in the future of our city. I note the addition of a council swimming pool to a local government infrastructure plan, LGIP, for 2031/2036, to be located somewhere in Indrapilly with no exact location identified. If this land being disposed of on Mogul Road was identified as a good site for a library, then surely it may also be a good site for a proposed swimming pool or a community centre. The community, along with the local state MP, Michael Burkeman, have long been advocating for a council swimming pool, a community centre and a youth activity hub. If this council were investing in our community, investing in the future, they would use this land for something the community needs, not selling it. Land is becoming more expensive and more difficult to obtain. Selling it off in a fire sale to raise short-term income is extremely poor management of our council assets of our budget.
Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on Item B. This is-
Acting Lord Mayor, sorry.
I am showing the most amount of respect that I possibly can. Thank you, Acting Lord Mayor. This is a proposed new lot of over 4,500 square metres in an ideal location. This administration is firmly focused on delivering value for our residents and for our ratepayers, because by sensibly balancing the budget, Madam Chair, it is only by doing that that we can keep the pressure off rates and rents, because despite what the Green Labour coalition of chaos think, there is no magic pudding. We went to an election promising residents that we would live within our means. We have the cheapest rates in southeast Queensland, and we are committed to that. Further, we have the most generous pensioner rebate scheme, and it's because we make decisions like this that we can be sensible with our money and offer these rebates to our pensioners and take the pressure off our rates. Just like other levels of government, we have a rolling programme to ensure that the land we own continues to be in the best interests of ratepayers. Now, we will want to, of course, do what we can to address the housing shortage across Brisbane, and we have been pulling every single lever that we have in our disposal. By selling this lot, we are freeing it up for the private market, who we know by far and away builds the most homes in our city. By carefully managing the land that we own, we're striking a balance, Madam Chair, and I commend this to the chamber.
Further speakers? Acting Mayor.
Well, there was a lot of debate on that, and it was very, very interesting. I just want to note yet again, when given the opportunity to back housing in the suburbs, the opposition failed and the Greens doubled down.
We'll now- We'll now put Item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division has been called by the acting mayor and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 8 against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Acting Mayor, councillor Adams, Economic Development, Nighttime Economy in the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy in the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 5th of November 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the acting mayor and seconded by councillor Adaman, that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 5th of November 2024 be adopted. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I go to the report for last week, I will just again mention what is on the Brisbane Business Hub this week in the mentoring programmes. Obviously, there is plenty of workshops and events tabs to check what's on in the coming months, and there are still plenty of mentors there keen to support our local business people. But this week, on the 13th of the 11th, which is tomorrow, from 9.30, amplify your impact crafting an empathetic theory of change. So this is for impact-driven leaders and teams eager to create meaningful change by understanding the difference between impact, outcomes and outputs, and using these insights to align their business activities with greater purpose and effectiveness. And that is being presented by our partner and business expert, Empathy First. So again, please make sure you're advertising within your e-newsletters or whatever you send out to your community or your business news, that there are programmes in there. We'd love people to access them if that's what they need. Last week, again, we had a, last week we had a report from the council officers that attended Paris and the learnings that they had, in particular, last week on the Paris Olympics, and we got a report from our manager of legacy and venues planning, and also from the council of mayors, Aidan, came to visit us as well. The representatives of the games, so all of us that attended, council officers and that, attended a total of 184 observer and learning programmes, site inspections, seminars, other meetings and events to learn firsthand from a city's perspective what is involved in running the games. And of course, this includes the lead-up during and post-games as well. I have to say, the first point that all of our presenters have made over the last couple of weeks, it was really about learning about our city's role and responsibilities that we'll have for Brisbane 2032, so that we can not only host the best games ever, but more importantly, that we create a legacy that benefits all residents for generations to come. We know the reason we got into bid for the games back in 2015 was to use 2032 as a deadline to accelerate critical transport infrastructure needed to support our growing region, to boost job creation and economic growth, to raise the profile of Brisbane and Queensland as a global destination for tourism, trade and investment. And under the new norm model, we do have greater flexibility to create a games proposal that focuses on our long-term needs as well. But the other significant change, of course, is that we've moved away from a traditional Olympic park, where every venue and activity is contained within a precinct, and we are going to be far more dispersed over the city and the region. So in our case, 84% of venues are existing or temporary, but we do have to upgrade or deliver what is required to meet the growing needs of our city. That could also be used for the Olympics as well. And we know that Brisbane is growing at a rate of knots, and southeast Queensland is following very close behind us as well. We will be a home to 6 million people, larger than Sydney and Melbourne today, in southeast Queensland by 2046. So we need to make sure that we get that critical transport infrastructure and keep Brisbane moving. So it was very clear in the presentation that OCOG's responsible for delivering the events and only the events, and focusing mainly on what happens inside the stadiums and the venues. But beyond that, we really take the responsibility for everything in between. And particularly with the dispersed model that we have in Brisbane, that's a lot of in-between spaces. As the city of LA described it, the Olympics and Paralympic Games is like hosting 10 Super Bowls every day for a month. So it was really important that we took all the opportunities we could to find out what we needed to learn from Paris's experience. We do know that they had more than 2.5 million visitors at their local city-run celebration sites, that there were 16 Arendisemont celebration sites, six city-themed sites and three Paris plages, which were temporary beaches as well. 200,000 visitors to the Olympic cauldron, 213 to a Champions Park, and more than 830,000 visitors to the Paris City Hall celebration site. We learned of some of the challenges that we will need to face, overcoming short-notice changes to routes, managing road closures, but also the fantastic opportunity to showcase our city to the world, beaming footage of our beautiful River City, Winham Foreshore, Mount Cootha Forest and every corner of Brisbane to billions of people around the world. It is our responsibility, we've learnt, to organise train and deploy the volunteers during the game, to sign up more than 10,000 volunteers, which leads to over 5,000 participants as the city. It's a significant undertaking, and we know that Brisbane Economic Development Agency is already working on a programme that we can expand for our Olympic volunteers. City of Paris is very clear about their legacy aspirations, and we're working on our own unique legacy aspirations, and there will be even more legacy opportunities to come with new ideas coming out of learnings from other host cities like the World Union Olympic Cities.
Acting Mayor, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. What we learnt from the deputy mayor's presentation about the learnings from Paris 2024 Olympic and Paralympic Games is that Paris is a different city to Brisbane.
Is it?
Hmm.
No.
It's a very different city to Brisbane, a very different city to Brisbane. And what we've got here in the presentation has a lot of pictures in there, is that there is indeed a lot of learnings from Paris's experience, and what I've taken from last week's presentation this week, as I've thought about it, is you could make a lot of suggestions about how Paris would run the games again, whether it's the Olympic Games or the Paralympic Games, from the deputy mayor's presentation, but there's not a lot in here in terms of how this applies to Brisbane's experience or the experienced people in Brisbane and visitors to- or the experience people in Brisbane and visitors to Brisbane will have when we host the Olympic and Paralympic Games in 2032. In fact, which we'll get to talk about next week, granted, but the transport and housing challenges that our city will face as a result of the Olympic and Paralympic Games. But what we know and is confirmed, as we did through the process of signing the Games contract, is that at a Brisbane Olympics level, there obviously is an additional layer of responsibility, is the state government signing the contract alongside Brisbane as the host city and the federal government, the Commonwealth Government providing funding. Obviously, the Paris experience is very different to that, not the same system of government and equal share of funding for that kind of infrastructure. But for the host city itself, and again, Paris is a very different city to Brisbane, some of those experiences people had were in neighbouring council areas, not necessarily in the... And within, certainly within the footprint that you would experience in Brisbane, having neighbouring councillors in Paris, alongside Paris. But the role of the host city is to have things like responsibilities to put signs up, to provide toilets, so, you know, public toilets for people, I think probably hope... Well, I don't know. I take the injection from councillor Griffiths. The experience we've just had in providing a public toilet in the Brunswick Street Mall has been a very bad one. So I certainly hope, I certainly hope that whoever did that project is not responsible for providing public toilets for the Olympic and Paralympic Games. So as I said, signs, drinking fountains too, need to provide drinking fountains, maintaining clean roads and clean green spaces and collecting rubbish. So we need to make sure we have garbage trucks that are operating and picking up rubbish. And volunteers. And one of the learnings, which I do, I think is legitimate, is that the volunteer programme, according to the people who presented, didn't work. The volunteers were great themselves, but integrating three different sets of volunteers was not a great example, and a better example would be that of the Commonwealth Games or Sydney in 2000, the 2019 Commonwealth Games, or Sydney Olympics in 2000. Pardon me. So I guess, you know, and those public spaces around venues, like heat protection and shade. There was a point made, and you know, you look at the picture, you know, Paris versus Brisbane, there is a lot more tree cover in surrounding suburbs of Brisbane CBD compared to Paris. But, you know, when it comes to, I hope to God, the deputy mayor's not planning any public activations in King George Square, because even in the middle of winter, that's a very inhospitable place, a very inhospitable place there. And services for people with disabilities. So I think we can touch on a bit more of that next week, given the presentation was around the Paralympic Games. But the point that was made about that is that, you know, Paris being such an old city, it was really difficult for people living with disability to get around. Well, newsflash, it's very, very difficult in Brisbane for people living with disability to get around. We know, and people can't even get down their own suburban streets, they can't access a bus service that they would use all round the year. We know, we've seen reports of all of the, most of the businesses up and down the Queen Street Mall, for instance, in that public space are not very accessible for people living with disability. And that extends to so many other places around our city. Some of the legacy things that were talked about, and I note the deputy mayor touched on legacy, for the city of Paris are things like 60 kilometres of additional cycle paths, getting rid of single-use plastic, so they're finally catching up there, improving the water quality to make the sense of...
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
They sort of almost got there.
Are there further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise just to speak briefly on the learnings from the Paris Olympics. And I just note with some interest some of the comments councillor Adams made about her attendance at pretty high cost to the community. Yeah. In a lovely hotel, all those things, and everybody else that went along as well. I mean, I don't know where the Lord Mayor is, I don't know if it's Olympics-related or whether he's overseas or what he's doing, but, well, she wouldn't be acting mayor if he was just sick, so I suspect he's away somewhere, but anyway. The interesting...
Sorry, councillor Johnston, but under the provisions of section 3513 of the meeting's local law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now have to put the motions of the meeting for the adoption of any committee reports not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So we'll now move the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy in the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Transport Committee Report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Infrastructure Committee Report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Division. Division has been called by the acting mayor and seconded by councillor Wines. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 25 in favour.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee Report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. City Standards Committee Report, those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Community and the Arts Committee Report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against no. The ayes have it. Finance and City Governance Committee Report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Massey.
Thank you. I submit two petitions. One, to make the Karupa Loop 86 a permanent service, and secondly, a city cat stop for Kangaroo Point.
Councillor Howard.
I have a petition requesting cemeteries have slots available on weekends and public holidays to accommodate unexpected burial.
Councillor Dixon.
I have two petitions requesting council engage with all stakeholders regarding stage five of the north at Brisbane Bike Way.
Councillor Dixon may have a motion for the receipt of petitions.
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we'll now move to general business. Sorry, first of all, any councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to general business. Are there any items of general business? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on two items tonight in general business, one being the ongoing EBA discussions and council's water quality monitoring. Firstly, the ongoing enterprise bargaining agreement negotiations between council and our workers has been shambolic from the get-go, and now the employees of Brisbane City Council are paying the price, and I mean that quite literally. Negotiations started way back in June, and a reasonable person would expect the new agreement to have commenced on October 7, when the old one expired. Except for one small issue, council didn't bother to table an offer until October 29th, and a poor one at that, just 3% per year over two years, while asking workers to also sign away chunks of redundancy entitlements. You really wonder why you'd want to get redundancy payments, or do away with redundancy payments rather, if you had no intention of using them in the near future. And shamefully, that offer didn't include an offer of back pay to reimburse staff for this LNP regime's delaying tactics. With the Christmas period looming, it's unlikely that there will be an agreement reached before some time in the new year, at which point several months will have passed with no increase in wages and no back pay for hard-working council staff. Now, contrast this to the increases this LNP council have just awarded all of us, as I said earlier, 4% per year increase, which was backdated. Compare this to the 4% rental increase for Fleet Services Depot that we all just voted on. Compare this whole process to how contracts are dealt with in council. Now, the Lord Mayor and his LNP councillors hop to it when an external contract is about to expire and lock in generous increases for suppliers, but not when it comes to council employees. It is clear that this part-time Lord Mayor isn't interested in looking after the council workforce in any meaningful way. And the way these EBA negotiations are progressing is more proof that this LNP regime are in it for themselves, and they really don't care about the hard-working employees out there doing the day-to-day work of council. The Labour team here in council are alarmed at the lack of real engagement in these negotiations and stand in solidarity with workers and their unions, who are standing up for a fair deal and a fair wage increase. The other issue I want to talk about is both local to Myward in Deegan, but also important to residents in other areas of Brisbane as well. The issue of testing water in various sites around Brisbane, including Cabbage Tree Creek in Myward, but also in other creeks and tributaries of the Brisbane River right around Brisbane. This is a process that's been occurring very regularly for many, many years, and to save the scientific explanation, it is a test for enter cock-eye in waterways. Put simply, too much of this in the water in areas where humans or animals interact with that water can cause quite terrible illness. Quite rightly, council has been testing regularly for this for years, posting results on the website and erecting signage when high levels are detected. It is very poor signage, but it is signage nonetheless, and the testing has been occurring. And often share the results of this testing on social media to inform the community. Now, alarmingly, I received information from a resident who lives close to Cabbage Tree Creek, and they were informed by a council officer that funding for water quality testing has been cut, and the programme is either ceasing or being drastically scaled back. Now, to that end, I wrote a number of weeks ago to council's acting CEO, seeking some advice on this issue, and to date, I am still awaiting a response. Council's website publishes the test results, and the last update was in July this year. There should have been at least three rounds of testing since then. If this does turn out to be a cut, this is a bad example of this Lord Mayor scrimping from the suburbs to fund their project budget blowouts in the inner city. If this is the case, the Lord Mayor and his regime need to restore this testing and stop putting the residents of Brisbane at risk. I'll have plenty more to say about this and council's lack of action over the last decade when it comes to water quality in Cabbage Tree Creek. Over the coming months, there has been a lot of work going on at a Department of Environment and Science and CSIRO level, dragging council and urban utilities finally to the table to deal with some of the sewage problems in Cabbage Tree Creek and in other tributaries around Brisbane. And I'm glad we're seeing some action on that. But to find out that potentially there's been a massive cut to water quality testing in Cabbage Tree Creek and other creeks around Brisbane is devastating, and I would really like to see this sorted.
Further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to give a travel report. Recently, I was fortunate enough to travel to Sweden, Germany and the UK with a company called CalFresh. CalFresh are a large primary producer in the Lochia Valley. They produce carrots and peas and a number of other vegetables in the food bowl out west of Brisbane. CalFresh have currently a state-prescribed project that was approved under the previous government to build a large anaerobic digestion plant out on the Cunningham Highway. And that project is about a $35 million biogas and biomethane production facility on a 100 hectare site in the Scenic Rim. CalFresh have an interest in producing biomethane, but also in striking offtake agreements for biomethane, and council's interest is very much in the zero emissions bus area for biomethane. We know that in the last four years, very little has been achieved with the state's current zero emissions bus mandate, which mandates zero tailpipe emissions and a transition to an electrical fleet. And what we found overseas was, we visited a number of bus companies, operators that were running 100% renewable biomethane fleets in the Haas Mountains in Germany, in Oldenburg, and also in Reading in the UK. And these fleet operators have achieved 100% carbon-neutral abatement through biomethane, through biomethane produced from agricultural and municipal waste streams, so both agricultural and municipal waste streams. This is something that increasingly operators around the world are paying attention to, with all operators struggling to achieve their zero emissions bus targets on electrification alone. Things like biomethane proposals are something that large transport operators, and I think increasingly, transit and the state government will pay attention to. We also were fortunate enough to visit Scania, Scania one of the largest bus and heavy vehicle producers in the world, in Sweden. One of the issues the council has with its current gas bus fleet is our gas bus fleet are very much end-of-life. They're provided by a company called MAN, M-A-N, and these are older gas turbine bus technology that are being phased out around the world. Newer gas bus technology, however, is in development at both Aveco and Scania, and these companies are releasing new and updated engines in the gas bus space with around about 90% commonality with an existing diesel engine. So modern, efficient and affordable. Certainly, this travel was a real eye-opener for me as a Chair of Transport in terms of seeing where the market is moving, both for bus supply, engine supply and clean fuel production through biomethane, as well as transport operators who have implemented both into their supply chains. I want to thank CalFresh for the opportunity to go with them and to meet some of those councils and organisations that were able to share those insights with Brisbane City Council. And certainly, I have briefed some of those findings back in to council offices so that we can be aware as we enter into a next phase next year, which will be a significant bus procurement effort for Brisbane City Council, hopefully under new and achievable rules that will be set by the incoming Chris O'Foolie government and the new Transport Minister, Brent Mickleberg. We, to be clear, we absolutely support decarbonisation of transport at Brisbane City Council, and we know that transport does generate about a third of the city's emissions, or the city council's emissions, with construction and municipal wastes being the other effectively thirds. We know that we cannot decarbonise transport on electrification alone, and we've been flagging this with the state government for the last four years under the zero emissions bus mandate policy. We know that to electrify Brisbane's 1,200 buses, we would need to spend over $1 billion on infrastructure out at our depots, and we would need to find the additional baseload power to power a city the size of Gladstone, all things that we are not flush with at the moment in Brisbane and in Queensland more broadly. So these findings, along with many others, will be going into travel report, which will be provided to the state government.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just rise to speak on the relationship between the new LNP state government and... and Brisbane City Council. I noted a little bit earlier today the comments by the deputy, well, sorry, the acting mayor, councillor Adams, or I don't know, careless Krista I might go with today. Just with respect to her comments on the Paris Olympics.
Yeah, point of order councillor Murphy.
I know councillor Johnson made a big deal before about Bad Jared. And so I just wanted to see if she would rule herself out of order on that.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillors, I'm going to remind all of you to refer to councillors by their correct name, please. Despite some councillors giving themselves other names, let's all keep to the protocol and refer to each other by our proper names. Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So will you then reprimand councillor Murphy for calling councillor Cassidy Bad Jared?
Councillor Johnston, I said going forward, let's all refer to each other by our correct names.
I wouldn't have done it, Madam Chairman, but your deputy said it was all okay.
Thank you councillor Johnston. I'll take your word for that. Thank you.
I can only go with whoever makes up the rules. And then they change, and then they make them up again. So that's fine. So councillor Adams stood up earlier today and was talking about the Olympics. And one of the things that she forgot to mention was the chaos that is unfolding around the Olympics because of the election of the new LNP state government. Now, I thought it was pretty bad watching how the ALP state government was handling the Olympics. The devastation, the decision on the GABA cause to that community, which was then debunked, that was a good thing, but it just caused chaos. And then they employed Graham Quirk to write them a report. And he wrote something that apparently this LNP administration supports, which is building a big new stadium in Victoria Park. But, but then we hear councillor Adams today saying very clearly again that this council's committed to 84% of the venues are existing or temporary. Now, I'm a little bit confused.
And...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, acting mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim.
Eighty-four per cent of the venues are existing or temporary. That's what councillor Adams has said here today. So the interesting part of all of this is we don't actually know. Because David Chris Ofule, the new Premier of Queensland, has said there's a hundred day review, which hasn't started. No one's been appointed to run it. We don't know the exact terms of reference. We don't know when it's going to start. But he's doing a hundred day review, which I think most people thought was about where the main stadium would go, right? But as it turns out, not only is it about the main stadium, it's about every single Olympic project. And it's also about the funding for or running the Olympics and the agreement that had been put in place. So when the deputy mayor stands up in this place and she says, we've got a clear idea of what we've got to do and we know where the venues are going to be and there's 84% of venues are existing or temporary.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim.
I mean, okay, well, I take it back. Councillor Adams has no idea how the Olympics are going to be run. Councillor Adams has no idea where anything's going to go. She has no idea about what's going to happen with the Olympics in the city of Brisbane.
Point of order, acting mayor. I know your claim.
So when I say she does know, she thinks that's a misrepresentation. And when I say she doesn't know, that's also a misrepresentation. It is very entertaining, this one. However, the record will show that councillor Adams said 84% of venues are existing or temporary. Now, I think she needs to have a little word with the new Premier of Queensland.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
I ask around the she, she, she continually.
Thank you.
You've already made a ruling on this, and then you've said it was fine.
That councillors should all refer respectfully to each other's names. Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. So 84% of the venues are existing or temporary. Now, we've got no idea. To be fair, the former government botched it. They went back and forth. Stephen Miles had the silly idea to get Graham Quirk to do something. We know that's what they're secretly barracking for, which would make councillor Adams's comments here today farcical. But the bigger problem is she's been undermined by her own colleagues up at George Street, the LNP premier, who's got some sort of review underway about everything to do with the Olympics. And for months and months, we're going to have no idea what's going to happen, whether even existing projects will continue or be funded. Meanwhile, councillor Adams is either aware or not aware, depending on what you know about the Olympics.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Acting mayor, your three points of misrepresentation.
I'll put them all together. Councillor Johnson believes she knows everything, which she obviously never listens. Eighty-four per cent of our temporary, eighty-four per cent of our venues are already here. However, it was very clear, and the Lord Mayor said it many, many times, the one we have always agreed in the Future Host Agreement that needed to be done was a suitable stadium. The second one was know where all the venues are. Well, I do know where the venues are, and we are still working off the master plan. That was signed by the IOC, the federal government, the state government and the Games Delivery Partners. Do we know where they're going to be in the future? No. But do we say we don't know where all the venues are? No. Her theatrics are pathetic.
Any further speakers? Acting mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I speak, I rise to speak on my report from the LGAQ Annual Conference, which I had the great pleasure to be the delegate from council. I have to say, the annual conference this year was one of the biggest that we have ever seen across Queensland. It was great to see, over three days, we had more than 1,100 attendees come to Brisbane. 630 of those actually joined us at the gala dinner. I didn't get to the gala dinner. I know councillor Marks did. She said it was absolutely fantastic. But there was 129 trade booths of the latest innovations and services. I have to say, that was the time that I spent the most with, was the trade booths, having a look at the services of the people and the businesses that are providing our councils right across Queensland and could be providing to the largest council in Queensland, depending on what they are offering as well. Peak Services are doing a great job to make sure that we are catered for in all our needs, from professional development through to electronical needs and fleet solutions. And it was great to see those business people in the trade booths themselves showcasing their wares. At the AGM, the delegates debated 116 motions. It was a big few hours with 109 resolutions passed, which shows that it really is quite a powerful voice right across Queensland. Not a whole lot of debate on most of those motions. A couple of them were a little bit tricky, but everybody came to the agreement in the end. And I don't think there was any real argy-bargy. There was some very respectful and considered debate in the place as well. So I have to say thank you to the, to the chamber for allowing me to be a delegate this year. It's been a long time since I've been a delegate at annual conference. And I encourage all councillors who are given the opportunity to go and meet. I also met up, again, obviously with some councillors I haven't seen for a very long time. And I have to say, I think many of our regional councils really enjoyed coming down to Brisbane as well and having some time in the capital city. So it was a fantastic convention and conference, and thoroughly recommend all councillors to take the opportunity if they get it.
Further speakers? councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak tonight in GB on a consultation and some observations. And I'll do the observations first. The, the change of, of the, of the agenda for this, for each of our meetings, of course, is clearly that the three-hour limit for ENC and, and reports from our various chairs is not really working. Now, just as a good point, tonight, we found that we only had five items in ENC and we couldn't, and we really could just barely get through those in that three hours. And so the chairs, right, most of the chairs, all but one, wasn't able to speak to their reports or anything else that's actually happening in their portfolios, right? Now, councillor Murphy actually had to do it in his GB, right? So it's just clearly it's not working. And the administration should have a look at themselves and have a look at the agenda and how we put it together and the timeframes, right? Because clearly, we can't do the business of council in that period of time. Anyways, I'll move on to consultation. Because that's a local thing that's happening out my way. And I did allude to it in a previous debate today. And that is the consultation for the Ellen Grove District Sports Park. Now, we, we started, we had the consultation late last year. The initial consultation, I should say, was in 2023. And, and it went well. We got a lot of feedback from a lot of, from a lot of young families, actually, which was really good to see. It wasn't just the retirees that came along and, and spoke about what they, what they would think that they would like to see in this quite large green, green, greenfield area along Waterford Road. And then we, then, of course, the, we had Christmas and then we had the election. And so a lot of months later, we're doing the follow-up consultation. And it started on Saturday. Now, this, this area is, is probably the only greenfield site in my ward in the Forest Lake suburb, and Ellen Grove suburb, I should say, that will be developed by council in a, in a major way. There is some, some money that was allocated in the, in the LJIP or the LTIP for this, for this project, tens of millions of dollars, right? In a, in a two-stage, in two stages. And again, last Saturday, we had some really good feedback. But one of the, one of the biggest groups that came and saw us, right? There was individuals, there were some groups. But one of the major groups that came and saw us was the Forest Lake Men's Shed. And as I said previous debate today, they're really under the guillotine because they're going to have to move within minimum 12 months. They may get a few months more from their, from their facility in High Street because the, the Flexi School is wanting to expand. And so they've, they've told them that they're not going to renew their lease. Now, it's, it's, every time I've sat down and met with council officers in the, in respects to this, in, in respects to this project, I've raised the men's sheds issue. And initially, we got a bit of pushback because they said, well, it really wasn't part of the, you know, their, their scope of work that they were going to canvass with the community because it was just basically about sport, right? And then we pointed out after doing our research that men's sheds do exist in these precincts right across Brisbane, right? So there was no encumbrance there. There shouldn't be any, any reason why we can't look at that. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to let the chair know that there is going to be a very strong delegation that's going to want to have a chat to, chat to her through me, I suppose, or if not directly, because they really do some fantastic work, as all councillors know, in this chamber that have a men's shed. The unbelievable work that they do in, in the community. We should be, we should be promoting them. We should be looking after them. We should be making land available. And this group that I, I represent, they said, just give us the land. We'll build the men's shed, we'll build the amenities block and, and we'll, and we'll comply with whatever council says that we have to do. And so I said that I would speak about it in chambers tonight. I know they've written to the Lord Mayor.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired. Further speakers? councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak about homelessness. And I wanted to clarify a mistruth that councillor Massey shared here last week when discussing homelessness. As the Chair responsible for council's approach to reducing homelessness, I am extremely proud and protective of the work that our public space liaison officers do. Our PSLOs are the first point of contact between council and people experiencing homelessness. And they help these vulnerable residents directly connect with support services. They have an incredible record of helping people transition out of homelessness, with approximately 60% of cases resolving positively in the past year. So for people experiencing long-term homelessness, our PSLOs are often widely respected because they are continuously visible and they've been seen helping people in our parks and public spaces. It is extremely disappointing to see councillor Massey continuously spread factually incorrect statements about homelessness in our city, particularly when these mistruths relate to our PSLOs. During last week's debate, councillor Massey incorrectly said that PSLOs had reduced their visits to homelessness sites the week they were photographed and published by local media because they're supposedly underfunded. This is, of course, not the case, Madam Chair. It's actually quite amazing that councillor Massey would come to...
Point of order councillor Massey.
Misrepresentation.
I know your point of misrep. Councillor Howard.
It's actually quite amazing that councillor Massey would come to the explanation that suits her political narrative instead of simply considering how that situation may have impacted the PSLOs personally. How little empathy this Greens councillor must have. To clarify, the decision to temporarily reduce the PSLOs' visits was because of the increased abuse towards staff at these sites and to protect the PSLOs' identities following shameful online criticism caused by people sharing the photos, such as councillor Massey.
Point of order, misrepresentation.
I hadn't called you yet councillor Massey.
I haven't shared any images.
Councillor Massey.
Madam Chair, I would ask councillor Massey to simply think before she says statements that are untrue and to consider the impact her actions may have on council workers. It is never appropriate to post images that clearly identify council workers. And I would think that elected councillors would have the common sense to come to this same conclusion. What, what?
One moment, please councillor Howard. Thank you councillor Johnston. You had your turn on your feet for your GB. Now, if you can be quiet and let councillor Howard have hers. Councillor Howard.
What we're seeing unfold at Musgrave Park and Carilpa Point are incredibly complex situations. Our PSLOs understand these issues much better than most and certainly more than councillor Massey. Whilst clearly it is tempting for the Greens councillors to politicise these issues, it is important that we stick to the facts when discussing these matters publicly. Mistruths and hyperbolic language only worsen and conflate these issues. The Shrinna Council is committed to reducing homelessness in our city whilst ensuring that all council workers are safe in their day-to-day work. And through you, Madam Chair, I want to say a huge, huge thank you to the work that our PSLOs do in this city.
Points of misrepresentation councillor Massey.
The first misrepresentation is when I noted that PLSO officers were only going to these locations once instead of twice a week. I said it could be because of, we don't know, funding? We have no idea. There wasn't a suggestion that the PSLO officers weren't doing a good job. The second misrepresentation, and the major one, is the suggestion that I would share any images of PLSO officers. This is incorrect. There are no images anywhere on my social media. And what councillor Howard is suggesting is a mistruth.
Further speakers? councillor Chonghua.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on racism and claims of antisemitism. Last week, the law mayor of our city took to yelling at my colleague councillor Massey with slurs, insults and potential deformations about antisemitism. Antisemitism is deeply rooted in Western culture and religion, with nearly 2,000 years of religious and cultural xenophobia against the Jewish people. It is a history that highlights how critical it is for governments, religions and societies to place international human rights and equality at the forefront of our policymaking. Racism and xenophobia will only be overcome when we will subscribe to a clear set of global universal human rights that ensure all people on our planet are treated equally, irrespective of race, religion, gender or sexuality. Are the Greens part of this long and disturbing history of antisemitism? No, the Greens are not. The Greens have been at the forefront of addressing racism and discrimination in this country for many years. In fact, we are the only political party to have a dedicated anti-racism policy. What we saw in these chambers last week was the mayor continuing a very strategic political campaign, an unprecedented campaign run by the right-wing political actors, including LNP. LNP, who have formed an alliance with the right-wing controlled media, News Corp. This is a bullying and manipulative campaign against the Greens for political purposes.
Just one moment, councillor Chongwa. Councillors, please remain quiet while councillor Chongwa is on her feet.
Thank you. This right-wing alliance does not care one iota about broader issues of racism. For this right-wing alliance to harness 2,000 years of deeply horrific antisemitism solely for the purpose of political gain, advantage, is one of the worst political abuses. This alliance has exploited and magnified the defensiveness and sensitivity of the Australian Israeli lobby. Is it antisemitic to criticise Israeli government? Let us be clear, it is not antisemitic to protest against the policies or practices of the Israeli state. Every government must be subject to the same international human rights framework, and no government, whatever their influence, power, or history, should be exempted. What separates the Greens from other political parties is our deep commitment to our values inherent in our four pillars of ecological sustainability, social justice, grassroots participatory democracy, peace, and nonviolence. We believe in universal human rights, that all people on our planet are equal irrespective of race, religion, or gender. As a woman of colour, I have been on the receiving-
One moment, please, councillor Chongwa. Councillor Marks, do not call out while councillor Chongwa is on her feet.
As a woman of colour, I have been on the receiving end of racism and discrimination for most of my life, living in this country, experiences I feel too personal to share to this space, in this space. But I do understand deeply what racism feels like. Our Law Mayor is not a human rights defender of people who are oppressed and discriminated against. In fact, we see the opposite in these chambers, with the mayor favouring those who have privilege and wealth. We see business and corporate allies favoured through council policy while the homeless have their power cut off. I ask the people of Brisbane to see through those who exploit racism. You will know by their words and actions whether their claims are authentic or if they are in fact making their claims, only to gain political advantage.
Further speakers, councillor-
Madam Chair. Point of order. Could I ask councillor Massey a question? Okay, she may just want to check her Facebook on the 13th of August.
She doesn't want you to. Thank you, acting mayor. She said no. Councillor Gibney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to stand this evening to speak about the Bayside Business Awards. Last Thursday evening, the Wynn and Manly Business Community came together at the Wynn and Manly Leagues Club to celebrate the winners of the 2024 Bayside Community Fund Business Awards. Over 400 attended, including councillor Atwood, the Honourable Steve Minnican MP, and Joan Pease MP. Over 10,600 votes were made for this year's awards, proving how supportive our local community are for our local businesses. A night of celebration included entertainment from a local singer for the upcoming Savoyard's musical, Come Away With Me, and local comedian Emma Zammet. I would like to acknowledge the winners of all the following awards. Best Beauty Health Wellbeing and Fitness Business, sponsored by Rain and Hall, was awarded to Yoga Bayside. Best Trade Industry Business, sponsored by Annual Pest Management, the winner was Keed In Electrical. And I know that Scotty Keed works tirelessly for our community and he gives much of his time for many community events and projects. The best pet services business's winner was the Wynn and Manly Veterinary Hospital, and we're blessed to have them as our family vet in the area, and our dog is very well looked after by their hard-working team. The best professional services business, the winners were Bayside Hand Therapy. The best hospitality business, small, was Mungia Pizza. Outstanding customer service winner was actually Paulina from Mungia Pizza, and they actually won last year as the best newcomers award. So, they've only been around for 12 months and they're doing an incredible job. I know. Outstanding community service individual, which was sponsored by councillor Atwood and myself, was actually Tom Oliver from Wynnham Fringe. Outstanding community service organisation, sponsored by the Community Bank, Victoria Point, and Wynnham Manly, Bendigo Bank. And the winners were Blood, Sweat, and Beers. And they're actually a local running club that do a lot of things within our community as well. Bayside's Educator of the Year, which was sponsored by Joan Pease MP, and the winner was Clayton Khanes, who is the Principal of Manly State School. The Best Retail Business, which was sponsored by Wynnham Plaza, the winner was Cultivate Design Co., which is a homewares business in our, in Wynnham. And the owner, Holly, is also a very incredibly community-minded human who is helping us with a few projects for the chamber, which is fantastic. The Best Real Estate Business, which was sponsored by JCO and Brisbane Camperland, winners this year were Sash and Gable. And the Best Hospitality Business, medium or large, sponsored by Barton's, and the winner was Manly Boathouse. And for those who have been lucky enough to go down to Manly, you would know the boathouse because it's an incredible spot. The Best Small Business Newcomer was The Tasty Pocket, and I know that Eliza and Justin are really happy to receive that award. They were completely unexpected for that one. And the Best Business of the Year, sponsored by the Community Leader, was Brisbane, sorry, was Bayside Dance. And Caitlin Hague, who's the principal there, is another local lady who has been running a business on her own for quite some time, and she's an incredible human. So, thank you very much to all the businesses that entered, all the people that voted, and I'm really happy to be supporting the Bayside Business Awards.
Great speech.
Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I hopefully will get to speak to three items. One, the 86 bus loop. Two, Rough Sleepers Community Organisation Roundtables. And lastly, West End, the heart, what is the heart of the community of West End?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, acting mayor.
I could ask you if you could ask councillor Massey during her general business to correct the record by misleading chambers? Because the August 13 Facebook post has council officers being degraded on her Facebook.
Thank you, acting mayor. I don't uphold that point of order, councillor Massey.
Point of order, too.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
The deputy mayor was just speaking very loudly over the top of you while you were trying to call her to order. You have noted conduct in the minutes for things that are of less seriousness. Are you going to reprimand the acting Lord Mayor or not at all?
Councillor Cassidy, thank you for that. No, I will not because I'm sure if you watch the video back later, you will see some behaviour from both sides of the chamber that is interesting. So, thank you very much. I do not uphold your point of order, and you're doing it yourself right now. Point in case. Councillor Massey.
Thank you. To begin, I would like to-
One moment, please, councillor Massey. We'll wait till everyone is quiet for you as well. Thank you. And talking over the top again. Councillor Collier.
Firstly, before I begin talking about the 86, I would like to submit this for the This is the screenshot of what is actually on the website for Brisbane City Council in connection to the free loop. I'd like to note that it actually says trial period extended and has absolutely no mention that this wasn't a trial. And this is available on the website to submit that to the public record, to correct the public record. Further, I want to touch base on the bus loop. I want to share two stories. The first one is a short story, and it's a really important one. The loss of the 86 would impact negatively on the quality of life of many residents in our retirement community. This includes Anne. Anne uses this bus and is a frequent user of this bus. Anne is 91 years old. And you know why she uses this bus? She uses it to get to church. This would stop her ability to connect with community and create more societal isolation. The other thing I'd like to talk about the 86 is obviously I put in a petition today, and I want to note and thank every single petitioner. I think in the end, it was nearly 1,1200 petitioners that wrote in for the 86 bus. Thank you all. Lastly, I want to talk about a story. Until about five hours ago, the information that we had was the 86 loop through information requests was actually the most frequented bus loop in Brisbane. And it was up until five hours ago that I received notification that this had changed. Obviously, the information that we had received had multiple papers, had information on weeks of usages through the months of multiple loops across the city. I find it really interesting that it took four months to then, just before today, before we talked about this bus, before the bus that so many people in the community believed were a trial because of the information so many people wanted to fight for. Suddenly, it wasn't the most popular bus route. Of course, in the correction and the information, I was not given a full round of documents, just one sheet, instead of the, I believe, like over 25, 26 sheets that I received. It's a bit sus. I don't know what's going on there. Of course, I'll look into it more, but I just want to reconfirm that today, through you, Chair, the acting mayor basically said no about this bus. And on the record, I'm sure that I provided more information about this bus and how it was a trial. Secondly, I want to talk about Rough Sleeper Community and Organisation Roundtable. My office has actually been coordinating roundtables since Panieri, before Panieri 2023. These roundtables not only include grassroots community groups, local community organisations, Yarra Hall Hut 400, MICA, the Department of Treaty, Aboriginal Torres Strait Island, the Department of Housing. We, of course, invite council to these meetings. We have been running these meetings now for a very long time. The whole premise is, of course, a community-led and a grassroots-led solutions for these areas. I'll also add that the QPS from both South Brisbane Police Station, Andrew, and also the QPS from West End are also invited to these events and have been very thankful for these to happen. The reason why I'm talking about this is because just recently, we actually created a new roundtable. This roundtable was specifically for Carilpa Point. At this one, there was a specific, smaller targeted group that was working on this. So, of course, again, the QPS, of course, MICA, grassroots organisation, Yak, Brisbane Youth Services Housing, and of course, the Department of Justice, Youth Justice, who actually reached out to me to help organise this work. Now, the work that we're doing in these groups is actually building community and also having a really targeted approach. We are the ones actually in this area all the time. I don't believe that, actually, what I will do, since I keep getting told I'm not close to this situation, even though we've been doing this, noting that it wasn't through you, Chair, councillor Hutton, or through you, Chair councillor Howard, that organised these meetings, but I would happily extend an invite to them so they can understand what's actually going on in these areas.
Further speakers, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner break for one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that council adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Are there further speakers in general business? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, and it's been a, yes, good break. I'd just like to rise to speak about four items in general business. So, the first one is just to congratulate Bart Malish on his return as an LNP state member. A triumphant return.
Sorry, councillor Griffiths is misleading the chamber. I don't know when Bart became LNP member.
Oh, sorry, he's not, he's not an, yeah, yeah, no, no. He isn't an LNP member, and I know there's some LNP people who missed out. Unfortunately. Yeah. But I would also like to congratulate Dr Barbara O'Shea on her great effort as well, and note the ALP's great return in Brisbane. Evidently, there were some LNP members who missed out, and obviously, it's a signal to the LNP members in this chamber that there aren't many career options for you in Brisbane. Anyway, but yeah, congratulations to Bart, and keep doing what you're doing, it's working. Now, secondly, I would like to raise some local issues. I was interested to hear councillor Howard talk about the homelessness issue across the city, and I, I'm not sure, I've heard a rumour, councillor Howard, that the homeless people in your area were bused out of your area. Is that true? No? No, okay. Anyway, I have homeless people, obviously, in Maruka Ward, and we have a number of them. And obviously, with my background, I do a lot of work with the community. And it was interesting, I had a local homeless person in a park. I rang through to the call centre, council's call centre, and we only provide services nine to five, Monday to Friday. So, I acknowledge we have good staff and they do good work, but it is nine to five, Monday to Friday, and there is, or there was, when I spoke to the call centre, no connection or referral to Project MICA or any other homeless service outside that time. So, what I would say to the administration is I think that is something we need to review. So, that people ring, councillor or someone else rings concerned about a homeless person, we need to have a system that connects up to the homeless service outside of business hours. That was followed up the week after. I received a call from our Homeless Connect Service, but it was still a week too late. So, that would be a suggestion for council. Secondly, I'd like to, it was interesting, I was in city standards, I arrived early. I heard councillor Hutton speak, she's not here at the moment, but councillor Hutton was going, oh, councillor Johnston and councillor Griffiths are always criticizing city standards and, you know, telling us what we're doing wrong and what's not working. Well, the reason I do that, and the reason councillor Johnston does that, is because it's been a complete debacle for the last two and a half years. A complete mistake. It hasn't been working. Services are appalling for residents. Staff are unhappy. And we're losing a lot of staff. We aren't an employer by choice. So, it's been a complete mess, an unnecessary mess. Why? Because we had a review that happened and we had changes happen that didn't consult with any of us and didn't consult with staff. So, I am looking forward to a more, rather than being criticised for raising this as an issue, and we were right, councillor Johnston, I'm looking forward to learning more about the review that's coming on. I've certainly given feedback to the manager of that area, Kristin Booth, and I respect him as a council officer and as an executive because he actually sees this as Brisbane City Council. So, that side of the chamber and this side of the chamber. And that is very rare in this organisation, and I'm finding it less and less with our executives, and it's going down the food train to our offices. So, what I would say is we need to have officers who are neutral and providing service and respect to everyone in the city so that all our residents benefit. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Murphy?
Yeah.
For GB.
Yes.
I think you've already spoken.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
You've already spoken, councillor Murphy.
Can I speak again on a different topic? We got rid of that, did we? Oh, I'm okay with that, that's fine.
One time, thank you, yep. Any further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to briefly provide my report for the LGAQ conference that I recently attended from the 21st to the 23rd of October alongside councillor Kim Marks, councillor Stephen Huang, and also the Lord Mayor, who gave his speech there as well. I learnt a lot as a new councillor, particularly about the functions of council, starting with the SEQ Council's forum. And it was also particularly interesting seeing Christopher Lee versus Stephen Miles' speeches about their plans for local government. So, I did enjoy listening to the two speeches side by side. And also, I just wanted to give a shout out to my pathway to politics colleagues that I met who were there, who also got elected, Mayor Amy Eden from Cairns, and councillor Leanne Patrick from Gladstone. We also stood alongside Chair Joshua Creamer, mayors and councillors from Indigenous communities throughout the conference for the Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry in Queensland. It's sad to see the LNP and Christopher Lee shut down the inquiry, and so I joined opposition leader Jared Cassidy and also councillor Lucy- Jared Cassidy and also councillor Lucy Collier to show our support and hope to see more happening there. I also congratulate Matt Burnett on his presidency throughout the conference as well. And throughout the week, just to give a quick summary about the workshops, we attended them throughout each day, depending on what we wanted to learn about, and then went to the gala dinner. And also, the Young Councillors Cohort, there's actually more than seventy young councillors around. You qualify if you're under thirty-five in Queensland. So, that was pretty cool to see them all as well, and would like to wish all the best of luck for everyone that we met throughout the conference. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. No further speakers, so we will now move to notified motions. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 8A on the agenda. Councillor Griffiths, would you please move the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My motion is, Lord Mayor, on behalf of Brisbane City Council, urgently reaches an agreement with the LMP state government to unblock Stable Swamp Creek at Fauna Parade Park of weed species, silt, rubbish and debris that is causing a major increase in flooding for Rockleigh residents and businesses. And in January 2024, council officers supported the urgent clearing of this creek or this site before the next storm season.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the Lord Mayor, on behalf of Brisbane City Council, urgently reaches an agreement with the LMP state government to unblock Stable Swamp Creek at Fauna Parade Park of weed species, silt, rubbish and debris that is causing a major increase in flooding for Rockleigh residents and businesses. In January 2024, council officers supported the urgent cleaning of this site before the next storm season. Councillor Griffiths?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Stable Swamp Creek upstream of this site has been cleared by council, and downstream of this site has been cleared by council. Unfortunately, I'm, I've had great difficulty in getting this, this area of the creek cleared, and it's one of the worst areas in terms of resident stress and concern and the causes of flooding for both residents and business in Rockleigh. This section of the creek is overgrown, it has, is full of weeds, it's silted, has rubbish and debris. Following the 2022 flood, almost two years to the day, actually, today, I had a third, third meeting with residents on the bridge at Rockleigh. Residents were angry and frustrated. The Lord Mayor had been invited but wasn't there, he was overseas in Egypt. From the Lord Mayor's office attended, as did myself, some council officers, and obviously a lot of residents. There were no new staff, and there was no senior executive, and councillor Tracy Davis did not attend either. Clearly congested, overgrown and jungle-like was the backdrop against which we met. The water that flows through this creek spills into homes and businesses. It's a major source of flooding for Rockleigh. However, there are a number of other creek systems that contribute to this too. Now, as a pleasing outcome of that, and one that I understood had agreed to, and I understood the Lord Mayor had agreed to, was that we got one million allocated in the budget. And we have spent a hundred thousand dollars on mapping of the site and plans, and it's going to cost approximately seven hundred thousand to do the work. I was briefed by a senior executive, and got the file notes there, who told me the work was going to be done by June twenty-four. It was going to include both sides of the creek, the side owned by the state government and the other side owned by council. In fact, I was briefed that an MOU for state land was being developed, and council was going to undertake the work, like it had done on state land down, further down the creek. Then what happened? We had a council election, and suddenly I got a memo from councillor Davis and the Lord Mayor, saying, no, we're not doing the work. We've allocated the money, but unfortunately, the state needs to contribute half. I'll table that. Of course, I tried with my colleagues. I've been trying very hard to get solutions to this because I want it resolved for residents. I know that the LMP don't turn up when it floods in Rockleigh. I know that, but I do. And I know what those people go through, and I want it solved. Anyway, I've been working on that. I haven't had a lot of success. Then I contacted Lord Mayor and said, Lord Mayor, I understand we've got an agreement here. He listened to me. He was open to it. But then the day before the state election, in fact, five o'clock in the afternoon, I received another memo from councillor Davis and the Lord Mayor blaming me for the flooding in Rockleigh, and blaming me for not getting a solution with your state government colleagues. So, I bring this motion tonight because I can no longer be blamed. I've done what I can do. It is now your colleagues. It is now your colleagues. It is now the LMP state government that needs to step up and sort this out with council. The deception and lies and misleading comments have both been disturbing for residents, myself and officers. And sadly, we're going into another flood season where residents are devastated by flooding. Residents will be flooded again, and once again, we have no action from this council. What I bring before you tonight is the opportunity for us to sort this out for residents, sort this out so that we can get Stable Swamp Creek cleared, so that in our hearts, we can say to the residents of Rockleigh and the businesses, this, we've done our best by you.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on this motion. I know that this is something that councillor Griffiths has raised with the Chair in the committee over the last year, of which I'm a deputy, and there has been many, many conversations between the Chair and councillor Griffiths. And as the Chair has explained to councillor Griffiths, we have always supported delivering this work. But unlike the earlier work, which actually was undertaken in my area of the ward, half of the creek is on state land, and we can't proceed without state funding. So, as councillor Griffiths did mention, Brisbane City Council has done the upstream work and the downstream work, and I want to confirm that the Chair has asked councillor Griffiths on several occasions to liaise with his colleagues in the former state government, but sadly, nothing has come of these conversations. So, in the interest of accuracy, I wish to move an amendment to the motion. Remove the Lord Mayor and insert Civic Cabinet Chair for Environment Parks and Sustainability. Remove Reaches an Agreement and Insert Rights To. Remove/Unblock and Insert/Seek Updated Advice About Creek Cleanup Work Proposed In. After Park, remove of weed species, silt, rubbish and debris that is causing a major increase in flooding for. After Rockleigh, remove residents and businesses. That the second paragraph be removed and replaced with further council notes that the Lord Mayor allocated funding to progress this project on behalf of Rockleigh residents in the 2023/24 financial year. State government officers advised that council, sorry, state government officers advised council that they did not consider the project a priority, and councillor Griffiths was unable to convince the former state Labor government, including the local state Labor MP, to jointly fund the works. So, the motion will now read. The Civic Cabinet Chair for Environment Parks and Sustainability on behalf of Brisbane City Council urgently writes to the LMP state government to seek updated advice about creek cleanup works proposed in Stable Swamp Queake Creek at Fauna Parade Park, Rockleigh. Further, council notes that the Lord Mayor allocated funding to progress this project on behalf of Rockleigh residents in the 2023/24 financial year. State government officers advised council that they did not consider the project a priority, and councillor Griffiths was unable to convince the former state Labor government, including the local state MP, to jointly fund the works.
Seconded.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the motion that councillor Griffiths has put forward does several things. One, it calls on the Lord Mayor to act, clearly. It urges an agreement to be reached, and it urges action such as unblocking Stable Swamp Creek, removing silt, debris, rubbish, and it references flooding. The amendments that councillor Marks is putting forward completely change both the wording and the intent of the motion by removing reference to the Lord Mayor, putting in the word advice, which is different from an agreement, and asking for advice rather than action to clean up Stable Swamp Creek. As the proposed amendment is not in accordance with the original motion, I urge you to rule it out of order.
I don't uphold your, it's a point of order. I, I don't uphold your point of order, councillor Johnston, as it still does retain the identity. And councillor...
Yeah.
The acting, acting mayor just seconded it. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Point of order, Madam Chairman. I think this is a pretty egregious breach of that rule, and if you are not prepared to seek advice on this matter, then I will move dissent, but I'll give you the opportunity to...
No, I don't uphold your point of order.
So, then I move dissent in your ruling, and I need a...
And I would second that.
Yep. Councillor Johnston has moved dissent in my ruling and seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Seconded.
Division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and ten against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by the acting mayor that the motion be amended, so that it removes Lord Mayor and inserts Civic Cabinet Chair for Environment Parks and Sustainability. It removes Reaches an Agreement and inserts Rights To, removes/Unblock and inserts Seek Updated Advice About Creek Cleanup Works Proposed In. After Park, remove of weed species, silt, rubbish and debris that is causing a major increase in flooding for. After Rockleigh, remove residents and businesses. That the second paragraph be removed and replaced with further council notes that the Lord Mayor allocated funding to progress this project on behalf of Rockleigh residents in the 2023/24 financial year. State government officers advised council that they did not consider the project a priority, and councillor Griffiths was unable to convince the former state Labor government, including the local state Labor MP, to jointly fund the works. So, that the motion will now read. The Civic Cabinet Chair of Environment Parks and Sustainability, on behalf of Brisbane City Council, urgently writes to the LMP state government to seek updated advice about creek cleanup works proposed in Stable Swamp Creek at Fauna Parade, Rockleigh. Further, council notes that the Lord Mayor allocated funding to progress this project on behalf of Rockleigh residents in 2023/24 financial year. State government officers advised council that they did not consider the project a priority, and councillor Griffiths was unable to convince the former state Labor government, including the local state Labor MP, to jointly fund the works. I'll now put the amendment, all those in fa, oh, sorry, we'll go to debate.
No, 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 what are you doing?
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Further debate.
No, there hasn't been any debate, and she hasn't spoken to it. Is councillor Marks going to speak to the motion?
Yes, that's what we're going to do. Further debate.
No, she's not going to speak to it.
Okay. Councillors, please refer to each other by your correct names. Councillor Cassidy.
So, the mover of the amendment is not speaking. That's okay. Well, I, I, I think councillor Marks should, because this is clearly an incompetent amendment, and it is no wonder councillor Marks was sacked from Civic Cabinet if this is the kind of homework. Councillor Marks is making an absolute mess in the area of council, of which, of which his role would be to clean up this creek. It's also seeking, in this, in this amendment, Chair, what this is suggesting was that councillor Griffiths should have done something illegal. That's what the LMP is suggesting, because under the City of Brisbane Act, an individual councillor cannot negotiate funding agreements with another level of government. This is how stupid this LMP administration is. They, they just think this is some sort of stupid playground game about this. This is clearly a really important issue to councillor Griffiths. He's spoken about this, and, yeah, and the acting mayor's chuckling away there. That's the kind of leadership we have here in this chamber, under the LMP regime. Councillor Griffiths has spoken about this issue, not just a couple of times in a committee meeting, like councillor Marks has suggested, but has worked hard on this local issue for a long period of time, has laid out a very good evidence brief, if you will, in tonight's meeting, and I learned some things that I didn't know before about the work that councillor Griffiths had done on this. And now for, the LMP to write to councillor Griffiths and say, the reason that this project was not proceeding was because he was not able to seek a funding, he was not able to secure a funding agreement on the eve of the state election, would be, they were expecting him to do something illegal. Now, I don't know what they're getting at, Chair, in suggesting this. I'm not sure whether they were trying to pressure him to do something illegal for nefarious purposes, or if they are just plain, or if they are just plain stupid. I don't, I don't know. Maybe the second one. But this, this is, this is ridiculous, this amendment, putting this up tonight. When the Lord Mayor got up and beat his chest six months ago and said, you need to be talking about local issues, he demanded Labor councillors don't go and talk about issues that affect LMP councillors' wards because they get upset about that. He said you should talk about local issues. Well, here we go, a local councillor talking about a local issue, and we have this ridiculous schoolyard stuff coming into here. I don't think it's competent at all, and I don't think you can suggest in there, in, in an amendment, and so that will be a, a motion that is on the official council record, that the LMP are disappointed that a Labor councillor did not engage in illegal behaviour and activity. That's what the LMP wanted a councillor to do, to do something illegal. Now, we know they have, we know they have a, a history of this.
Counselor, acting mayor, please do not call out while another councillor is on their field.
Now, we know the LMP have history of this, encouraging people to engage in, or condoning illegal behaviour, of course. The candidate they ran against me at the last election, a known criminal, a known criminal. And they, they still laugh. This guy went to jail. This is the guy that, that the Lord Mayor paraded around the Shaunkliff Pier and got photos with the teardrop tattoo, paraded him around to local sporting clubs, councillor Murphy. You think this is hilarious? The Lord Mayor's representative was a youth criminal.
Point of order, councillor Toomey.
I don't believe this is actually part of the motion, and I'd ask if it's okay if the leader of the opposition would be drawn back to the motion.
No. No, councillor Toomey. Councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Repeatedly through councillor Cassidy's speech, the deputy mayor has been calling out extremely loudly. She did it again a second time after your admonishment. I have been cited for inappropriate conduct. Others have been warned. Why are you taking no action against the deputy mayor for her unsuitable meeting conduct?
I don't uphold your point of order. The councillor called out once and... The councillor called out once and was reprimanded and I'm not going to debate it. Councillor Johnson, councillor Cassidy.
I'm sure councillor Griffiths will talk on this, but we cannot support this kind of incompetence here in the chamber tonight because not only is this entirely and utterly incompetent, it's actually just mean spirited as well. Like, you know, I get, you know, we talked, talked the last couple of weeks about robust political debating here and debating ideas and different proposals of whether you support more social affordable housing or selling, you know, blocks off and things like that. There are differences of opinions about that, but what the LNP are doing in amending this motion this way is just actually quite, being quite mean in the way in which they're denying a councillor a local project. They could just say no, they obviously don't care, we know that, but, but in doing it this way and trying to smear somebody's reputation is actually pretty shameful and they're going to get up and, they've been giggling all about it like little schoolkids because this is, this is just, you know, schoolyard behaviour from them, but this is just a ridiculous amendment, we won't be supporting it.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnson.
Yes, I rise to speak on the amendment before us today and as I moved the procedural motion early, it's very clear that this is an incompetent motion without question. It completely changes the amendment, sorry, the motion put forward by councillor Griffiths and turns it into a attempted political hit job which has fallen far short of the mark. And the reason I'll say that is for the following. Firstly, it's been moved by councillor Marks who was responsible for this area for two terms as the Chair of Council, who in that time looked after herself and her own constituents and has got parts of Stable Swamp cleaned up that fall within her ward, but stands up today to deny an adjoining councillor downstream to have council funding as agreed allocated to improve the creek in that area. Now, I don't think it's very difficult for a former Chair of this part of council who's running interference for councillor Davis, who's sitting there taking the extra 30 grand a year as the park's Chair and doing nothing, doesn't even get up and speak on these issues when councillor Griffiths stands up and advocates for better environmental outcomes for our city and our community. She sits back and lets councillor Marks take the running, a person whose hands are dirty through her failure to manage the creek systems in Brisbane and who has benefited from council's expenditure on creeks in her own ward and then would deny it to another councillor. So that's the first reason. The second reason is way, way, way more telling and this is the part the LNP, because they're not, they're not bright sparks, I'm with councillor Cassidy on this one, but what are they trying to do here? They're trying to say that councillor Griffiths was unable to convince the former state Labor government, including the local state MP, to jointly fund the work. Well, so good is their relationship with George Street, so good is their relationship with their colleagues down there, so good is the relationship between councillor Davis and her counterpart, whoever the environment minister is, Andrew Pa... Oh God. So good is the relationship between them that all she can do is write and seek advice. Remember what they were saying in the lead up to the election and the Lord Mayor said publicly over and over again, when we've got the LNP at George Street, we'll get better outcomes for the city. Not only is this a worse outcome for the city because a creek that is in desperate need of environmental management, of cleaning up rubbish, of trimming back debris, of making sure the channel is clear and can help mitigate flooding, all of the basics that this council should do, this LNP administration's not even going to bother trying to get an agreement or to get the work done, they're just going to seek advice. So councillor Davis is so confident in her new relationship with her LNP colleagues down at George Street that she's not even going to try and get the funding, this is what this is all about, getting the funding for Brisbane City Council. It's not going into councillor Griffiths' pocket, it's going into fixing Stable Swamp Creek which flows into Oxley Creek which floods my ward and his ward and this LNP administration who've sold themselves, sold themselves to the people of Brisbane as saying we'll have this great relationship with George Street and there'll be better outcomes for the city of Brisbane at the first hurdle they have failed. They're not even going to try because this is an area they don't care about. This is an area that they are not in control of. This is an area where they don't care about the people because they flood all the time. This is an area where the creeks aren't getting any investment. Mullerbin Creek's been written off, Oxley Creek, God help us, they've built playgrounds down the far end but there's nothing happening down in my part of Oxley Creek. And what's councillor Davis going to do? She's not even going to try and get the money. She's not even going to try. She doesn't want to bother Andrew Powell. She's not going to stand up for the city of Brisbane and all of the suburbs that flood, that is Rockleigh, that is Sherwood, that is Corinda, that is Graceville and that is Chelma. And I will be telling those residents, some of whom still vote for the LNP, I mean it was 20%, it wasn't a lot, but some of who still vote for the LNP, that this LNP administration won't use its relationship with George Street to get better outcomes like they publicly said they would.
Councillor Johnson, your time is up. Any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, I rise to speak against the amendments to this motion or the newer motion that we have before us. I have over the last two years tried in every possible way to get this issue resolved for residents. I was at that meeting. No Liberal councillor over there was at the meeting. No Liberal councillor over there, Liberal National Party councillor turns up to Rockleigh when it floods. Not councillor Marks, not councillor Davis, not the Lord Mayor even, he doesn't even bother turning up. That's how you regard these people. That's how you regard the businesses down there. This is good. This is good because what we're seeing is the LNP's true colours tonight. We're seeing what you really stand for and we're seeing what you really believe and we're seeing there is no leadership, there is no heart, there is no integrity. And what I'm seeing, and thank you for showing to me, to the councillors over there, councillor Marks, councillor Davis, is the sheer gaslighting that's gone on for the last two years. And I'm ashamed for the officers who've had to be part of this grubby little process. Grubby little process. You haven't even spoken, so don't even wobble your head. If you spoke, then you'd have some reason to wobble your head and complain councillor Davis. This is appalling.
Through the chair please councillor Griffiths.
This is pathetic. Yep, through the chair to councillor Davis. This is appalling, this is pathetic. I say to the residents of Rockleigh, I have genuinely, I have genuinely tried to represent you over the last 22 years and try and get outcomes for you. And this, you can see the level of politicking, the level of bitterness, the level of evilness, and I would say this is evil, when you actually think people should flood rather than us spend money and fix it up. And let's put it on the record, councillor Marks over there, and I, councillor Marks, I'm really disappointed in you, but anyway, you've got to live with yourself. Councillor Marks, your area just had a whole lot of money spent on it.
Point of order madam chairman.
Through you madam Chair.
Thank you councillor Griffiths.
Councillor, your area upstream had a whole lot of money spent on it by news so that the water can flow faster to Rockleigh, so we can flood faster. And you think that's funny? I don't. And I think the way these residents are being treated is appalling. For the staff who've really worked their guts out, I acknowledge you. For the staff who've been part of this horrible little mess, I have no respect for you. And you know who you are and the staff know who you are and I don't think you've ever been on site to meet these residents. So what a grubby little world you're in. What a grubby little world to make money. Anyway, I maintain that this should be done. I maintain that the Lord Mayor should step up, doesn't surprise me he's not here. And these residents will flood again, they will flood again, they will have, they will get angry, they will have a public meeting. I invite the media to Rockleigh to meet with these residents and show the world, show Australia what this LNP council is all about. Show them the grubbiness we've seen here tonight. Look at these people and know these people are voting against...
Point of order, acting mayor.
We have listened to this personal attack.
Speak yourself then.
I'm speaking next, but his words are appallingly atrocious and disgraceful and upsetting for anyone.
Excuse me? What's the point of order?
Councillors, excuse me councillors, you are not the ones on your feet and at the mic.
I asked councillor Griffiths to debate the motion, debate the motion, not the person who moved the motion. That's the grubbiness we're seeing here tonight.
Oh no, Christie, you're a grub.
Thank you councillors.
No, you are.
I draw you back to the amendment and debate on the amendment.
Point of order madam chairman.
And not criticizing council officers. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you madam chairman. I actually found councillor Griffiths' statement then towards the deputy mayor quite disrespectful and I would encourage him and for you to direct him to withdraw that please.
Thank you councillor Toomey.
I withdraw calling councillor Adams a grub, but what has, what has been shown here tonight is the sheer grubbiness of the LNP.
Thank you councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Further speakers, acting mayor.
Thank you madam Chair. I rise to speak in support of this amendment and the reason we support this amendment is because it needs to be clarified actually what our position is and it's very clear and it has not changed. We also maintain it should be done and the money is there. But we can't do work on state land, that is illegal. The details of the truth are not the interest for councillor Griffiths. You are as transparent...
One moment please acting mayor. Councillor Griffiths, I gave you the opportunity to speak.
Point of order.
Without people calling out across the chamber. Point of order.
I'm happy to table all the council reports.
Acting mayor.
Thank you madam Chair. Councillor Griffiths, you are as transparent as cling wrap and just as flimsy. There is nothing in this debate that isn't about a personal attack on a government that has been here for three weeks.
One moment, please acting mayor. Councillor Griffiths, do you have a point of order? That is not a point of order. I'll just wait while councillors are quiet. All councillors. Acting mayor.
Thank you, I'll reframe it. His debate is transparent as cling wrap and is just as flimsy. This was so vital that it didn't come up until after the state government actually changed colour and the fact that councillor Cassidy says that it's illegal to work with your state members, I'm sorry, Joe Kelly MP who got my clear, my creek cleared at Belimba Creek.
One moment please acting mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Acting mayor.
Councillor Griffiths has had nine years of Peter Russo, the TMR cabinet member, the federal member. So the evil of not cleaning up this creek and putting the money is nothing but a former Labor state government. I'm not saying that the LNP government are going to come to the board, but they've been here for three weeks and we're going to contact them and investigate exactly what's happening. But I can work with my Labor members, not even LNP members, to get our creeks cleaned up. Joe Kelly is a great representative and I work with him well. But what we've heard here today, attacking us for the evil of not clearing up a creek, that we have got the money sitting on the table for.
One moment please. Do not call out councillor Collier. If you wish to add to the debate, you can stand up after the acting mayor has finished. Then don't call out. Acting mayor.
From the outset, we have said through many emails and letters which spell it out clearly that we would work with councillor Griffiths to secure the state funding needed for the project to proceed in this part of Stable Swamp Creek, that is state government creek. Our proposal was simple, we'd progress planning and design with funding we had committed in our budget and is still committed in our budget and councillor Griffith would work with his local state Labor MPs to secure the state government funding. And now, he's tried and tried and tried and tried, but now it's his number one priority because the government's changed. I don't know if councillor Griffiths has actually written to the new state government, I don't know if he actually wrote to the last state government. I don't know if he publicly advocated for this, maybe he did behind closed doors and good on him, but guess what, didn't work. The people here that have held this up are the former Labor state government. And probably due to the silence from councillor Griffiths for goodness knows how long, because he didn't want to ruffle feathers up there, the current state government who's been in for barely three weeks are probably totally unaware of it, totally unaware of it. So in this amendment, we are proposing to write to them and seek their advice on this project. Lies and deception are extremely upsetting for local residents.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Madam Chair, you've made it very clear, you cannot use the word lie, lie, lying etcetera and the deputy mayor just did, so are you going to rule that out of order?
In the phrase that she used, and councillor Cassidy earlier did the same thing in this morning.
But you were very clear, you can't use any version of it. So is that not the case anymore?
It's when you are calling somebody a liar, straight to their face. Thank you councillor Johnson, I don't uphold your point of order.
So lies are okay now, is it okay to say lies?
I do not uphold your point of order.
I'm just seeking clarification on a procedural issue madam Chair.
Yep, I just clarified it.
The rule was you couldn't use any version of the word. So is the rule now, are you changing it to say that you can use the word lies but you can't say the word liar? Is that what the new rule is?
They are very different. Councillor, acting mayor, would you like to rephrase that?
Oh no, I won't rephrase it madam Chair because what I was doing was repeating the sentence that councillor Griffiths through you actually made not 10 minutes ago. I didn't see councillor Johnson jumping up with a buddy and saying, don't use lies councillor Griffiths, it's not allowed. I am repeating the line that councillor Griffiths said, lies and deception are extremely upsetting for his local residents and I am sure they are. So I plead with councillor Griffiths to stop it. Stop the lies and deception and they won't be so upset.
Point of order madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Councillor Toomey be on his feet, but councillor Adams can't speak directly to councillor Griffiths either, must do so through you. You could draw her attention to the rule.
Through the chair councillor, acting mayor.
I'm happy to go through the chair, madam Chair, and say again, through you, councillor Griffiths, please join us in making representations to the new government, we are happy to do that, but we are not having mistruths and misconceptions in motions that are blatantly incorrect on the history and that's what this amendment is doing, correcting the history.
Further speakers, councillor, councillor Cassidy, your misrepresentation first.
Thanks very much Chair, I very clearly said it would be illegal for an individual councillor to secure a funding deal from the state government. Councillor Adams misconstrued those words to try and make a point, but I think the deputy mayor needs to listen a bit better.
Further speakers. No further speakers to the amendment. Councillor Marks, write a reply. We'll now put the motion, we'll now put the amendment to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against no?
No!
The eyes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 10 in favour and 8 against.
The motion is carried. Please resume your seats. We'll now move to the substantive debate. Further speakers. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, Madam Chair, I rise to obviously speak against this motion. As I said earlier, I have worked tirelessly, tirelessly to try and get this resolved for these residents. I don't know if everyone saw it, but there were pictures of the state of the creek down there. Now, I know our news team haven't been down there, our news manager has been nowhere near the creek. I know the executive above him has been nowhere near the creek. I know councillor Tracy Davis and the Lord Mayor have not been near the creek. But it is one full congested creek, full of weeds, full of silt, full of debris, lots of rubbish, if you can't see it. This is the state of the creek. This is the state of the creek. I'm not making it up, it's not a joke. I can do other motions to attack LNP members. This is what I have to speak to residents about on a daily basis and try and get outcomes for my residents. Now, it shouldn't be that you're just governing for the LNP side of the city. You should be governing for the whole city. And I just stress again, our officers should be, and our managers and our executives, should be working for all the residents of Brisbane, not the LNP members of Brisbane. I am really, really disappointed with what has been done here today. A lot of trust has been broken since this election, first with councillor Howard and now with councillor Tracy Davis. I have lost a lot of respect and I've been here a long time in this chamber and I've always found ways of working to resolve things for my ward. But my experience since this election has been appalling. I am devastated for my community. I'm devastated for the residents of Rockleigh. I'm devastated for some personal relationships, people I thought were reasonable. This has been a really bad outcome. Really unnecessary, really painful, painful for me. It's taken a lot of energy and a lot of work with the community to get them to this point. I wrote to 900 residents once I had the feedback from officers. So there's been a lot of trust broken. This isn't just about politics. This is really, really cynical. And it's really sad for our city. It's really bad for where Brisbane's going. And yeah. If any of you have a conscience, I would be really ashamed of what you've done tonight. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnson.
Just briefly, Madam Chairperson, I would just note that the chairperson of the news of natural environment sustainability, councillor Tracy Davis, the councillor responsible for this area, could not be bothered to engage in this debate. And I just note that she has experience as a one-term state member. And perhaps she knows that the state government is not going to listen to her. Perhaps she knows that David Crisifulli and his team are not interested in what Brisbane City Council have got to say. And perhaps that's why she's prepared to abandon the south side when creeks on the south side of Brisbane are in urgent need of clean-up. Not just Stable Swamp Creek, but Mullabin Creek, the rocky water holes, all of them. This council just ignores creeks on the south side. And councillor Davis, tonight, through her actions here, of not even bothering to contribute to the debate. This is the person, and she's walking out now. So the deputy mayor got up with the personal attacks and the relevant chairperson is just not interested. She won't take action, she's not going to push the state government, she's going to seek advice. She's going to seek advice. So she's going to write a letter up to Andrew Powell and maybe at the next LNP function she could speak to him if it's not too much trouble for her. Meanwhile, residents on the south side of Brisbane want to see council take action on cleaning up contaminated waterways, waterways that get an F or a D in this city over and over and over again. Waterways that, yes, the state should contribute to, but the big issue here is there's no leadership from this council. There is none. Councillor Marks, who's got her part of Stable Swamp Creek fully funded by council, no problems. No problems. Yeah. But no, councillor Griffiths should reach an agreement with the state government. He doesn't have any authority to do so. The person who does on behalf of the city of Brisbane was the Lord Mayor. But no, he's not doing anything, he's MIA. And councillor Davis is silent. It doesn't bode well for our city when the person responsible for a management of our waterways won't speak up, will not engage and recognizes right from week three, as the deputy mayor has said, that the state government, the LNP state government in George Street, aren't interested in Brisbane City Council issues. It's pretty clear to see.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I just claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Acting Mayor.
I believe councillor Johnson said that I said the LNP weren't interested in our issues and that's not what I said.
Further speakers. Councillor Davis. One moment, please, councillor Davis.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and wasn't that an interesting contribution? Well, in fact, a number of interesting contributions. And the most interesting contribution came from councillor Griffiths, who tonight has rewritten history. Councillor Griffiths, of his own volition, decided to reach out to his state government colleagues to try and resolve an issue that he had promised would get action to his local residents for which this administration had put money in the budget, not one year, but two years, to undertake 50% of works required along this waterway.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Along a waterway for which council has responsibility for 20%. 80% of the waterway that was undertaken for the study is either unallocated state land, belongs to Energex, or is the Department of Education. Now, I'm actually not sure which ministerial office councillor Griffiths reached out to. I suspect it was the Department of Education because they were the department that was, that has the most landholding. And who also said that they were not really interested in putting any money towards this project because they didn't think that it would make any real tangible difference. But also they didn't know what they were going to do with this land in the future. Now, by councillor Cassidy's estimation, the fact that councillor Griffiths, of his own volition, reached out to a ministerial office means he probably may not have been doing the right thing. I heard councillor Cassidy have a few words about that. Perhaps he needs to have a little chat to his own colleagues in his own team. Madam Chair, I'm very happy to write to my colleague, Minister Andrew Powell. But we will be seeking an update. He will need to get his head across this issue because he's been, had his feet under the table, under the desk for what, two weeks? Two weeks. Councillor Griffiths has rewritten history. The general manager of the news branch has spoken on numerous occasions about this issue with councillor Griffiths. The general manager of news has spoken to bureaucrats in the state government to try and get a resolution for this. The problem is, Madam Chair, that councillor Griffiths couldn't get his own colleagues when they were in government to do anything. The local state member, Peter Russo, I thought I'd have a bit of a look to see how important this issue was to him. So I looked back to see on his Facebook page, to see whether he mentioned anything, say, the budget time, to see if there was any money from the state to put in there 50% to do these works. Couldn't see a thing, councillor Murphy, couldn't see a thing. Then I thought, for sure, for sure he would have had that as one of his election commitments. Went to his Facebook page, couldn't see anything. Went to his website, couldn't see anything. But what I did see on his website was my plan for my community. And there are a few options. There was world-class health and hospitals, a cleaner, greener future, cost of living, jobs and skills training. I thought, well, that would be under a cleaner, greener future. So I clicked on that. And what did I come up with? What the local councillor in the state is interested in, west of Mackay in North Queensland, we will build the biggest pump hydro which will supply half of our state's entire energy needs.
What was the price tag on that?
They're also interested in the Pioneer Bertican mega project, which has a potential generation capacity 2.5 times that of the Snowy 2.0 in New South Wales. Now, what I didn't see, what I didn't see was the local state members' interest in putting any money towards the project along Stable Swamp Creek. So to come here tonight and start rewriting history by making commentary about our hard-working council officers who did exactly what they told councillor Griffiths they would do by reaching out to their counterparts in the state, to have councillor Griffiths come in here, besmirch them
Disgusting.
and make out that this administration does not want to work on Stable Swamp Creek to get outcomes for the people of Rockleigh is simply a falsehood. Madam Chair, with those remarks, I move the motion be put.
Seconded. Councillor Griffiths, you had a point of misrepresentation first.
Yes, thank you. My point was claimed to be misrepresented. Yes, there was discussion about 50% funding for this, 50%, 50% funding. But I also had a briefing and had minutes from a council executive who told me that council had decided to fully fund this project, the $700,000, to get the project done if they couldn't get the state on board. So I have those minutes. And it's apparently, according to that council manager, happens quite frequently and we've done it south of this site on state land.
Is being moved that the motion be put and seconded by the acting mayor? All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 10 in favour and 8 against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, resume your seats. We'll now put the substantive motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 10 in favour and 8 against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 8b on the agenda. Councillor Cassidy, would you please move the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I move that this council supports the important work of the Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry to continue and notes the bipartisan support it has received at a council level.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier that this council supports the important work of the Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry to continue and notes the bipartisan support it has received at a council level. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to start this debate by reading two excerpts from a speech given to the Queensland Parliament in May 2023. And these are the quotes. "I rise to support the path to Treaty Bill 2023. I do so in the hope that it can be a catalyst for true accountability of government, a catalyst for materially improving the lives of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in this state. Path to Treaty is a genuine opportunity for our state to improve the lives of Indigenous Australians. It's an opportunity I believe Queensland should embrace wholeheartedly. I believe in truth telling and to me that means telling it like it is. We need to be upfront. We cannot shy away from the real experiences of Indigenous Australians throughout history. We must tell the truth about the real challenges they are facing today. If we are being upfront about it, they have been this way for a long time, too long. Herein lies the tragedy of the entrenched disadvantage of these communities. It is entrenched because there is no accountability. The issues have been talked about in this parliament, written about in reports, investigated in various commissions and nothing changes. Why? Because no one is being held accountable. Path to Treaty offers an opportunity to address this, a fork in the road. Down one well-travelled path lies a discussion had for political purposes. It talks a big game but achieves little for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, a path where political battle lines are drawn but ultimately ends with a decade wasted and no progress made. Down the other path is a treaty. It places accountability on this and future governments, a treaty that enshrines KPIs that materially address the disadvantage in Aboriginal communities on issues like health, education, housing, employment and infrastructure. This is a difficult path, a path that will mean governments can no longer act as though they were powerless observers. They are not. Governments are the bodies to enact change for these communities that deserve and yearn for change. It is a path we're working together. We can all shine a light on poor performance and ultimately lead to where we all want. Real improvements in the lives of Indigenous Queenslanders and indeed would be a worthy path to treaty." That's the end of those quotes. "The aim of the Truth Telling and Healing Inquiry is to complete the picture of Queensland's history through truth telling. From what we know, the history of Queensland and Brisbane is a painful one for Indigenous people, but we have plenty more to learn. These are stories of untold endurance, resilience and strength and sharing those is a powerful way to begin the healing process. Healing will help us move forward towards a more positive relationship with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. As Brisbane City councils, we are in touch with our communities and we should provide leadership to them. Leading requires us to listen as hard as that can be sometimes. The Premier's decision to scrap this inquiry is disappointing particularly because the words I read just before from the parliamentary debate came from his mouth. They were his words. Announcing the scrapping of this inquiry via a media conference before he sat down with the commissioners or Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people was a low blow. He talked about the fork in the road we were at. We could go down the well-worn path of politics prevailing in the place of a more equal Queensland or we could take a new path, one in which governments were held accountable on important issues and where the hurt and real trauma of our recent history is understood." issues and where the hurt and real trauma of our recent history is understood. We know the few hearings that have been held already have been illuminating and important. Can you just for one minute imagine what it must have felt like for those elders, sitting in the audience in Brisbane and hearing Police Commissioner Golshelsky admit that police had, in his words, failed Aboriginal people for 160 years, in some cases going so far as to deliberately kill them? If more politicians sat down for a while and listened to the stories of old people, they would realise there are countless untold stories, lived experiences of those who have raised kids and grandkids in our community who carry generations of trauma quietly. The truth can set you free and it can be a critical part of not just healing old wounds but also forging a new path forward. Councillors, Collier, Kim and I joined the...
Councillor Cassidy, I'm sorry, but I do have to cut you off there. Under the provision of section 4113 of the meeting's local law, on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of all notified motions. I shall now put the current motion to the meeting without further amendment or debate. I will now put the amendment, I will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division. Has been called by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being 7 in favour and 10 against.
The motion has lost. And councillors, that now concludes today's meeting.